This conference will now be recorded.
All right, welcome everyone. It's 2024 and thank you all for coming to the Heber City Council meeting on January 2nd, 2024. We have a very exciting agenda item to do next, and that is the swearing in for the three new oath of office council seats that were elected in November. But let me do just a couple more things. I want to welcome all of you as well come our council that's on the stand. We have council member Scott Phillips, our new council member Sid Ostergaard, new one Erin Sheetwood, myself Heidi Franco, Yvonne Barney, and then newly elected Mike Johnston. So we will take care of business and I will turn the time over to Trina Cook, our city recorder, to do the swearing in. And then, like I say, we'll get a picture if that's all right, everyone. And then we are going to be very happy to hear from our newly elected council members if they would like. And they will take care of the order that they want to speak in. All right, Trina, your turn.
Having been elected to the office of Heber City Council, do solemnly swear firm that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Utah. Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Utah. And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Photo for the council. Thank you. Are we good? All right, Erin, Sid, and Mike, you're ready to go.
So, I'm truly honored to be up here. I want to thank especially, I was kind of getting emotional. I want to thank my family for the support that they've given me and that they will be giving me. I want to thank Grantley and his team for helping me out in the election. I hated campaigning. Oh, I hated it worth. But I had amazing people behind me. Again, three words, implement, cultivate, collaborate. That's what I ran. That's what we're going to be doing. We're going to do all that. There's a lot of things happening in Heber City, a lot of good things, and I'm glad I'm a part of it. I'm glad that I'm able to represent the citizens of Heber, really am. And let's just get to work. Thanks.
Thank you for coming. This has been, I guess, bittersweet. So I just appreciate everybody in this city, the city staff. This is going to be a great city council. We will all work together as we have the past two years, the past four years, the past eight years. This is just a continuation of managing the city, making decisions, making choices, and that's what we do. I do want to recognize and thank my wife Sheila for her support and staying up and waiting for me to come home late on many evenings. So, thank you, love. And thank you for coming and supporting us. We really appreciate support. This is a desirable place to live, and that brings with it huge growth issues and big opportunities. And so we thank you for your support. I can speak for everybody to say we always welcome your conversations, your discussions, your questions. We don't welcome the negativity that swirls around out there in certain areas, but we certainly welcome discussions and conversations positive and lift up the city. So, thank you for coming.
Thank you so much for your support. I'm humbled and I'm grateful to be able to serve in this way. I have an immense respect for those that are in public service that work hard to make sure that we have what we have in the city and in the county and in the state and all of our government positions. And I'm so grateful to have been voted into this and to have the opportunity to serve in this way. My commitment, and I just want to reaffirm my commitment, is to do what's right for the citizens and to do what's right for the city. There won't always be things we agree on, but I'm going to do what's right, and I encourage you to get involved and to show up if you have questions, to look through the agendas and to think through the things that you want to be, you want us to talk about, you want us to know, and the things that you want to have your voice heard on. And reach out and show up and get involved and find ways to do things in the community. That's how we're going to make this a better place to live. That's how we're going to make sure we get through all the things that are in front of us. My priorities are still the same, supporting small business, looking for affordable housing opportunities, managing and understanding strategic initiatives for growth, and making sure we have better communication, not just amongst the city council, but with everybody that lives here, that we can figure out some way to communicate what's happening, what's going on, what's important, and to listen and to make sure you feel heard. If you ever don't feel heard, my door is open, my phone is open, email is open. And I encourage you to reach out and to make sure that somebody knows how you feel and knows what it is that's important to you. I'm so excited, truly honored to serve in this way, and I look forward to getting a lot done with these wonderful councillors and mayor. Thank you.
As you can tell, this is exciting. This is exciting as it gets for a government geek like myself. So, everyone, it's time for a lovely reception. All of you are welcome to go back down and get a cookie. All of you are welcome to come and shake hands and take pictures all you'd like, and we'll do that till around 4:30, and then we'll come back with our work meeting. So, let's just open it up for the reception now.
This conference will now be recorded.
Council meeting, January 2nd, 2024. I want to welcome all of you that are in the chambers or that are online. We've just finished swearing in our three newly elected city council members, and I want to welcome all the council again. So, we have on the podium, council member Scott Phillips, Sid Ostergaard, Erin Sheetwood, Yvonne Barney, Mike Johnston, and myself, Mayor Heidi Franco. All right, our first agenda item for the work meeting now at 4:32 PM is ordinance 2024-01, first one for the year, the Highlands Master Development Amendment, I'm sorry, Master Development Agreement amended amendment. And Deana Woodbury, our planning consultant, is going to present that. Deana is not online. Oh, there you are. Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead, Deana.
Okay, great. So, since the last time we met and had a workshop, there's been a few changes to the proposal. Steph has continued to work with the developer to refine their product and...
One second. Tony, can you put what's on the screen onto the meeting screen, please? And Deana, if you wanted him to show that, one of the PowerPoints that was in the agenda materials, he can call that up. Or he's got the staff report ready, whatever you need.
We'll work on the staff report here. Anyway, they have made some changes and they have fewer requests that need modifications for since the last time we had our workshop, which was, I believe, back in November. City council discussed this item and has held a public hearing on it. They recommended approval for the proposed amendment on November 14th, 2023. The topography is the biggest issue that is creating challenges and the reason why D.R. Horton is asking for some changes to the development agreement because the code requirements and the NVOs don't sometimes translate very well onto the hillside. And so, they've had difficulty meeting the challenges without carving up the hillside. So, they are asking for 10 amendments to the MDA that relate to design and to the topography and as well as the street facade requirements. Steph has worked with them to come up with some solutions as far as their housing product type and what may help alleviate some of the concerns. And so, Steph is supportive of this project, and I would like to turn the time over to the developers. They have a short PowerPoint presentation that they would like to...
Okay. Tony, can you turn around the podium, please? Thank you very much. And then, I'm asking you to double duty here, aren't I? Is that the PowerPoint that you want, sir?
Yes, please.
Okay. And then, can we give them the mouse too, so they can run their PowerPoint? Thank you. And tell us who you are again, please.
Yes, good evening. My name is Adam Loser. I am with D.R. Horton, Vice President of Land Acquisition and Entitlement for Utah. And with me, I've got Greg Hawes, who's our design, community design director, and Terry Deal, as well as represents the seller, the Highlands. Congratulations to the two new council people. Wonderful to have you here. And just excited to be at this next point in our project. A couple of things, as Deana mentioned, we have worked closely with staff on resolving a few more of these concerns. We had another great meeting with the Planning Commission and received unanimous approval, a recommendation for adopting what we proposed there. And so, we're hopeful with those things, we can expedite, but happy to answer any questions you may have at the end of our short presentation. We've narrowed it down and made it a little more palpable. So, the first item we're asking for is some allowance for staff to interpret the 360-degree architecture. What you'll see here is the actual language we're proposing and the first paragraph, and then some commentary or pictures after that. So, there's conflict in the code right now. When you read different sections, they ask you to do different things. And so, what we've asked staff, and they had suggested, is that the whole purpose of 360-degree architecture is to make sure there's no blank walls on any of the four facades of a home, and we agree with that, and we intend to comply with that. And so, we're asking that you give deference to the staff to interpret and apply that appropriately. And so, that's what that paragraph suggests.
This section is about the facade repetition along the street. Code is written, it requires a 400, within a 400-foot block, it requires that there's no facade repetition along that face, because these are much smaller lots in certain areas. We're asking that that repetition be governed by 120-foot space, which is the same as the four units on one side of the street for a 400-foot block. So, we're asking that lots that are less than a quarter acre in size be at least six different building facades within that 100-foot distance along both sides of the street.
Another one of the code sections requires varying building heights if buildings are adjacent to each other. That works great for like urban Main Street Heber. But once you get up on the hillside and start having all the buildings be varying heights, we think we can accomplish that with the topography as you climb up the hillside. So, that's what this intends to apply is, hey, as long as you have topography and the view from below or even at the street, the buildings will automatically be varying in height. So, this is a cross-section of the stacked flat section of our project. You can see as you go up the hill, they naturally catch grade in either 10 to 20-foot increments. So, the building heights vary automatically. If you put them down on the same plane, they would be the same height, but because of topography, they offset in building height. And staff is in support of this as well.
One of the other criteria that we had a little issue with is very specific language in the code, the definition of a courtyard. That courtyard is defined by three buildings of five units apiece. That's very specific. There are areas within our development where we have courtyards that are formed by more than three buildings. The courtyard on the left is defined by four buildings and their fifth on the end, and it's triangular in shape. The minimum spacing between facades in a courtyard is 50 feet. We have 45 feet at that pinch point, but the average width of that courtyard space is much larger. It's about 100 feet in width. We also have another second courtyard that's defined by seven buildings, and it's nonlinear. It's got a little bit of a kink to it, but that, the building facades are 81 feet in that courtyard. So, we're just asking some relaxation of the language. So, such specific language, about three buildings and 50 feet.
There's a requirement in the code that says if you have a townhome, attached home, that you have to have a 60-foot square, 60-square-foot front porch covered. In some of the code, if you go to the next one, Greg, it allows for/or an enclosed outdoor area. And so, we're just asking for this same omission that happened in one section of the code to be applied to the other sections, so that while our covered front porch is only 35 square feet, the larger enclosed area of 200 square feet would apply. We believe that this was just an error in the code and omission. We actually reached out to Mr. Jansen at the suggestion of the mayor and talked over several of these with him. He's like, yeah, these issues are going to come up in the code when you get down to the nuts and bolts and start to apply it. But this was something that we probably should have included or had more clarification on, but the right venue to resolve those is in an amendment to the MDA, like we're doing today. And so, this is one that, as we've talked with you and the Planning Commission, this was a pretty straightforward request, just a code cleanup.
This criteria applies to how porches relate to a street or a greenway, a green court, courtyard. We're asking that all of the courtyard, all the buildings that are associated with that courtyard, that the front porches face the right, the same direction, and that we don't have two orphaned porches on either end of the building that face toward the street. The code is required, written so they face the street no matter what. We would rather have all of the neighbors in that courtyard have their front doors facing the same direction.
This was another one that we talked through, the front property line coverage. We are asking for it to be a percentage to accommodate the site topography. Right now, the code reads that it has to be 60%. Doesn't say, can be 59 or 61. It says 60%. So, to comply with that is a pretty interesting requirement. Again, we spoke to Mr. Jansen. He's like, yeah, 60% would have been the minimum, right? And so, we're trying to go for more than that. But again, as you apply this in a topographical location here with the stacked flats again, it would mean that we would have to pull all of the buildings right down on the street and create this real urban facade as you come down to Town and Park Drive there. And so, with the topography, by pushing the buildings inward and leaving those ends allows for a more gentle slope and not creating such large retaining walls and carving up the hillside. So, again, this is a relief to the code as we apply it to a hillside setting in this part of our project.
Related to that, the code also requires that those buildings be between 10 and 20 feet from the back of sidewalk, which is a very urban condition. Topographically, it's difficult. We have major retaining walls that would isolate those front doors from the street. We're asking for just a little bit more space between our building facades and this back of sidewalk between 20, 20, 30 feet. A little bit more room, a little bit more rural feel.
And we're going to turn the time back over to Tony to present this part.
Erin. So, just wanted to make sure, do we need to take a step back and kind of give you a little bit more context about the position on the planet where this is? You're okay? You kind of understand? Okay. Sorry. Are you all following along with where we left off then? Okay. Thank you. Okay. So, a lot of these design requirements for snout garages, as they're called, they're really intended to deal with kind of the ugly garage that shows up on the front of the lot. But really, garages aren't the most attractive street wall. And the interesting wall features of a home can't be seen if your garage is dominating a building lot. As far as functionality, when you have narrow, small lots and you have driveways that are accessing the front, your driveways tend to dominate your lot and doesn't leave much room between neighbors as far as, you know, driveways. And so, there's less place to put snow, and there's also less place to park on the street. Take Muirfield for an example. Muirfield is often used as an example of too narrow of a street, but it's actually not the problem. The problem is design. It's not the width of the street, and it relates to these issues. And then, finally, safety is the issue. Eyes on the street. If you have a garage on the front, you don't have people in the house that are able to see out onto the street and monitor and make sure that people are where they're supposed to be. So, your solutions, and the first one is to do a rear yard garage, and that puts your garage back off the road and gets rid of all the parking, the snow, and the aesthetic issues. The issue here that D.R. Horton has is topography. We've got a lot of topography up in the Highlands. And secondly, they are trying to find a way to differentiate between townhomes and single-family homes. And if they do rear yard garages besides just the topography, then there isn't really a distinction other than not being attached to your neighbor. And they feel that having, and I agree, I think, single-family, there should be some expectation that you have a rear yard rather than a driveway or alley in the back of your... The other way to deal with snout garages is to create wider lots. That certainly is a balance with affordability. Home design, to de-emphasize the garage, you can add living space in front of the garage, and that was, that will be mentioned more. You actually bring the porch and the living space in front of the garage. Windows facing the street, doors facing the street, and different architecture from home to home will all help deal with the aesthetics of garages dominating the street. And then, finally, maintenance of streets for narrow lots. My recommendation is, if we're going to go this direction, we need to use private streets. With Muirfield, I think there's several mistakes that the city and developer made in Muirfield. Number one is, those streets probably should be private. If we're going to have narrow lots with all, with a lot of driveways, which Muirfield has, the homeowners' association is in a better situation to deal with parking and maintenance than the city. I think we have Phil here on our Planning Commission who lives there, and I think he can attest to that. So, I'm in support of what we're talking about tonight, provided that the streets are private. So, in other words, my recommendation is, if we're going to deal with narrow lots facing the front, those need to be private streets, or you're going to repeat the problems that you have in Muirfield. And I just wanted to make that clear.
Are we going to go back to the developer to finish his points?
Sure are. I'm almost done with...
What else?
Yep, I'm almost done with my soapbox. So, private streets, multiple wild plains along the front face, windows, two-foot projection beyond the garage, and there will be pictures illustrating this, require alternating flipped floor plans, different lot sizes, which the code already requires, so that you have a mix of lot types in along the street, require the front door to face the street, require covered porch and supportive pillars in front of the garage face. And so, here's some pictures of what I mean by snout garages. These are just down in Salt Lake, and if you own one of these or family lives in them, I'm sorry, I don't mean to pick on you, but there certainly are even more snoutier snout garages. I just forgot to get with Deana. She has a lot of pictures of those, but you can see kind of the point I'm illustrating here is the interesting part of the house is not really seen. And I'll turn the torch back over to you.
Sure. Thanks, Tony. So, this is what the code currently requires, and while we could build this, we didn't feel like it was the best-looking or utilization of the space. Again, with the narrow lots that are provided in the code, trying to meet the intent there. You can go to the next one. You got it, Greg. Here's just a rendering of what that looks like on the sides. And so, we hope to achieve, here's the two side-by-sides. The left is what the code currently requires, and what we wanted to do on the right was adopt those recommendations that Tony just made, right? We pulled that front porch out. We have some supporting pillars in front of it. We add the additional living space over the top and create a bigger wall break, and we have windows on all the planes facing the street. And this isn't the final architecture, but the theming and the textures are there, right? With those different planes and how they stand out. You can see some farmhouse, some mountain modern, some craftsmen. Those craftsmen pillars you can see stand out. And so, this would just be reducing, again, the requirement from having the five foot pulled out all the way over the garage back to just two feet. And we feel like that accommodation allows us to still meet those recommendations. Planning Commission suggested... Planning Commission suggested that we adopt those as well. And so we've included that for your consideration in the body of the ordinance, adopting all those recommendations. Our last one is the block length. So right now, if you go to the next page, this will help explain it a little bit more. In a subdivision, you measure the block length from intersection to intersection. And where we have, this, this street has been upgraded to, I believe it's a collector class road by the city's master transportation plan. And so where we put our buildings, rather than have streets come down in those sections to break up the block, we're asking for some relief on the block length. We're still meeting the intent of the block length by providing origins, pathways to get from your origin to your destination. And that's represented here by the red lines. You'll still have at-grade street crossings, allowing, you know, public to get across the street and down to the trail that's on the bottom that runs along the lower canal and over to the clubhouse there on the, on the left side across from the church. But that's really the, how the block length system works. And again, this is one of those, as we talked to Mr. Jansen, he was like, yeah, that's, that would be a much better application here on a hillside than, than, you know, flat, again, flat urban main street.
And again, this is the only block in the entire development that, that has the conflict, just this one block.
Right, well, that's, that's our presentation. We tried to simple it down and make it a little more digestible. And again, we really appreciate staff working with us and a good conversation we were able to have with the planning commission on this matter. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, so counsel, I'm going to open it up to any of you to go over their different 10 points. Anyone want to take that first? Mike?
I just have a few. This took a lot of effort to get my head around, but I think you've done a really good job distilling it down. And I like how you're recommending, this is what we're proposing. Specifically, here's the issue, here's the specific proposal. The snout garages, I've always hated snout garages, but I understand when you've got, what, 40-foot what with now, which is trying to, you know, make it more cost effective. Where do you put a garage? And you're going to see the garage. I like all these recommendations that the planning commissions offered. What about, you show pictures of windows in the garages. Are you against adding that as another one? I think that softens that, that solid garage door.
Yeah, we'd be happy to do that.
I've noticed the, all the pictures Tony showed basically were not, didn't have windows. So I like the pillars and I like, don't like this porch, the proposed things where you have the porch sticking out. What is that, 12 feet, something?
Yeah.
That's ugly.
That's the current.
But I do like the columns on the right one. I think that's important. I think, I'm not keen on the dark door, but I do like the windows. There are windows in that door, and I think that really softens the door, the columns, the roof, that shed roof that comes out. All of that, I think, changes the picture, the thought of the snout garage, so.
We'd be happy to.
You should consider that.
Additional recommendations.
Windows and garage doors, I think that always brings natural light into the garage, too. It was just nice. I there's a lot of. I do, I do agree that the maximum block length needs to be reduced, I'm sorry, well amended for hillsides. It just doesn't make sense. And I would much rather have, I really want pedestrian connectivity. This is a pedestrian oriented town center. So that's what I want to see emphasized, and I think you're doing that. The more we can emphasize connectivity of pedestrians and the more we can connect sidewalks. Tony, I've been a little bit disappointed just on some of the sidewalk issues up above the upper Jornel Coyote portion that rain tree is doing, because a lot of times they just stop. And it's actually hard to get from the streets up to the homes, even though they front on the streets, because there's no, it's the connectivity. I know it's because there's hillsides and things, but I really want to emphasize connectivity of sidewalks.
Were you saying connectivity from the street up to?
To the sidewalks in front of the homes. They're townhomes, these are the townhomes. And that's what we're looking at here is townhome blocks. So, and stairs are appropriate, too, as long as there's ADA somewhere nearby. So I just think that's important, that connectivity of pedestrian access, including down to the street and then up from the street, wherever those hillsides may be. So you're showing that in red, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Agreeable to that then? Okay, that's very good. What else, Mike? Anything else?
I really think everything else makes sense now that we see it distilled down to here. I don't really have any issues with any of it anymore.
I just want to add on to something Mike said real quick.
Go ahead.
Garage doors. Could there be variation, like not all the same door, different materials, different looks? Maybe one is all glass, frosted glass, just help break up that a little bit more. So I think it'll help break up design, because I think I'm, I'm fine with what you've recommended with the six different designs. But I think the garage doors would make a big difference on that, too. So that was my only thing. I think you've done a great job. Thanks.
Thank you.
Scott, do you want to get any pickier on that to say more than six within the 120 feet, as I recall of, you know, our code? Or are you saying that you're fine with six different types within that 120 feet?
Six different designs of home, but I'm just, I'm, maybe I'm looking to see if.
More, you want more different designs than just what?
Well, just in the garage doors.
Okay.
Vary the garage doors.
Vary garage doors.
Sure.
Materials, colors, how much glass? I think that would make it really beautiful, actually.
That's great. There's, there's already some language in the code that requires that. I think it even has to be a wood look-alike, so it has to have some type of texture pattern to it, right? Like a wood grain feel. So, so, yeah, agreed.
Thank you.
We can do that.
I'll piggyback, that is, that is the biggest thing we see. So I agree with Scott. Grain, the textures, the trim work on the doors make them look really good.
Yeah.
I know it costs more.
Again, complimentary, we don't want to make it look so beautiful that it's the first thing that you see, right? We'd like to have it fade a little bit into the background.
These are the best garage doors I've ever seen. That's a Phillips garage door.
But, but again, yes, yes, we want it to look great. And put, again, putting the windows in there, we may put them across the top beam, we may put them on one side, right? If it's more of a mountain modern, but to vary that.
Sure, the whole frosted door look.
Sure.
A few of those scattered would be cool. Thank you.
Aaron?
On Article Three, talking about the porches with the enclosed courtyard, is there a minimum size of the porch? I'm worried about the language, that it doesn't seem to set any sort of minimum on the actual porch itself. It kind of reads actually that you could get out of having a porch completely if you had a courtyard.
Yeah, so the code that right now that it reads in the, is it the natural, Greg? Says that you can have either a covered porch or an enclosed balcony. And so we just want the same treatment, the either or treatment on all of the architectural styles, all four of them. Again, this was a code omission, that or got left out of some of them. So we technically, under one of the, under three of them, we wouldn't have to have any porch. It would just have to be an enclosed balcony area. But we are still going to provide a 35 square foot minimum covered porch on all of the townhomes regardless.
Okay, so that, that's the minimum that the plan or the relaxation here would be is as low as 35, but no lower than 35. I guess the question would be, do we need to have that wording specifically spelled out?
Okay, you're welcome to also make that wording more careful. And Tony can help you or Dina can help you with that wording in emotion. Okay, anything else? Sid?
So basically, this is proving our codes correct. Basically, they're kind of the guinea pigs of trying to figure out how to do a development on a hillside, which is, it's difficult. And it's, it's hard. And again, things are going to have to change a little bit. We're going to have to be up for that, just to support, you know, developments like this. So just realize that things are going to be changing up there. And I'm okay with pretty much everything that is presented. And again, yeah, we just need to have some variation in the, in the buildings. And like we discussed, let's don't make it look like the same. Let's have a nice development up there.
Yvonne? So Tony, to your comment about private roads, could you elaborate on that just a little bit more for me? I'm trying to understand, at this point, I understand how Muirfield does. I think I've given the example also of, of a development that was down in Harriman, where it was, the roads were so narrow and the lack of parking, even though they had this type of parking. And I think it was similar to what you said with the, with the snout garages. I keep wanting to say snot garages, so forgive me if that comes out, I'm so sorry. Anyways, but with the snout garages, what, what is that? What does that entail? How does that change the perspective of making them private? And is this something that has been shared with, with Russ and with engineering department?
Yeah, I think, yeah, Russ is aware of that.
Okay.
And so the reason for the recommendation of using private streets is HOA is.
Which this will have.
Yes, this will be an HOA.
Okay, okay.
But when, when you have both an HOA and the city and with public streets and residents, you know, complaining about stuff and then us plowing, it's difficult for us to respond quick enough. The, the, private streets allow the HOA to maintain, plow, issue citation, you know, whatever, however they do that, the enforcement of the towing and for people parking in the wrong area. There's a lot of disconnect when you have public streets in this type of a situation. If you have the private, the HOA is able to take care of that. And from a selfish standpoint, I don't want to put our public works back in the situation of pushing and plowing the streets like they do in where there's very little parking in Muirfield. I don't want to repeat that. If we're going to have public streets, I don't support this.
And would this be throughout the whole, just or just in the area where the townhomes are, so?
Well, this is actually the single family.
The single family, excuse me.
Are actually, are going to be side or rear-low garages. So what we're talking about with that issue is just the single-family detached housing, which I recognize is different than what Muirfield is.
Okay. Mr. Deal, can you address, is there a master HOA that would be for more than just the private street area that Tony's recommending, as well as the public street area in the single family and townhomes? You're not splitting up your HOA, as I understand.
I'm going to let D.R. Horton answer that. But one thing I would like to say is that the entire development are all private streets or alleys, except for the master roads, you know, the collector streets. The collector streets are public, they have to be public. So all the collector streets will be public, and we don't have any, single family, any driveways on the collector streets anyway.
Well, Tony, then that's going to fit into what you were just saying, right?
Absolutely, yes. There, there is a series and of public-private streets. So the public ones with Highway 40 being here to your bottom right, the major public one goes here to the northeast. Oh, there we go, there's a color. So the, the blue ones, yeah. The rest of them are private. And these, these blue ones are either major or minor collectors, and these other streets would be private.
Okay, but you're not, Mr. Deal and Mr. Looser, thank you. You're not referring to this road that's next to the church, though? The one that swings by the church over to UVU? You're not worried about the driveways on that or any of Tony's comments on that road?
No, we have no driveways from homes going on to the public roads.
When you go down to your mixed-use commercial there by the highway, Tony, are you suggesting that that would also be a private street, even though it's?
Right down here?
The blue, the blue that comes out from the roundabout to the north.
Oh, right here?
No, the one that goes to the north here, yes, that part. Are you saying that that should be private or is it already?
Nope, the, the plan that you see actually fits within the recommendations that we've made as far as which one should be public and private.
Okay, so is there going to be one master HOA for all of those private roads then?
Yes.
Okay, so it'll be equally divided among the citizens that purchase there? Okay, very good.
Who will, with the HOA, is this something that will be predetermined as far as what the standards are and parking situation? So, or is this something that the HOA comes in and they say, okay, we're going to, okay? Because that's my concern. Unless there is something that is set in place, I, I see this, this issue of having your homes with with parking issues on the street, which creates exactly what I'm, I think that's what you're trying to avoid from, from eliminating the snout garages and so forth. And I just am thinking that that's the direction. If you're going to go in that direction, then that needs to be set in place, because there's where your problems will begin. That, it just creates this problem and exactly what we're trying to eliminate for our public works with anything else that's coming through. So I just wanted to.
As far as parking, so a lot of things, there are some things that D.R. Horton is proposing that is above and beyond our code that we haven't talked about today. So for example, some of the rear-loaded garages on the townhomes actually don't have to have a pad behind the garage face. They actually are putting a 20-foot pad between the garage and the alleyway. So there's actually parking like we're all used to between the street and the garage face. So there will be forced, you know, basically four spaces for each of those townhomes. That's one way that they're doing that. Another example of what they're doing for parking is shown on here, I zoomed way in. But the, the primary area that we're talking about on the single-family front-loaded garages is right here in this light blue, sky blue area. And you can see they do have some perpendicular parking planned in some parts of the neighborhood. They also have some here where there's a lot of townhomes. And additionally, these front-loaded garages on these single-family are going to have the four spaces. They're going to have the two in the garage plus the two on the driveway. And then, and then a third, yep, and then the third thing that is, they're going to strategically flip the floor plans so that there's bigger spaces between some of the houses for spots where you can park on the street.
So you'll have your driveways on the outside edges of two homes. That will allow you to get one park, one car on the street in front of the homes.
So when I'm looking at this, let me ask some questions, please, if that's all right. Are you done, Yvonne? I, I'm thinking about last winter's snow and where the snow would go, especially when you've got parking right on the street with the townhomes. Where are your snow removal areas? And have those been consulted with on our public works department for, you know, their expertise on knowing how much snow we need to put places in big winter years? Have you consulted with them, Tony? Have you consulted with Matt on their snow removal areas that they're proposing?
Not yet, because here we're still talking about the master plan concept. They are preparing for preliminary. So as we zoom out, the, the blue roads that we have are going to have eight-foot wide planter strips, which will give us, as well as very limited driveways onto these streets. So we're going to have very sufficient place for snow park, snow placement on those streets on the private. We haven't got down to that level of detail. When they come back for final and preliminary, we certainly can look at that in more depth.
Well, even though they're, you're proposing them to be private streets, they still need places to put the snow to. And, you know, the smaller we get with the lots and the bigger we get with the driveways as a proportion of those lots, I'm just really concerned about traffic, right, and congestion. And because they're private, they're not going to be through, right? You have a lot of roads that end. And I'm just really concerned that we're taking our entire city and we're putting it into this little skinny part of the hill, basically. But we have very few roads that, that connect and go all the way through, because they're mostly private streets. And that's a lot of people in a smaller place. And, you know, I want them to enjoy living here. We all do, right? You want to make it as attractive as possible. So Matt Kennard, if you could, you know, kind of look for that and see if you think those private roads have enough snow removal areas, that would be great, because monster snows come. Okay, now I have a question that you're probably not going to like. Hang on one second, Sid, unless you, unless it relates to that.
Yeah, it relates to that. Do we have anything in code that dictates how much snow storage that they should? And that's something that we need to think about.
That's a very good idea.
Most communities do have, you have to provide. Most communities do have, you have to provide a snow storage plan. And if you can't do it on site, you have to have an agreement to take it off.
That's a really good idea. And Matt Kennard, I don't know if you could work with Sid on something like that because, you know, we've always guestimated, right? And we need your expertise because your crew does it. Okay, I have to bring up a gorilla in the room. Where in Exhibit 2 on the First Amendment to the Master Development Agreement, you're not counting the 21 units as far as towards affordable housing in a bonus density. And that's probably because you've already got how many homes, you know, that you want for sale and so forth. But it seems that in Clause 2, you know, the amendment is, sorry, I just lost it here. Let me see if I can get back to that. There we go. Yeah, if you can go to it, Tony, it's on page 12 of 356 or in the Second Amendment, page 1. So the base density entitlements are increased a bit, but the 21, I think it's 21 additional ERUs shall not be used in the calculation of the bonus density entitlements, which we put towards affordable housing. So I'm just wondering if we could still think about negotiating that. Our city needs as much affordable housing as possible. I'm hopeful we could get maybe two more affordable housing units out of this additional 21 units. Now, that's the way I'm reading it, Tony. Can we, is that correct, that I'm reading that for 21 additional ERUs? And then could we get more affordable housing because of that? This is proposing to not do that, to not do more affordable housing. But could we still negotiate that?
We, I don't know if we need Robert to kind of help us understand what we're reading here. But there still is the requirement in the original Master Development Agreement to provide affordable housing.
Yes, I understand that. But it's saying that those 21 additional ERUs shall not be used for the bonus density entitlements, which goes towards affordable housing. So could we still think about negotiating that?
You asked that question when we were in here originally. And we were looking at redoing the plan that was not our idea to redo it. If you remember, we had some very large, expensive estate lots up in that area.
Yes.
And because of that road that the city is requesting, we lost all those lots. And so now we have much smaller lots and we have a huge economic impact on us. I mean, huge economic impact. And that's why that we weren't doing affordable on those 21 because it's costing us millions of dollars to accommodate the road that the city wanted to be able to get into your art center and your school and your parks above us.
Okay, I really thought that it was Jordan L. Ridge that was going to be providing that and then the road to the art center. And you were matching it up, right, according to Russ's recommendations?
They needed property from us in order to put that road in. And in order, so we gave up property because...
That's the part, then?
That's the problem that we have, okay?
What about getting one more affordable housing unit then? I'm not talking ERUs, I'm talking about a unit, one or two units, not one or two ERUs. What do you think?
I just have a quick comment. Most of this is affordable housing. So, I mean, you've got stacked flats, you've got townhomes. If this isn't affordable, there's nothing affordable. So I don't think we need to add any more affordable, like dedicated affordable housing.
And I understand that it should be, but you're going to charge what the market will bear. And we're just trying to get some, we're just trying to get some that are deed restricted in perpetuity. We're trying to get as many as we can. So I would appreciate it if the council would consider, you know, negotiating with the developers to say, hey, can we get one or two more units since you are getting some bonus density, even though you had to trade land, which would have been your pricier single-family lots? I understand that.
We felt like we already negotiated that because this was, had an approval back in, was it August? Yeah, in August, and we got council approval with this.
And I thought that was just regarding the road?
No, it was regarding the ERUs.
Well, I understand that too.
And it was discussed in that meeting.
This is my last chance to ask. Let me just put it that way, okay? All right, council, is there anything else? Is there anything else you want to ask about? We've got five more minutes on this agenda item and then it's going to come back later if you want to make a motion on approval.
I would have to say that I agree with the mayor on this. If we could find some accommodation. I was under the impression that that was something that was discussed and that we hadn't really walked away from that. I don't remember that discussion. And I realized that there are accommodations being made already and there has been some sacrifices. But I was under the impression that there was still room in your hearts for at least providing that. What, you know, to go to what has already been said, I have this concern and I, you know that I've always had the concern with this type of development. We are bringing in a high-density area and that will change the face of this community in many ways. And one thing that we are dealing with right now is that those individuals who provide service and who provide for our community and for individuals who are moving in here, they have nowhere to go. And I hate, I'm not going to drop names, but we have a development currently that is selling one-bedroom, one-bath small units for well over the 60% AMI that this council has requested a consideration from most developers coming into the community. And the understanding at that time was also that it would be affordable. That's the word that seems to be dropped when there's someone approaching the council and asking, hey, let's bring this in and we're going to bring in affordable housing. And then somewhere along the line, we lose what affordable really means. It's easy for us to say that stacked housing and stacked development is the way to go for affordable. But when you're still selling it and renting it and well over that 60% AMI, which is 2+, 2K+, you're not 2K+ but 2,000+, it's not affordable. And to ask just for two or three or four or five or, you know, obviously that's asking too much, but even two, I would hope that with the accommodations that have been made by the council, that that's something that we can still keep in there. I think one of our previous counselors, that council members had asked that as well. And so I think we need to get away from the thought that we realize that there have been changes in the economy, that those changes in the economy have hit a lot of people who are making a lot less. And they're the industry that serves us. You know, they bring, they provide what we all want and need, which is our first responders and so forth. So you can do that. We'd like to at least bring that forward to us and consider that because I personally have a hard time already with the density. And then to be told now with all that density that this affordable housing really isn't affordable anymore. I'd like to see something if we could. Thank you.
Okay, and then could you guesstimate? What do you think the maximum height of retaining walls, you know, now that you've gotten to this point, would be with these changes compared to what they could have been before? Any ideas? No?
I'll look to my engineer for just a moment.
Just guesstimate?
Oh, yes. It would happen like yours.
Yeah, please come forward and tell us your name, sir.
Satar Tabriz. If we push the walls to the size, it would be about 30 feet at the maximum place.
Without the changes or with the changes?
Without the changes.
Okay, and then with the changes, how much do you think?
How much? We're going to be terracing the walls and we're going to use the slopes in our favor.
Oh, like we're seeing at another development, which we call the Coyote Springs, where they've terraced it all the way up?
I haven't seen it, but yes, yeah, it just makes a much mellow transition from the, let's say, Commons Boulevard down to the, where the apartments are.
Well, just a little tidbit, we have ADA requirements for the new trails that are being proposed here in the red lines. So that will be very exciting to see you get those trails in. Very happy about that.
We definitely would have at least one ADA access. But as I heard earlier, we may even use steps as a way of network in the sidewalks.
I'm not sure in the code if it allows that, Tony, actually. I'm not sure. I thought all trails had to have the ADA compliance. So that's, that's something that, okay. All right, thank you, thank you, sir. Okay, any other questions? Anything else? Is the council agreeable to bring this back to the action items and make a motion on it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, well, we're not voting, we're just kind of doing this.
Yes, we're agreeable.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you very much, sirs. We're going to move on to the next agenda item, which is our Post Committee Presentation. POST stands for Parks, Open Space, Trails and Trees. And Scott House and Ashley Farrell, our Post Committee co-chairs, are going to come and present this. Now, you have 30 minutes. And the reason why they're here, council, is that we're trying to get everybody to you before you make budget decisions in January. And so Scott and Ashley, they've been on the committee since the beginning. Really thankful for all of your years of service to our city. And we're ready for your great presentation, please.
Thanks, Tony. So as Mayor Franco mentioned, Ashley and I co-chair the Parks, Open Space, Trails and Tree Committee. We rebranded last year to POST, keep it simple. Next slide, Tony. And so we wanted to give just kind of a brief overview of our committee vision statement. So the Heber City Parks, Open Space, Trails and Tree Advisory Committee commits to sustain, preserve and expand Heber Valley's cherished system of parks, trails and open space for the purpose of enhancing our residents' quality of life, protecting the historic scenic ecological and geological value of community and to promote a healthy balance, preserving the community's rural character, especially during times of economic and developmental growth. So I think we're right in the heart of that. I think we can all agree on that. We'll do a quick introduction of our committee. Next slide, please. So committee members, Ashley Farrell, co-chair, myself, Nathaniel Adams, Christian Thompson, Mia Yu, who is the Executive Director of the Wasatch Trails Foundation. Don Taylor is a standing seat with the Mountain Land Association of Governments. If you're not familiar with Don, he is our Regional Trail Planner through MAG. John Crook, Sarah Simons. Sarah represents the Wasatch County Health Department on our committee. That's also a standing seat. And then Tori Broughton, Tori recently to Heber City with the Trek Store, or formerly Slim and Knobbies. Next slide. So we were founded to support the Trails, Parks and Open Space Master Plans as part of Envision 2050, right? And so when we went through that process as a community, our community said, hey, trails, recreation, walkability, those are all big priorities. Keeping our open space, keeping our parks, those were all priorities. And our committee was formed to advise council and the Planning Commission on those different projects that we see as priorities and think the city should best tackle at that time. Next slide, please, Tony. So just some highlights of past successes. The 300 South Trail or the Heber Central Trail, this was, I think, a really great project for our committee and the council to work together on. I think this, in my opinion, it highlights how a committee and a council and a community should work together to come to a solution. And we created a really beautiful piece of infrastructure. And I was telling Councilmember Johnston just earlier, as soon as that trail was completed, it instantly started to see use. And I would encourage you to go to 300 South and just hang out and watch how many people are using this trail, walking dogs, kids commuting on bikes, getting exercise, commuting between homes. It's amazing. And so it's that old, if you build it, they will come. And we took a stab at it as a community. We built it and we're already seeing really positive results, I think, in terms of traffic safety, getting kids off the street and creating healthy outcomes for our residents. We helped with the Muirfield Park expansion and worked very closely with council at that time, as well as partners in the nonprofit space to ensure that open space in perpetuity, as well as the redesign of that park. And we're still continuing to be part of that conversation. And then our committee was a big part of seeing the TAP tax move forward in our community. That's the Trails, Arts and Parks Tax administered by the county. But as a valley, we all are going to benefit from that tax. Next slide, please. So going forward, some of the things that we're looking at. We have what we call Ride Wasatch. So one of the things that came to our committee late summer, early fall was we know that e-bikes are becoming prevalent in terms of use. They're very hard to regulate not, and I would argue that there's really nobody that in a split second can tell you whether it's a Class 1, Class 2 or Class 3 e-bike and how fast it's going. But they are a great mode of transportation for our community, whether that's kids, families, anything like that. But we've seen some behavior that's maybe not conducive to safety on the trails. We, as a committee, thought regulation is a really hard thing to do of trails. People don't want to be told how to recreate or what they're supposed to do on a trail. And so our concept was rather than saying, hey, the police department needs to be out there and we need to write a code and we need to start enforcing laws, we're working on a concept that says, what if we instead built an outreach and education campaign for our community and allowed our community to buy into cycling safe, using trails safely, being a great community member and part of that trail community, and maybe try to create some self-policing? And so this would involve a pledge program, an education component, an outreach component. We'd have multiple partners involved in this program. So not only Heber City, but we also envision Midway City, Wasatch County, the Wasatch County Health Department and potentially other nonprofit partners, including the Intermountain Hospital, Heber Valley Chamber and local businesses. So very collaborative effort to, again, educate our trail users on safe use of the trail and to maybe create some self-policing within the community, right? And so I think that goes a long way. As someone who's used trails all their life, I've found it's way easier to approach someone on the trail and go, hey, did you know that riding on muddy trails isn't appropriate? And it costs thousands of dollars to fix that? And nine times out of 10, the answer is, I had no idea. And thank you for telling me and I won't do it anymore. And so I think before we go towards regulation of trails and really putting more work on the plate of our law enforcement officers and our city staff, we should really try an education and outreach campaign. The cool thing about this is if we do this right, it could create the foundation for some code in the future. If that's where we felt as a community we would need to get to, that would ultimately be up to you as a council. But we feel like this is a great first step to really try to give our community the respect that they've earned and see how it goes. So this is one thing that we're going to be working on in the new year. Again, we've got multiple partners and we're just kind of hashing out. We have a rough outline right now. And when it's a little bit more baked, we'd love to show it to council. Next slide, please, Tony. So TAP funds for trail maintenance. Now, we said we helped pass the TAP tax and we know that TAP funds are coming in in perpetuity in the future. The important thing, and this is an industry-wide trend for all trails across the United States, there is an immense amount of grant funding sources for building trails. There is zero, up until this last year, that the state of Utah created a trail maintenance grant that's very narrow in scope. But there's really zero grant funding sources for trail maintenance. On average, $500 up to $2,000 a mile per year per trail for trail maintenance. It is an ongoing expense, but it's an expense that our community has stated, hey, we want trails, we want our community to be connected by trails. And so one of the things that we're thinking about is, how do we leverage not only TAP funds for future trail maintenance? But one of the things that we want to work with council on going forward in 2024 and to your FY '25 is, how do we look at our budget as a community and say, can we start looking at dedicated funding for trail maintenance? Because what we know is, if we allow those trails to fall into disrepair, the cost to bring them back up to safe usage standards and then continue to maintain them is far greater than just maintaining those trails as we go along. I like to think about it as mowing your lawn. Like you go on vacation for a month and don't mow your lawn and it's not a fun chore. But if you mow your lawn, you know, 1.5 times a week, it's a pretty easy thing to keep going. So we think it's super important going forward that as a council, you really start to consider not only how are we building these facilities, but how are we maintaining these facilities? The other piece of trail maintenance that we also want to think about is clarifying who is responsible for that trail maintenance. And so when we think about our partners in development, when we think about our partners and other government entities in the county, we think about our residents and what we're responsible for, we want to make sure that we can work with council to clearly define what that is and to make sure that we have the right structure in place for that maintenance. This includes snow removal, ongoing maintenance. This includes snow removal, ongoing maintenance, code enforcement, right? Who's, who's telling people, you can't park on the trail. It's not a parking spot. It's a trail. People need to be able to access it just like they would a road. And we want to make sure that we have a solid plan and a solid definition for what that looks like. I think we all know right now, like, hey, you're supposed to shovel your sidewalks. How much of that is actually happening? And as we build more of these trails, we want to be very clear about this is your portion. This is what you're responsible for. This is the benefit you get for it. And this is what the city is responsible for. This is what Heber City Police is responsible for. This is what the HOAs are responsible for. This is what the Trail Foundation is responsible for. So really coming to a clear understanding of who is responsible for trail maintenance, when and where. And I think we've got some great first steps going forward with this. As an example, the Wasatch Trails Foundation has been working very closely with the partners at Jordan L. Ridge. And we've worked very closely hand in hand with them to say, hey, we're willing to come in and step in on maintenance and help to grant fund some of these things. But ultimately, it's a private trail system. And so if we're going to do it as a nonprofit, we have to be able to have some say in what that looks like. And really awesome, the Jordan L. Ridge folks were, they said, we're going to wrap this into the HOA. And as the HOA grows, those trail maintenance funds will grow. And they're going to build that into the HOA for a lot of the developments that they're working on up there. And so we're hopeful that that'll happen. And what that allows us to do is say, hey, we can go to the HOA and as a nonprofit, as the Trail Foundation, we could go and leverage that as a matching fund. So we can say, we have 20,000 here and we're going to use that as a matching fund to apply for a grant. And so that's that really public-private partnership that we want to get towards. But again, there's lots of ways that we can kind of dice up trail maintenance. But it's something that we should start thinking about as a community now. Charlie Sturgis was a big part of the Mountain Trails Foundation and its success to where it is now. And that was one thing as a mentor that Charlie constantly hammered on the city council in Park City, the county council in Summit County was, you have to dedicate maintenance. We can build trails all day long, but maintenance is the key factor. That's what keeps them safe. It's what keeps people coming back and using them. So trail maintenance is going to be an important piece going forward. And we'd like to work with council on really evaluating that and what it looks like and what those dollar signs look like associated with it. Next slide, Tony. So the bicycle, bicycle safety fair. So working with the Wasatch County Health Department, this again kind of wraps into that education and outreach piece of it. We know that the school district and our teachers and our parents are going to play a critical role in trail safety. Kids listen to mom and dad, or maybe most kids, mine don't listen to me, but that's another story. But most kids listen to their teachers and most kids listen to their parents. And we think that's a really great avenue for educating kids on bicycle safety and trail safety. And so we're going to work with the Wasatch County Health Department this spring, when they do their safety fair, to really bring bicycle safety into that and to ensure that we're providing that information as our trail system grows. Again, education and outreach is always the best and first step to take to creating safer outcomes for kids and trail users. So that's a big thing that we want to work on in May of '24. Next slide, please, Tony. And then continue to support and realize the vision our community outlined in Envision 2050. This is pretty broad, right? But we know we have some big opportunities coming to our community here in a very short timeline. We know we have the rail with trail. We know we have our Recreation and Tourism District as a future piece of development in our community. With that, we have the opportunity to maybe build paved pump track at that location that accesses for all of our community, right? And the Trail Foundation is working with a lot of our different grant partners to see how we can partner with that. But that would be something where we'd want the city to partner in that. Hey, let's all be a partner in building this recreation infrastructure so that the city doesn't have to shoulder the full burden, but we're working collaboratively. I think this also would mean the continuation of that Central Heber Trail along 300 South, right? Let's bring those neighborhoods all the way to that Recreation District and to that Rail with Trail. Let's get the, let's get the Center Street Trail done. Let's get the Center Street Trail done so that when that Recreation and Tourism District is built, we have a clear artery from some of our major communities and population centers all the way to our Recreation and Tourism District, all the way down into Provo, all the way up into Lake Creek and Center Street, and all the way out to the Jordan L. Ridge. So I think we're still looking at all of those pieces. And as a committee in an advisory role, what we try to do is look at those pieces of infrastructure and opportunities and plug them in at the right time. When it's right for the city and when we feel that the funding is right and the development or the timing is right for it. And that's when we bring projects to council going forward. So going forward, I think you'll see a lot of this coming to you. Again, we'll be working as a committee to say, hey, here's what we think Ride Wasatch looks like and an estimated cost. Is the council in support of this? And then we can start going down that path. Here's what we think trail maintenance might look like in the future. What is the, what does the council want to support? So all of this are projects that we're working on. And we've got a great group of really engaged citizens on the committee. We work really well together. It's a fun thing to be a part of. There's not many people that hate trails or hate being outside. So it's a, it's a nice thing for us to be involved in. And we've been very grateful for the opportunity to work with this council and our city staff. It's been, it's been a great learning experience for Ashley and I, but it's really been cool to see how our city is working and growing together.
Anything else? Ashley, are you going to present anything? Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions for Scott or Ashley? Go ahead, Aaron.
Have you, have you put together some preliminary numbers of what you're looking for with budgets for maintenance? I'm just not, never a fan of giving money to something where I don't know what it's going to be spent on.
Yeah, that's, that's a great question, Mr. Cheatwood. And I think as a committee, we have never come with like a specific dollar funding amount, right? We've come with a project to the council and said, hey, is this something you would support? And with council approval, we then work with staff to come up with those budget line items and what that, what those estimated costs are. Today, we don't have any budget numbers prepared. And I don't want to throw out random numbers and say, hey, we want $1 million to do this. And then it's 2 million or 500,000, right? We want to be way more strategic in that. And so I think as a committee, what we want to do is really take the time to prioritize between maintenance, Ride Wasatch, the Center Street Trail, continuation of 300 South, our Tourism District, put those out there on the map and see how they stack up in terms of what those key priorities are for FY25 and in the calendar year '24, and then be able to help you inform your budget. So we know that that timeline is pretty tight. We know that by about mid-February, you want to have those numbers in place. And we feel like we can work with staff, as well as our council representatives, to come up with some solid numbers to have in your, in your pocket for decision-making.
And then the only challenge I would have then is, you know, in future projects, if you can get ahead of what you think the estimated ongoing maintenance would look like, just so we can get an understanding of what we're committing to in the future as we approve projects. And then it is, it is February, but we, we have some off-site time to talk through all the priorities this year, even sooner than that. So if there's anything that's broken right now, I just challenge you to communicate that at some point. That's not in any way, shape or form a promise, but this is coming from a trail user that has been disappointed often by broken unsafe trails. So it's something I can hear what you're saying and it'd just be good to know what you're actually talking about, like what, what amount or what kind of future commitment you need.
Yeah.
For stuff that's existing or stuff that we've already committed to, that's already been put together, like the 300 South. You know, help us understand what the need looks like.
And I think it, to, to kind of give you like that rough marker out there, as a city, if we, we should roughly be considering about $1,500 per mile per year for trail maintenance within the trails that are within our scope, right? And so, and keep in mind, we have partners that we can leverage in this. So for our backcountry trail system, we can leverage the Trail Foundation, right? And so, yes, it might be $1,500 a mile, but we might be able to do that with $500 a mile from the city as a matching grant to $1,000 a mile from the state, right? So there are creative ways that we can, we can leverage grants to do this. But on average, across the country, $1,500 per mile per year for trail maintenance is, is the, is the going average.
I mean, just one high level. As you look at the paved trails you were talking about, I think IMBA chapter in Bentonville, Arkansas, did a really good job of that. It's a trail system that I used a lot when I was out there. It's, it's stamped concrete, so they have similar frosts and freezes and ice and snow and stuff that we do. And they're, the way they've built things has lasted many years longer than they expected them to. So I just encourage you to contact them.
Yeah, and I know that was one of Councilmember Johnston's requests when we built the 300 South Trail was.
Concrete.
Yeah, concrete, because we knew asphalt was going to be, in the long run, more maintenance costs, right? It wasn't going to be as aesthetically pleasing. And so we did go with the concrete. And hopefully that will start to alleviate some of those maintenance costs in the future.
I absolutely support your comments and what you're saying on we need to dedicate funds. For every mile of trail we build, we have to work that into our budget in perpetuity. You mentioned $1,500 per mile. Are you saying is that's for, I mean, there's, there's definitely a difference between a, a dirt trail up in the hills and a concrete trail and an asphalt trail. I don't, that doesn't sound like enough.
So for backcountry soft surface trails.
That's 1,500.
It's 500 to 1,000 roughly for, per mile for maintenance.
What is that maintenance?
It could be anything from dealing with drainage damage, erosion, obviously use, right? So just getting that taken care of. I'll give you a great example. How many of you are familiar with the WOW Trail in Wasatch Mountain State Park? We resurfaced that entire trail, or what we call retreaded that entire trail from top to bottom as the Wasatch Trails Foundation this year. It was $85,000. Just in hard numbers, the total that it's going to act with grants and everything that we're going to come to, the overall cost will be closer to $120,000 to retread that trail. Because we're factoring in donation in kind from volunteer service hours and things like that, which go towards that cost, right? So when you think about it, 500 to 1,000 is on the low end for soft surface trails when you factor in using volunteer hours as part of that. And then for paved trails, it's 1,000 to $2,000. Again, it's a big spread, but there's so many ways you can dice that. It's anywhere in that price range. So if we think about it as a council, majority of what we have within our trail system here is going to be hard surface trails, paved trails.
In the town, sure.
In, in the town. Now, as we, as more property gets annexed in and we look at the Jordan L. Ridge, we're going to have substantial soft surface trails out there. But again, the HOAs are going to do the majority of that trail maintenance. And the Trail Foundation is already working closely with those developers to say, hey, we can leverage those funds to bring more dollars to the trail system to ensure its maintenance. But I think 1,500 to 2,000 is a solid number per mile for us to be thinking about. Now inflation and everything's going to drive that up year after year after year. But it's a great starting point as a council to say, hey, this is what we're kind of looking at long-term.
Counsel, I, I agree. And I think this is the year we start talking about that as we come up with a budget, because we can't just kick the can down the road like somebody used to do with the sewer and the water lines. We have to address it every year. And that's what our Public Works and our engineers say is if we address our roads on a continual maintenance basis and fund that in the budget, then we'll, we'll have them forever. We won't have to rip it out because it failed. So, you know, now we've got, we've got a lot of new trails that we've just put in place the last few years. The only trails, really. Coyote Canyon Parkway, the new Heritage Farms Parkway, the Red Ledges Road, 300 South. So we've got to start budgeting for this, in my opinion. And I also, my other opinion is it's not, it should be part of the general fund and not TAP tax. I see special taxes. If we're not willing to fund it with our general fund, then we shouldn't be building them. Maintenance, just like roads. We, the roads get built for free for us, but then we have to maintain them and we have to budget that for it in our, in our general fund. So that's my opinion.
I don't know if we've ever added up how many miles of trails we've put in. Do we have that figure?
I don't have that number in front of me, no.
See, that would be a good place to start, right? And then you could also look at the Summit County and Park City Trail Maintenance Fund. And if they really need a dedicated staff to do that, you see what I mean? Because Mark Rounds is needing more employees, right? And so if you could bring back the mileage, the miles, and perhaps an average number using your figures or what you're seeing in other places that are similar, I think the council would be interested. But what did the rest of you think? Are you interested in what Mike and Scott are saying?
Yeah, definitely. We have neighbors to the north that are doing it. And let's use them as an example. Yvonne and I, when we went on the tour, we went to Boulder. That's one of their main goals is trails.
And trail maintenance now.
Yep.
Yeah. And, and as an example, the state of Utah just created, it's called an RRI Restoration and with something, Infrastructure Grant. And it basically is designed around this because the state was handing out, not necessarily handing out, but granting so much money for trail development. And as a nonprofit, trail groups all over the state were like, this is great. We can't physically build any more trail because we don't have funds to maintain what we already have. And so it's, it's a growing issue nationwide. And, and really, if you look at the, the trail community and trail industry, maintenance is, is, that's what it's all about right now. And there's a lot of trail builders that are coming online here regionally that are like, I'm looking forward to actually not building trail and maintaining and upgrading the current infrastructure that's there so that it stays in perpetuity.
Yvonne?
I was going to say, I, I like what Mike has just shared. And, and yes, when we went on that tour, I mean, with all of the communities we visited, they, they seemed to have this very extensive trail system that was positive and well-maintained and taken care of. And I think part of that with the discussion of how do we provide the funds, I think it goes also to what you said earlier in providing a a program where we educate the community. You know, do you have your car parked on top of one of the trails? I mean, that, that's one thing where we lose what we've put in for the community. As a community, we need to also, you know, for citizens, as citizens, we need to be more aware of what our part is. And that helps to go forward with maintaining these trails. And so I would love to see what you have planned for ideas on how we can educate the community, because I do think that goes hand in hand with the discussion of making sure that we have these trails here for a long time and that they're well-maintained. I mean, the thought of having to spend that much money and then on top of it, how much did you say it was? A hundred, close to 100,000 just to maintain a dirt trail and to get it back to snuff and to get it back to being something that everybody could enjoy? That's, that's a big deal. That's a lot of money.
And, and it is a lot of money. And I think that's part of what we're learning as an industry. You know, you bring up a great point, Councilmember, and the biggest thing is it's not build, just building trails. It's building trails the correct way and engineering them for appropriate drainage and grades so that they are sustainable. I think that's the big thing is building sustainable trails. And then that, the flip side of that coin is maintenance. And to your point, we think community outreach and education around trail safety, trail maintenance. We have a great community here. Our, our community is, is always willing to step up and work and do what's required of them, particularly if it's what is by law required of you. We have a great community in that sense. And I think a lot of it is people just don't know what they don't know. It is not ill will. It's not malicious. It's, we just need to let people know, hey, we can't do that because kids and families and people are using this. You got to park over here or park in your driveway. So I think there's a lot to be said for that. And oftentimes, I think we reach for the heavy hand sometimes too quick. And I think it would be way better and our community would appreciate that education and outreach first before we, we take that heavy hand.
I think we also need to, I'm sorry. I was just going to say, in addition to that, just a final thought. I think continuing to work with our Public Works, you know, having them participate. I think it's so important because we ignore those individuals who maintain our roads, who maintain our community. And we, we put in these wonderful ideas and for them and for our parks and so forth. It becomes an issue of, oh, wow, now we got to take care of this on top of everything else and we're short-staffed. So I think making sure that we also include them. Let's make sure that we're talking to them, inviting them to the meetings. Hi, Matt. And, and so forth, so that they're a part of the discussion and, and so that we can hear their ideas and their thoughts as well. But.
And I think the community has to be involved. One of the, one of the biggest things that we know in preserving open space, building or maintaining trails is community involvement creates affinity and a sense of ownership. You know, and it's, hey, if you change your oil in your own car, you're probably a lot nicer to your car than if you always take it to the dealership. So if you change your oil in your car once a year on your own, you have a lot more respect for what it takes to maintain your vehicle. And so opportunities for our community to engage in maintenance projects at our park or maintenance projects on our trails helps build and create that ownership of the trail system. And that goes towards that community policing. Hey, I worked on this trail for four hours this summer. Don't come out here and destroy it. That was me as a citizen working on it, right? So we want to help create that ownership within our community. And it's, it's a community amenity. We don't own it. None of us individually own it. It's our community's property. They own it. And so creating that affinity for it and that ownership is a big part of that. And I think working with Public Works, working with Mark Rounds at Parks and saying, hey, And I think working with Public Works, working with Mark Rounds at Parks and saying, hey, you know, do we want to put a teenager in a bucket loader? No. Do we want to put a teenager behind a flat shovel and make him slap dirt for three hours? Yeah, I, I think a teenager is pretty good at that. You know, do we want to have them digging up spots to bury trees in the park? No. Can they throw the dirt back in the hole that Mark and his team dig to plant the tree? Absolutely. And they're going to be much more careful about how they treat that infrastructure.
I have some ideas. What, Matt, what do you think about this? What about the post committee working with Ryan Benel to do some videos on bike safety, right? Bike education outreach that then could be used at the bike fair, right? As well as given out in the links just to reinforce because it's, your bike fair's that one-time shot. You could even do videos at the bike fair, right? Where you're training the kids and having the, the racing, you know, area for them and you're going to be teaching them. I, I think that kind of, we could put it on your page, right, on the website? And if you're interested, you're also welcome to submit articles to the city newsletter that we could put in about bike safety, trail safety, you know, getting trail volunteers, things like that. Just consider that.
Well, I think.
What do you think, Matt, about getting Ryan Benel to work with them?
Absolutely. He's our PIO and very good at those types of items, and so if you want to partner with him, that's absolutely.
And, and we actually, I think the vision for that is actually working with the Heber Valley Chamber as someone who not only speaks to residents but also speaks to our visitors because we know that it's important. We educate our guests in our community to our cultural norms and what our expectation is as a community for how they use our trail system and, and our amenities here in our community. And it's serendipitous because we were right on that line of it's a branded logo, it's, it's, it's a cool thing to be a part of for kids, there's videos, there's pieces of it that allow you access to, you know, different benefits in the community, there's some incentivization behind it, and Ryan and Ignition and the team here, those are all partners that we want to work with because we want this to be something that our community can be proud of, that people actually engage with. And, and that's where I think the messaging, you know, not only to the city newsletter but our partners at the Chamber and our partners at the county and Midway City are going to be a big part of this. Our partners at the police department are going to be a huge part of this messaging and interacting with our residents as they do and saying, hey, did you know you should probably wear a helmet when you ride your bike in January on icy sidewalks? You should probably wear your helmet all the time.
Want to get some helmet stickers? You see what I mean?
Yep.
Into your budget proposal or whatever swag you're thinking of giving out at the bike fair because the hospital will have theirs and, you know, the health department will have theirs, but, you know, we, we want something for the Heber Trails if you can think about that and think about a budget, you know, of whatever you might need for something fun like that so that, you know, we can use that same kind of swag or logo to continue to foster incentives, right?
That's a great point, and what we don't want to do is rush and do it wrong. And so we are working with Nancy O'Toole because there are some grant opportunities through MAG to have them bring in their expert planning staff to help us develop the infrastructure and the base structure for this that would then allow us to go and really produce a high-quality program. And so we're already working with Nancy on, on that side of it.
Right. Is there any other questions?
One, one more insight, I guess. I was impressed recently on a, on a trip down to Hurricane, the Jim Trails in that area over there, how many local trail build days, signs and things there were. And to your point about sticking logos on things, Santa Cruz was on them, Trek was on them, I mean, the bigger bike brands were willing to put money toward these education and build days, and I'm sure that saved local taxpayers a lot of money, so.
Great. So I'd recommend that kind of a, that kind of a thought.
Budget for that.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't want you to.
You make a great point, Mr. Sheetwood. I think that's a lot of that, and within the, the bike industry now, there's a lot of that opportunity out there. And I think there's, there's opportunity for adopted trail programs, and I think that's where a partner like the Heber Valley Chamber is really going to have to step in and help us with that because they, they are tied into the business community, and that allows them to kind of own that piece of it because it's going to be a community effort to keep our trail system growing and maintained.
Okay, and you know Scott Phillips, right? He's on, going to be on the Economic Development Board, so you can work with him to try to help build that partnership however you need, right? With Dallin Kocher and his staff and so forth. Has Dallin, have you approached Dallin yet on?
Dallin and I speak pretty regularly because of our professional jobs. We work in the same space. We have a great relationship, and so we've had some other priorities between our two organizations. This is on an agenda for speaking this month.
As I understood it last year, we had the discussion with the tap tax that the county really wanted to put their monies first towards trail maintenance, not maybe other things. You know, we're doing other things, right, with tap tax right up front, but it would be nice if some of that trail maintenance from the county tap tax might be able to come also within the city, not just for county trails. I mean, you've got to see what you can do with Scott and Dallin and so forth.
And, and I do think Councilmember Johnston has a good point. When you look at case studies or other cities that have been successful with trail maintenance and development programs, it's, it's in the general fund. It's a budget line item that's specifically called out. This is what we put towards trail maintenance ongoing, and, you know, I don't, as a council, it will be for you to determine it's, is it a set amount, is it a percentage amount, is it based on some sort of factor that helps drive that number? But it is, I think it, that is the best practice, is not relying on a temporary tax every ten years. I think it has to be renewed. It's not to rely on grants, it's to say, we're committed, we built it, we own it, and we have to maintain it.
So Sid and then Yvonne, please, and then we'll wrap it up.
Are you working with the county? Are you working hand in hand with the county and?
Yeah, so we don't, like, attend council meetings. We work with Don Taylor through MAG as our regional trail planner, and he is our connection to the county, and we respect his expertise in that connection, and we allow Don to interface with the county, and that seems at this point to be working very well for us.
Good, yeah, Don's good.
They have a report every month on the, at the planning meeting with Don and with all the planners and trail updates. Go ahead, Yvonne.
I just wanted to, I'm sure you've already thought about that this is more for Matt. With the retreat, we have our January retreat coming up in a couple of weeks, and I'm wondering if this is something that we could add to the discussion as well with as far as covering the cost and possibly putting that into the budget, adding that through the general budget, those types of things.
Yeah. So, great question. Day two of the retreat, which is Saturday, January twentieth, you're going to have time after lunch to just simply talk about your shared policy priorities. And quite frankly, that's why we're bringing the committees forward right now to share with you their ideas and their thoughts, so you'll be better informed when you identify what your shared priorities are. So, yes, absolutely, and I would expect that you probably bring some of these items up during that shared discussion and ask staff to incorporate these into the annual budget.
With, with that in mind, then, the challenge, sorry to assign homework, but the challenge would be, can you help us kind of understand what's broken now, needs funding now, and what's going to need funding within this budget year so that we can talk about it on the twentieth? Because I don't know that the staff is going to be able to do that without some assistance.
Actually, let me, let me take point if I may, Scott. So we are establishing right now a new software. It's a GIS software. We'll be able to track every inch of our trail system and know how many feet we have, and it'll be a very valuable tool. We have, I believe, right now, an inventory of our trails. We'll make that available to you at the retreat. You can see those trails or location by a map and be better informed.
That's very, that's exciting. I didn't know about the new software. Is that something that Mark's department is doing or you're doing?
Engineering's leading, but all the departments that will be using it are involved.
Well, be sure to be in touch with engineering, too, and you're welcome to come back to the strategic planning meeting again if you want to. You know, there's public comment time on both days, right? And then you could also be there as a resource to help the council understand, you know, what you're pushing for. I, I know this is a lot to put on your plate right now because we've already been talking last year about how to spend the tap tax, right, from this year as well as into next year, and those are big projects that are coming along, and it's really exciting to see, and we'll probably get a preview of those, Matt, right? At the strategic planning meeting again, the tap tax funding.
Yes.
You know, and what, what's that? So that's coming, all right, what we've discussed last year? But, you know, if there's room in the budget for other things like we're discussing right here, please, please bring it forward, especially the trail maintenance dedication, dedicated money. Okay? Good job.
Thank you, everybody.
Always fun to have you come. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, council, do you still want your ten-minute break or do you want to go right into the regular meeting? What's your preference? Okay, we'll take, let's take at least a five-minute break.
This conference will now be recorded.
All right, welcome again, everyone. Welcome. Let's get started on the regular meeting of the Heber City Council. Today is January second, 2024, and it is now six twelve PM. I want to welcome all of you online or here in the chamber. I also want to welcome our new city council members as well as the ones that are continuing. So let me announce who is here on the council. We have Councilmember Scott Phillips, newly elected Councilmember Sid Ostergaard, newly elected member Erin Sheetwood, myself, Heidi Franco, and then our continuing member Yvonne Barney, who will join us shortly, as well as newly elected Mike Johnston. All right, next on the agenda is a pledge of allegiance by Scott Phillips, and then after he is done, then it's time for a prayer or a thought. Anyone is welcome to come forward and give a prayer or a thought, but if no one does, then it will be my turn, and we'll proceed to that point, please.
Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, deliberate, and just as for all.
Okay, would anybody like to come forward? Okay, I'll offer a prayer then. Our Father in heaven, we thank thee for this beautiful day. We thank thee for the peace and the prosperity and the protection that thou hast given us. We're so thankful to be able to serve thee here and serve the city. We pray for thy blessings and thy direction as we go forward this year. We pray for thy help as we make these decisions, and we continue to pray for the protection of our city employees and our citizens and our armed forces throughout the world. We pray for peace in this world, Father, and we pray for peace in our hearts from thee and thy son. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. Okay, next item on the agenda, everyone, is the conflict of interest disclosure. Is there anyone on the city council that wants to disclose a conflict of interest?
Yes, Mayor, I do. I'm going to recuse myself from action item two, the Highlands.
MDA?
Yeah.
Amendment.
Yep.
All right, very good. Thank you very much for doing that. Is there any other conflicts of interest? Okay, everyone, then we are ready to go to the consent agenda. Everyone, two items on the consent agenda. First is the approval of the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three city council minutes as provided in the agenda posting, and then the next is the city council board appointments that I am proposing as a draft to all of you. Appreciate the feedback that you have given me. I'm trying to divide it up as equally as possible, but council, do you have any questions, comments, or motions on these two items of the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, Erin Sheetwood gave the second. Thank you both. Any other comments, discussion? Okay, Trina, you ready for the new order of voting? Okay, we're, we're going to try to do it in order because it's a lot easier for her to put it into the record. So we'll start on this end, please.
Yes.
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 Okay, the consent agenda passes five to zero. Thank you very much, council. Everyone, it's time for the public comment part of the agenda. Anyone is welcome to come forward and give a public comment. We have a twenty-minute period here if people want to use it, but we're trying to stick to about three minutes apiece, and if you'll tell us who you are when you come to the podium, that would be appreciated. Anyone online, you're welcome to come off mute, and I'm happy to call on you. So I will open up the public comment period right now, please. Anyone online? Okay, we're getting started then, probably by closing the public comments, but council, just so you know, in the city newsletter this month, I've asked the public to feel free to send in their ideas or comments or suggestions to all of us at the city council email. So we'll see if they will, and I hope they will. Okay, next item on the agenda are the general business items. These are presentations, everyone. We have seven of them. The first one is the Planning Commission presentation with Tony Kohler, and thank you, Planning Commission members, for being here. Let me just have you raise your hands. I know Phil Jordan is here, Dave Richards is here, Derek Skogowski is here, Robert Wilson, you're here, too. That's great. Anyone else here? Sid used to be on the Planning Commission, and I'm not sure of anybody else online, so Tony, we'll let you start. Thank you.
If I might invite at least a couple of you up here to kind of help fill in on stuff that I may have missed on your intent, Dave or Phil, we've got a third chair here.
And, yes, we've got right, right there. There you go.
Thank you.
Derek, you're willing to bring another chair up, too. That's perfectly fine. We really appreciate your hard work because you have to know the details on this job. Thank you, Phil.
So Planning Commission, we've got seven positions. I believe, actually, we've got five appointees, and, because I believe you're an alternate, aren't you, Robert? Okay, so we've actually got two regular positions open and then two alternate positions open. Looking forward to completing that to make sure that we don't have meetings that we have to cancel. The alternate positions have been very helpful and helps people grow into this, the normal role of a standard position. So when Planning Commission met a few weeks ago, they, they really had three areas that they wanted to focus on, actionable envisioned central Heber items, the bypass, and then what I'd label as other. So with envisioned central Heber, there are four parts, and, and please chime in if I got this, this wrong. The first one, the Planning Commission would like to see the council focus on improving the street with parking, curb gutter, and sidewalk when utilities like water, sewer, or irrigation are put in the street. They feel that that's a great opportunity to make that investment, especially starting from the center of town and working out, obviously, at five hundred west and three hundred north, that's probably not as big of an issue as it is right here close to Main Street. The second one is the Planning Commission has recommended a downtown code update that involves amending the C three zone and the parking ordinance and the architecture. As a council, you're going to be seeing that, I believe, sometime this month or early February. Council did look at that in late December, continued it because there's a discussion on some public utility easements. We're doing some research on that. Part of that package that the Planning Commission recommended actually involves a change to how we look at parking in the downtown, and that basically is to not require parking anymore in the downtown. The third part is the Planning Commission would like to see angled parking put in wherever possible. So we, we talked about how utilities are being put in, but also where, where we're having a lot of vents around the park or, or even this block here, or maybe some opportunities for us to look at angled parking. As our general plan states, that's an easy way, since we already own the property, to get more parking. And then lastly, we did a tour of some western Colorado towns, and I got a picture here of the parking garage that was in Glenwood Springs. Thank you. So the Planning Commission would really like to see the council focus on acquiring property in the downtown that will obviously start with as a parking lot, and as the need grows, the city would look potentially to parking garage if, if we actually need it. That may be twenty, thirty years down the road. Anything I missed? Any questions?
Parking garage now.
Certainly, that's a prerogative. It's a cost-benefit analysis as well as an analysis of what resources we have to put. I, I myself don't believe we have the need to actually build a structure given the tremendous expense that we have. I still think we're years out from that.
Plus, if you look, if we do angled parking on existing roads, you can park a lot of cars on there, and, and then if we acquire some land to do just a parking lot, it, it could help today, and then when the need's there, let's look at a parking structure.
Can I ask, Tony, has a city ever used a CRA? You know, I know to fund parking garages, but has a city that you know of in Utah ever used impact? You know, I know to fund parking garages, but has a city that you know of in Utah ever used impact fees to try to build down a parking garage like this?
I'd have to research that.
I'm trying to think of all the ways to fund it, right? Especially with our CRA not being funded to the point that the city wants at this point. You know what I'm saying?
Certainly, I think, and I think Mike actually had an idea too, where we're potentially, sorry if I cut in, Mayor, but the idea Mike kind of posed a couple of weeks ago was what if, you know, businesses, rather than providing parking, actually pay into a parking fund instead of building their own parking lot? But I agree with you. I think we're going to have to be creative, and I think it's going to be a combination of the CRA, an idea like that, potentially impact fees, probably general funds and grants. I think we're just going to have to be extremely creative.
Are there grants for parking garages? I wasn't familiar.
Well, I'm sure.
I've not seen any for parking garages.
Okay.
I'd have to take a different view just because I would like to. I think if we build the parking garage on the other side of what we're trying to do with the park, that it will bring the redevelopment to downtown.
And that's another approach, absolutely. I mean, if you look at it as an amenity that's going to attract the development, that's a good way to do that.
And Matt, have we ever done a study to see how much we'd need to charge for a bond, you know, for just even the parking places, and then that could lead to Mike's idea of that payment in lieu?
No, not gone that far. What we have done is made the county and Heberline Power very aware that we want to purchase their lots over off one hundred west. Speaking with Dustin today, the county is going to get an appraisal on the lot that has the fire station on it. So we get an idea of what their maybe starting value would be for negotiations. Working with Sid, his firm has actually put a rendering together for those two lots when acquired, how the layout might work. Initially as surface parking, later maybe as a structured parking as demand required. So staff is very aggressive at trying to get something moving on the parking front.
And the fire district lot is bigger than the Heberline Power lot. And Sid, you know about the easement that goes through both of them. All right, go ahead, Yvonne.
So I have a couple of concerns with the angled parking. My concern is when you're pulling out, especially, and I've said this over and over again, I'm sure everyone's sick and tired of me using this as an example, but six hundred south. When you're trying to get out of Mountain Mikes or any of those other areas, they have the angled parking, and it is impossible to see around the parking. So I would like to find a way that if we're, if this is something that we are considering, that we need to have engineering involved so that we can provide a safe pullout or a safe turn or something that will allow us to be able to see around the cars. I mean, it gets to the point sometimes where you're literally into the middle of the road because you cannot see what's coming in the opposite direction. So that's one of my concerns if we are going to do it. As far as the downtown parking garage, I know we may not seem like we need this, but to put into perspective, Glenwood Springs is a smaller community than Heber City, and they have a parking structure. So I know that it might be an expense, but, you know, going to what was already discussed, it will bring what we're looking for, the positive growth that we're looking for, the revitalizing of the old town area, if you will. And so I think that's something that's definitely, we need to keep there. We need to continue discussing that and finding ways to provide the financing for that, and I'm not opposed to. I know that we had a discussion with Fort Collins, and one of those things that they discussed was with their parking structure. They did have fees, parking fees and so forth. And then during certain times when they had events downtown, then they waived those fees so that they had the people there, that people could, you know. So I think those are things that going forward, that those are the discussions that maybe we need to put into place and look into. So that's just my thoughts.
As staff, we agree. If you recall, on that trip, I think all four of those downtowns had what they call the DBA, Downtown Business Authority, which was a generation of the resources needed to build those structures. You know, once we get that CRA across the finish line with the two interlocal agreements from the county and school district, we'll begin having our first dedicated funding source for the downtown. That's going to be key to pulling off what we want to do.
But Matt, we haven't received the funding yet because of that commercial district reappraisal, right? We haven't received last year's taxes or this year's taxes. I should say, we haven't received twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three taxes for just the Heber City portion into the CRA, right?
That is correct.
And we were waiting for the county to finish their appraisal. Have they finished it, and when can we start getting Heber City funds into the CRA? For us, then, July first? For the county, then, fiscal year twenty twenty-five, we'll get the back taxes twenty-two, twenty?
No, no, it will be, it will start twenty-five. It will go forward twenty years from that point.
That's right, everyone. We weren't doing the back because we were waiting for the other developments to come in.
That's correct.
And to get that higher increment.
That's correct.
Okay, but we're still not having money in there, is the point.
Granted, the eight hundred pound gorilla is a CRA with the school district and with the county, by far the school district. As for every tax dollar spent, sixty-eight percent of it's done by the school district. So they are the eight hundred pound gorilla. And those two interlocals, we have yet to sign. We'll talk a lot about this at the retreat in how we can work with our two partners to see if we can't get that across the finish line.
Please proceed, Tony.
Some part of how we come in as a planning commission is looking at these applicants who are coming in and wanting to have their business downtown. And that's where we started with the understanding that there's a very large weight to lift to build this apartment. And that's why we come to being an alpha consideration in the long picture, the long-term picture. So while we can agree with Tony that sitting here right now, we go up and down the main street, many would say, we have plenty of parking. Well, if we in fact look at what we're about to talk about with bypass, which ultimately gets us the real estate to have this quote walkable downtown, we can't be behind where development wants to go now to bring in those retails and restaurants and services that want to live there on this weight that they have to lift now to actually build their own parking. So they're tied together, is the point, and I think that's what we want to bring back to you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Tony.
The second part is what I've entitled here is envisioned central Heber recreation and events. So we've already kicked off looking at the Plaza Street. But and when I talk about Plaza Street, I mean two hundred south from center, I'm sorry, from Main Street to one hundred west. And the idea is that would be a street that could be shut down, and you can have events, carnivals, concerts, what have you. Secondly, and connected to that Plaza Street is a pedestrian alley that connects from two hundred south northward mid-block to City Hall block. And the idea there is that we would have a pedestrian alley that could also facilitate pedestrian events. Third is that the city needs to start. If the city's going to invest all this capital investments in the downtown to facilitate events, by default, the city has to have an event coordinator that's probably full-time. And we have to take it very seriously because these are some very serious public investments, and it would be a shame to have all these facilities sitting vacant when they could be being used. And that's something that we have, as a city, started been delving into the last couple of years. But if we're serious about this kind of stuff, we've got to dig into that more. And then finally.
Tony, if I may, that's a great segue to this little fact. I'm meeting with Dallin tomorrow morning for breakfast. He's identified a grant of fifty thousand dollars to allow, oh my gosh, our consultant.
Landscape.
No.
Park guy.
Park guy, Roger Brooks, thank you. Don't get old, I tell you. Fifty thousand dollar grant to get Roger Brooks back under contract to do a formal program for the planning. And one of the things they're trying to do is posture CAMs to provide the oversight of the downtown Main Street program, which would include the programming of all the activities.
Is CAMs at all looking to do that? I mean, they're really getting organized now, so that would be, to me, a lot of a big lift for them to do the full-time coordinator, but, you know, we're not doing it quite yet, but maybe even as soon as next year when the.
It would start small.
Fan shell is starting.
It would start small and grow as we found the critical mass. But we got to get a program done to identify what we want to do, how we want to do it, how it fund itself, and that's where the fifty thousand grant comes in, and Roger Brooks.
That'd be great. Is that a grant from Dallin's fund or from the state?
State.
Okay, great.
Our partners to the north in Park City would show that there's two roles to play. One is from the city's perspective of permitting and making sure that there's an appropriate way that these events are essentially organized years ahead. But there needs to be that idea of publicizing it and actually curating it and then producing it. And that's where, without due respect, public sector falls short. So that's where private sector can step up and actually do very well at, so long as they are given resources to do that. So don't be surprised that CAMs or others will come back as wanting to resource to actually curate and produce these events that will then create a significant amount of activity. But if you know that they will come, this particular example, having the spaces like this that are built out with that infrastructure, as we saw Boulder specifically as the beginning of that, I think we saw other cities as well. If you have those spaces defined and you bring them the facilities, public works, power, sanitation, all the related issues, and you stay away from all the portable infrastructure as much as possible, then you actually will have a scaled version of something that works well together between private and public sector.
Hey, and then finally, the Main Street park improvements. You've talked about that. You will be talking more about that in the weeks to come. Moving on to the bypass, I think there's a lot of issues that we've got to dig into. I'm going to summarize them, and then I want Phil to kind of help me because he's put some thoughts into the actual bypass itself. So for me, from my perspective, I believe we need to start looking at the high school area, the land use around the high school. And that also relates to this, the right-hand side, which is sprawl. When the bypass is constructed, whatever option is chosen, I've shown all four options here on the map, superimposed over each other. I don't know which one's going to be chosen, but these blue circles represents, represent new magnets that are going to attract new development, whether it be a new gas station, a convenience center, a big box. But our sister cities from, including Charleston and Daniel and Midway, us and unincorporated county, they're all going to be approached by development. They already are being approached, and we are already being approached by development at these key intersection locations. And we have annexed part of that area, but there's some questions that we're going to have to talk about. I'm going to dig deeper into it at our annual retreat. I'm going to have some more detailed maps. But just understand there are a lot of market forces that are going to make us ask some really tough questions. As far as, you know, getting back to the high school, the high school itself attracts sprawl-type development, you know, from Burger King to McDonald's to all kinds of drive-throughs. And given that the high school also is going to be located near the future bypass, that just exacerbates that magnetism that development is going to have to that area. As I understand it, the high school is not excited about having new strip mall or strip development near them. And I think they've already approached Matt and said, hey, we want to have this conversation with you as a city to make sure that we can have a campus that is doing what, you know, what they're trying to do, whether it be.
Contained.
A contained campus.
Contained so that kids can't get to restaurants, but what happens to our tourism and arts district?
That's going to be a tough question. I don't know.
We're going to talk about that at the retreat.
Yeah, I'll have some more maps, more details on that that we'll dig into tonight, which is kind of to prep you for that. And then finally, Phil kind of puts some thought here into the bypass. What is it going to look like? What kind of improvements are we going to have? And, you know, Phil, do you want to kind of expand on kind of what you've been thinking about?
Well, to be clear, I'm not speaking on behalf of the planning commission, but I can speak on behalf of the Muirfield HOA, which is on the president. And within our boundary, as you can see in the first, the circle that is essentially seven fifty north, which then cuts across, with that, the new, the direction coming down, I would indicate that this black line that is essentially within the North Fields is the larger conversation as being of the entire community rather than developing.
Oh, you can't hear me? Oh. How about now? Can you hear me now? There we go. But on behalf of the residents, and I think I speak on behalf of all those that have property immediately adjacent to where this bypass is coming in, I think the peaceful enjoyment of our property is some of our interests. And I, just to be completely clear, we're also curious about the safety of those that are using, particularly six hundred west, which, if you are very familiar, it's a very, very busy agricultural access for a lot of the North Fields. If you, it's right on my backyard to see how many people are actually coming back and forth, feeding their stock and moving their stock. The concern that I also would bring you is that we, I've seen specifically during COVID, a significant increase with the recreational use of that road, and with that, going up into the North Fields themselves, bicyclists, walking dogs, cars, and the like with that. So all I'm going to bring to you is that as we do this, we have the opportunity for what will essentially be potentially never going back ever. It'll be the fifty to one hundred year change to it. Cost is going to be an immediate priority. As much as we may think otherwise, this city will be asked to pay for this in some respect. The state certainly is going to be participating. I believe that we'll see participation from the federal side. I would not, I would be shocked to hear that Heber City is not asked to participate in paying for this. And with that, I would ask us to consider that we have a voice at the table. The concerns that I think those of us who live next to it would tell you is that there are many versions of this in Europe where you don't see it at all. It's essentially below grade, and we can create that because of the water table here and not going into the ground by creating berms above it and around it. We create barriers for livestock safety and for pedestrian safety, but also recreational use along the pathway of the road. But also, we're seeing a significant amount of the acoustical impact going vertical and not going horizontal. As you may know, our air is thinner at this elevation than it is at sea level, and then therefore, sound travels a lot faster, a lot longer. You also know we do not have a lot of trees in our area which will absorb that sound. So the sound of this bypass is going to essentially be a major factor for everybody who's living anywhere near it at all. With that, we would also tell you that the way in which the road is made, and UDOT will tell you all about this because they're very aware of this, is the quality of the pavement and how the pavement is actually put together, and the road noise off of the trucks and those cars are certainly definitely part of the amount of noise it makes. So Birmingham, that also brings us the opportunity to talk about dark skies, and to the extent that we're going to see in all of our windows now looking out, open during the summer for the warmer temperatures, that now we'll close them and need air conditioning because of the nature of all that road noise, but also to do with the sound and also the light that's coming forward, all those being somewhat the price we all pay by having this bypass there. I would only bring you that, that as you're now beginning to look at, it's not if, it's when. And I believe as a planning commissioner, all of us would agree that that bypass is significant to the development of our downtown. How it's done, I think, was equally as important. So I'd only bring you some of these issues related to the impact, those of us that live near it, but also those of us who'll be around it. And to the extent that we are allowing that traffic to stop and to be able to then have an intersection will ultimately mean there'll be services, there'll be demand in those locations, and then you'll change forever the landscape of what the perimeter of our, of our, our community is right now. So with that, you're hearing me not be against it, but rather how to do it and how to do it right.
Thank you, Phil. Anything else, Tony?
Just one more slide. The other issues, Planning Commission was looking at growth management, I think is something that Robert had brought up. Affordable housing, how you can see I've shown a fairly affordable bungalow here. And then lastly, dark skies that we continue aggressively pursuing communication and education on that issue. And that's all we had. Anything you guys wanted to add?
So is there any particular studies that the Planning Commission is recommending? We certainly have a lot of code issues, right, that we could work on, but any other studies in conjunction with this?
I don't know about studies, but we've, obviously, for the last couple of years, we've been doing code. We're finalizing some code right now. The next year or two, we're going to be entering a territory that is different than we're used to. We are used to setting policy and waiting. And if you want a world-class. to setting policy and waiting. And if you want a world-class downtown, the setting policy and waiting for the private sector to solve it is not going to be sufficient as a city. You, as a council and your staff, are going to have to be involved in advocacy and review and, and making it happen. We've already started that as staff. We are, most of us are under, are taking on different roles than we ever have with managing grants, with managing projects, managing engineers and contractors. And if, if, if we really as a city want a great downtown, that's just going to continue.
Planning Commission, anything else? Anything else you want to say before we let you go? All right. Thank you again. And we look forward to more meetings like this and having even more collaboration with all of you. Thank you for your service.
I think all of us would appreciate more combined meeting time with the council, particularly if we are looking at some significant planning changes, then we'd like to be participatory in your decisions.
Well, at least we could do it in the summer, right? We could have at least one meeting like this in a work meeting where you could come in and tell us about where you're at or what you're thinking. We could even try to do it quarterly, but we've just never been able to do that. So what do you think about at least doing it this summer and then maybe towards the end of the year?
That'd be great. And, and the fact that we're actually seeing the minutes of your meeting directly that the next, the next week helps us a lot in terms of how you've been considering some of the recommendations we're making because we never really hear back sometimes.
Mayor, you are though. Mayor, they're also invited to the retreat on the 18th and 20th of January.
Yes, and you've all received that invitation? If you'd like to come to the city council retreat. Okay, good. We're trying to make sure everybody's invited, but this is also why you're here right now. Thank you again. All right, we're ready for our next presentation with Jason Tally. He's the Airport Advisory Board Chair. And Jason, you're welcome to come forward. Is there anyone else here from the Airport Advisory Board that would like to come forward?
I don't think anybody else is. We try to stay hidden as much as possible.
Well, we're going to put it all on you then. All right. And do you have what you need to get? There you go.
It's only after the last couple of years. So now, now we're kind of emerging now that the master plan has been completed. So again, I'm Jason Tally. I'm the current chairman of the Airport Advisory Board. Just wanted to give you kind of a quick update on some of the things that we're working on and some of the initiatives. First of all, just to refresh everybody's memory, the purpose of the AAB is to advise the city council and the mayor in matters pertaining to the policies of the Heber Valley Airport. So it's, it's a fairly narrow objective that we have, really just dealing with the policies and, you know, fundamentally making sure that the airport's a place that's beneficial to Heber City and the surrounding communities. If we can go to the next slide. The makeup of the AAB, one city council member, I see Scott's been reappointed to that from the council, three residents of Heber City, one resident of Wasatch County, one resident of Daniel, and recently, we had one representative, OK3, the fixed-based operator of the FBO that's on the field. The AAB members are generally aeronautical users. The majority of our members are pilots, or they are other informed operators that have some specific technical knowledge and insight that can be very helpful as we evaluate matters that you may see come before you. So, you know, for example, OK3 is certainly able to talk about the impacts that certain policies might have on transient traffic or, or opportunities for the airport. If we can go to the next slide. Look over here, but you're clicking, sorry. So, so there's really three main objectives when we look at what we tried to do at the AAB. The first and probably the most important is we, we want to have a self-funding airport with a financial plan that allows us to enact the recent, recently approved airport master plan. This doesn't have to happen overnight. As we take a look at what the master plan talked about, those were, some of those events were 20 years into the future. But it's really important that we, we start looking towards what's going to be necessary and that we have an airport that doesn't need any contributions from a general fund. That's, that's been a number one priority. I think everybody on a council has said that before, and we take that to heart. The second, the second item, which I would rank as, you know, right there with the first, is to promote a variety of aeronautical activities, including light general aviation, regular general aviation, business aviation, as well as diverse commercial aeronautical activities. So things that can provide, you know, jobs or income to the surrounding community that might be aeronautical in nature. If you take a look at our recent airport master plan, there were certain things on the airport layout plan, which kind of depicts, it's kind of a business plan for the airport over the next 10, 15 years. All of these things were really important. And so it's, it's hopefully our job to be able to make recommendations to the city council and to the mayor on some of the things that come before us. And the last thing is to promote community involvement with the airport. So we want to make sure that the airport's an invite, an inviting resource for, for the citizens of Heber City and the surrounding communities, whether that's youth programs with getting kids up in airplanes, youth programs for STEM where they can start building airplanes or working in, in aviation, community events. We had several community events last year that Travis, our airport manager, worked very fastidiously on, and, and just other types of involvements where the, the airport can be seen as something that's beneficial to the community instead of just large aircraft landing there. And then I think I have one last slide. So hopefully, I won't take the full 20 minutes and give you back some of that. Some of the work that's in progress today. So there's a, a current rate study that's being done by Aeroplex Partners to compare the rates that are being charged at Heber City with similar airports and to provide us with proposals for changes, if there are any. I believe, and Matt, you can, you can speak to this, I believe that'll come to the Airport Advisory Board for our opinion, and then that'll come before the council for any action that might need to be taken on this. The types of things that are being examined are lease rates, landing fees, fuel flowage rates, and other things that can be done to help make the airport, you know, self-sustaining and to prepare ourselves financially for some of the contributions that we have to make in the future. Kind of by way of background for some of the new council members, generally, projects at the airport are funded in large part by the FAA. But then there's a component that has to be put in by the local sponsor, which is Heber City, and then also the, the state. So every aircraft that's based at Heber pays a registration fee to the state. I believe 95% of those monies that are paid actually come back to the airport to help with some of these large projects, like runway resurfacing, taxiway changes, a lot of other things. There is currently an environmental study going way on the unpermitted landfill at the south side of the airport on our airport layout plan. That's a potential location for OK3, the FBO, to relocate to, as long as it's, you know, environmentally safe for them to do that. We're currently undergoing a revision of the airport minimum standards for commercial activities. So these are rules about what you need to be able to do to operate commercially at the airport. And then consideration of other business that properly comes before the AAB or is assigned by the council, right? So we certainly work at your discretion. So if there's items that you would like us to take a look at, we're more than happy to roll up our sleeves and do that. One of those items was a T-hanger proposal that was looked at several years ago, and it's coming to you guys tonight later on as well. And that's, that's the type of things that we do where we vet that and make sure that it's compatible with what the airport use should be. I think that's the last slide.
That I mentioned in what's coming back, Jason. I don't know if you saw it yet, but in the T-hangers, there's a potential for commercial uses in those individual hangers. And so I'm assuming that could be SASSOs or the commercial activity you've talked about. And I don't know if that has to be specified in the new minimum standards that we'll be doing, just because they have obviously a very limited size, right?
Yeah. So I think, you know, without understanding specifics of that today, right? And, and we have small hangers today, right? And so what would have to happen is, you know, an application for a SASSO would have to be made, and then that would come before the Airport Advisory Board or come to the council, and then a decision will be made. And, and part of this in revising the minimum standards as well as to be able to be kind of more compatible with where things are today instead of, you know, what the view was 20 or 30 years ago, right? And our, our minimum standards were kind of a hodgepodge of things. But, but I think, you know, as, as they're revised, you know, again, somebody has to meet that or ask for a variance.
Well, I, I understand. It's just that we've had parking requirements as well as, you know, square footage requirements. And I'm thinking those T-hangers are going to be much smaller than our other commercial hangers. You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
And so that's why I just wanted to put it on your radar, you know, that, that could be incorporated into the new minimum standards to whatever degree you want to recommend.
No, absolutely. And I think it also depends on a type of activity that's being done too, right? So, you know, some things don't take a lot of space, some things take a lot more space, some things deal with the public at large, some things don't. So absolutely, we'll, we'll make sure that we, we consider that as does minimum standards come before us.
Mind I'll open it up for any other questions to you, council?
I'm happy to. I'm happy to try.
Any other questions or comments on this presentation? Okay, so we've been a little over budget lately, and it looks like the rate study and the environmental study will, you know, we'll be getting our fees coming in this month. So that'll be good. That'll be great. But Matt, do you want to give any updates really quick on the rate study or the environmental study?
Happy to. Thank you, Mayor. Let me begin with the environmental study, the environment impact statement on the old landfill site. As Jason's indicated, we have identified four test wells that we're monitoring to verify whether there's any interaction between the bottom of the aquifer, I'm sorry, the bottom of the landfill, the aquifer. We're waiting to get the data from that to know exactly what's going on there. Once we have that data, we'll know what our next steps are in terms of our application with the Department of Environmental Quality. So stay tuned as we get more information from the four test wells that we're now monitoring out there. In terms of the fee study, the rate and fee study, that is ongoing. I suspect it will be before the Airport Advisory Board, sometime at the end of February, and before the city council sometime in the March timeline. Aeroplex is working on that feverishly, looking at our current rates, whether it's landing fees, fuel flowage fees, or other types of creative fees that we can leverage for the benefit of the airport. They'll be bringing that back and making recommendations to the AAB, then onto the city council.
I look forward to that. Okay. Any other concerns? Scott, you got any other comments? Okay. Appreciate your time very much and your service to our city.
Happy New Year.
Thank you. Happy New Year. Okay, now we're going to go quicker, if that's even possible, with the Public Works SWAT analysis. And everyone, SWAT stands for strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats. And Matt Kennard, our Public Works Director, will present.
Well, thank you for letting me go first. Very thrilled. So I'm just going to highlight one of each of the areas, one item from each of the areas that, that I've put in there. For our strengths, Public Works has a, an excellent mix of, of long-term employees as well as newer employees as well. So we kind of are getting a, a really good dynamic of, of those who have a really good understanding of the, of the city and the infrastructure as well as the new employees, which bring new perspectives and, and new energy as well. So I think that, that the crew that I have is, is amazing. So I think that that's by far our, our greatest strength. For our weaknesses, with the, with the amazing growth of the city, it's, one of the weaknesses is the ever-increasing workload with the same, if not, well, the same number of employees. We are unfortunately unable to get to a lot of the preventative maintenance that we've got in the city, such as flushing water mains or exercising fire hydrants. One of the things with fire hydrants, actually, we've been having to rely a lot on the, on the fires, fire department to go out and, and exercise the, the fire hydrants for us. But yeah, just trying to keep the same level of service for, for the community, although with, with all of the growth, it's, is definitely difficult. So the opportunity that I've chosen is actually pretty similar to, to the weakness. One of the things that, that our city manager has allowed us to do is to outsource some of the, some of the construction projects that we've got as far as, like sidewalks, being able to hire a private contractor to, to do sidewalk replacement project, as well as, as our asphalt as well, that we've been able to, to outsource as well. So that's been extremely beneficial to us. And then the threats also goes into some of the other ones as well as the high cost of living. We, the higher the cost of living gets, the fewer in-town employees that we're actually able to, to hire. We've got one employee that currently commit, commutes from Springville. We've got three, I believe, that live up in Camas. Camas isn't that, isn't that bad, but when you consider having a snowstorm, having to get up here to, to plow the roads, coming down the Camas Road, it's pretty scary, as well as if we have water leaks or anything like that, the amount of being able to react and being on call for, for those types of emergencies, it is, it makes it difficult. So any questions?
All right. And your budgeting for all of this in this, this next year's budget, do you have an idea of, of how many employees you want to ask for?
Well, we don't have an idea yet. It sounds like there's at least two that will be requested. One will take the place of somebody who's currently being shepherded in a, he's, he's becoming more of an administrative staff. So we're looking to, to replace him as he kind of transitions into the, into the office. But, but yeah.
I'm very interested in the security backup. Okay, the systems and the security backup. I really think we need to do that, but.
So that's a, that's a huge one. We've actually budgeted for it in the past when, and we did have it approved, I believe it was for $90,000, $95,000 for the hospital well backup generator. When we actually took it out to bid, those numbers went up a lot from what we were originally quoting. So that is something that will be included in my request this year. It's definitely something that has to occur. And we're hoping that, that now that some time has passed, the, the prices for those will hopefully have gone down a little bit. So they were pretty outrageous when we, when we had budgeted for them in the past, so.
Thank you, Matt. Anything else, anyone? Okay. We really appreciate you and your department. Thank you so much for your great work. All right. Our next SWAT analysis will be Chief Sever in the Police Department. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Mayor, and fellow council members. It's good to see the new ones on there. I didn't like the old ones at all. I'm kidding. They're not here. I can make fun of them a little bit. I'll just highlight a couple of things that we looked at when we were doing our SWAT analysis. Some of the strengths that I've noticed when I've been at the police department, had the opportunity to talk to the employees, was the teamwork and culture of the police department. The officers work really well together, and I hear that consistently. And another strength that kind of goes along with that is, for the first time in many years, are the, your police department is actually fully staffed right now. I mean, we're down one because you just approved one position, but we already have an officer with experience that's in the pipeline for that, that lives in Heber, which is awesome. And so we'll, we'll be fully staffed for the first time in quite a while. And the people, when they're coming in, what they tell me is the reason why they came to Heber was because of the culture of the police department. When they came out, it felt like a family. They didn't feel like they were being talked down to because they were new. They felt welcomed, and they, they felt like they were part of a team. And so that's something that we obviously want to foster and continue to grow. Another great thing is the trust of the community. I have been here for several months now, and I have yet to receive a complaint on one of our officers. And that's really good to see. But I do hear a lot of compliments from our community of our police department and the job that they do. So they're doing an outstanding job. And our animal shelter is really good. I know we're, we're having discussions about it, but we don't receive a lot of complaints about it. We're not in any lawsuits on it. And we're a no-kill shelter, and they're doing an outstanding job on the animal shelter. And one of our, another big strength real quick is our crossing guard program. I did not appreciate crossing guards. In fact, when I first came here, I was like, crossing guards? They don't have those in California. And so that was something kind of new for me. But now I see the value of them as well. When I see like, when there's an issue somewhere or a new road comes in, one of the first things that council mentions or, or other people is, are we putting crossing guards there? So they're a big factor in the safety of our communities and keeping our kids safe. our kids safe. Weaknesses, wages are constantly changing. That's something that we're evaluating. Oshere is doing a work analysis right now. But as wages change across the, all the other agencies, unfortunately, there are some officers with budgets being tight in the cities, or also budgets are tight in people's families, and they chase a dollar. And so we want to make sure that we're staying competitive in those areas. Another weakness is employees living in, in Heber. One of the questions I asked every employee when I met with them, if they, where they were living, and if, you know, we have several that are living outside the area. And I said, did you want to live in Heber, though? And every single one of them wanted to live in Heber. They just didn't, couldn't find something similar that was affordable in this community. So that forced them to live somewhere else. It did help a great deal when council approved the, the, the travel time and stuff for the employees, so that they could live outside the area. But we really want to incentivize them to live here, not somewhere else. It does create a few other issues for the Police Department as far as staffing issues, because we're paying them to travel here. There's times when we're down that officer for a short period of time. But we can't decide when bad things happen. And, and so sometimes those bad things can happen when we're down a few employees. Another thing I think we can improve on is utilizing technology. I think there's some technology out there that we can utilize that can be a force multiplier for our, our city. We obviously want to keep Heber safe and welcoming for its residents, for the people visiting, and not so welcoming for people that want to come here and prey upon our citizens. And because we're a destination, we do have a, a lot of population that drives down through the main street that are up to no good. My very first stop as a police officer here in Heber was a DUI stop, right on our main street. And, and that's where we have UHP patrolling Main Street, the Wasatch County Sheriff's patrolling Main Street, and everybody else, because that's, that's where the action is, because people are traveling through our community. Well, sometimes they'll stop and do bad things. And so we want to make it as uncomfortable for those people as possible, and welcoming for our citizens. Opportunities, we have several that are coming up, the new high school. It's our goal, we want to put one, a Heber City Officer in that new high school, and not a county sheriff. No offense to the county sheriff, but the Wasatch High School will be in the city of Heber. And we want those kids seeing our officer there and wanting to become a Heber City Police Officer, not a sheriff. I like sheriffs, but they wear the wrong color. So with the city annexations, we've obviously received a lot of growth. And so we have to look at that growth and see what it can do to, for the Police Department and us moving forward and expanding our services. Another way to attract officers for us to offer more things for officers to do when they get here. It's hard to compete with a larger agency on opportunities for police officers. But as we grow, we have the opportunity to do some different things that can encourage officers to see the opportunities that they'll have here as well. One of those we want to do is expanding our traffic unit. Right now with, we have one person. Now with Main Street becoming so, so very busy, and as it continues to get busy, it's going to take years for this bypass to be built when it's finally approved. It's going to start, it has already impacted, but it will continue to impact all of the arterial roads next to Main Street. One hundred south, one hundred east and one hundred west, and people will start diverting. And if there's an accident, it gets really bad with people diverting around. And that just becomes very problematic and unsafe for the other roads, which were not designed to handle that level of traffic. So we like to, and one of the things we will be doing regardless is expanding that traffic unit. With that recent position that council approved, we're going to go to a two-man traffic unit, different cars, not in the same vehicle. And we'd like to see one of them on a alternative vehicle, like a motorcycle, which will somewhat, with inclement weather, we won't get as much use as we can in some areas. But it does allow them to get around the traffic a lot better, and to get to accidents and service our community a little bit better. Another opportunity we have is we'd like to partner a little bit more with some of our surrounding agencies, Summit County, Park City. We used to a little bit more in the past than we currently have for a variety of reasons. Sometimes it's times, things have kind of separated a little bit. But I think there's a lot of benefit from us, us working closely together with them. We share the same criminals. So when we share the same training and working together and computer systems, it helps both of our agencies and counties. Threats, I think although we're fully staffed, the threat is the employee retention, is making sure that we are retaining the people that are here. The number one way that we can keep officers here is for them to live here. In my last agency, we had a huge retention problem. And although we did improve our wages and stuff, I don't believe that's the reason why we, our retention went way down. It was because we started hiring people that were living in the community. And when you hire somebody that lives in, in Heber City, they stay in Heber City. But when somebody lives in Eagle Mountain, I can quickly tell you two ways, I can quickly tell you how they could save two hours of their life every single day. And that's by working somewhere that's a lot closer to them. And so if we can get the employees living here, we can get incentivized that, I think it'll go a long ways towards our, our retention issues and making sure that they stay here, work here. And we have a, a very young department right now. A lot of our patrol staff is, is less than two years on. And the more experience they get, it's a shame to have them. We've, we invest a lot of time and money to train those employees. And when they go somewhere else, they take that training somewhere else. And then we get a new employee. And although we, I think we're, our community's still getting a high level of service, they're missing out on that experience, which is even a higher level of service than they're already receiving. Any questions?
So you're going to be bringing back, I guess, staffing or housing-type incentives, subsidies?
We will.
Okay. And you'll have your technology. And, all right, anything else, counsel, that you want to ask the chief?
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
And I love being here. It's a great place to, to live and work.
One of the things that the chief talked about in his interviews last year is that on Christmas Day, he goes on duty so that the officer on duty can go home. And he did that last year.
Yeah.
Just last week, right? And so thank you, Chief, for doing that here with our city too, and our force.
It's fun. I always take one of my kids with me and get hot chocolate.
They acknowledged it from dispatch. They said that it was the neatest thing they'd seen, and they really appreciated it, and loved that the police officers had those moments to, to be with their family.
Yeah, my kids are getting older, so it's easy for me to come out. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, our next presentation is from Mark Rounds, our Parks and Cemetery Director, and he's going to give us the Parks and Cemetery strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats analysis. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. It's good to see y'all here. Welcome new council members and old ones. I enjoy working with all of you. As our strength, one of the biggest strengths we got is we got to hire the arborist this year in weed sprayer. I can't tell you what this position has added to us. So he come in with a lot of experience, but he's learning more. He also comes in, and he's already created scheduling for weed spraying of things that we've missed in the past, like trails. I found a trail last year we didn't even know existed that was so overgrown. And, and so we've identified these areas, and we're going to keep them mowed down, trimmed out, and all the weeds killed on them. So that, that's a, a big strength for us. This is a, the Muirfield Barn storage, I know this is going to go away, but this year it has helped us a lot to be able to store some of our equipment down there out of the weather. Central control water saving stuff that the city is investing in. We've got it at the cemetery. I don't know what our estimates are, because we never metered before, but I'm guessing we're saving about thirty percent. And I think the cemetery looks better, looked better this last summer than it ever has. And that's just through the, reading the, the analytics and everything that goes with the irrigation system. We're, we've been pretty blessed with good equipment. The city's been very generous in helping us stay good equipment. Time we don't spend working on equipment is time we can spend mowing and, and, and doing the things that we need to do. I hope that that continues. One of our biggest strengths is we've got a lot of experience. Matthew touched on it in his, in his presentation as well. But having a, a crew that can step in and take care, every person that works at the, at the cemetery parks knows how to dig a grave. They know how to change a water valve. They know how to go in and, and relight furnaces and water heaters and do things like that. So we're, we're well, well-rounded, and if somebody's not there, somebody can step in and do the job. And I think that's very important. We, we pride ourselves on being approachable. Working in the cemetery, you, you have some hard times. And it's one of the things that I've always stressed, is dealing well with the public. But we, we listen to committees and things like this. I mean, we, we had the Parks Committee here, and, and what a great bunch of people, and what a great bunch of ideas. And, and we like to think that we work well with those. Weaknesses, I look at weaknesses as opportunities as well, because identifying weaknesses gives you the opportunity to be better. So our seasonal employees need more training. That falls back on me. We've been so reactive rather than proactive. So we go in, oh, we need to mow this. Take this, this is how that mower runs. Get in the truck and go, rather taking the time explaining how the mowers work, the safety procedures, all, all of that stuff. We need more safety training. Again, falls back on me. I need to set aside that time so we can, we can do more safety. It's something that Matt has pushed very hard. And sometimes I'm a little dense, and he has to hit me a little harder, but we're, we're getting there. Lack of seasonal employees is, is the community's become more affluent, kids don't want to work. They don't need to work. Plus, they're involved in so many activities, they don't have time to work. And that, that's one of our, our things, is we, we're trying to come up with ways to incentivize kids to come in and work. We're a, we're a small department, and sometimes we get handed these projects that are out of our norm, and that takes away from us maintaining the parks, maintaining the cemetery, things like that. And so being small is a weakness, and it's also an opportunity. We see the need for growth, and, and we're always coming in, and there's budget considerations, but we're always asking for more people. So that's one of our things. And another one is with fast-growing community and a lot of new development, parks and trails, seems like sometimes it's just handed to us. There you go, go forth and prosper. And, and we don't have the staff to, to do it, especially to do the job that we need to do. And right now, we're outgrowing our existing shop. With the growth of the parks, with the growth of the cemetery, stuff like that, we're out of room to store our equipment, to maintain our equipment, and have people sit down, have lunch. When we get into the opportunities, I'm going to kind of just talk about that. The opportunities that we have is central control sprinkling. We're going to proceed and go through the city and do this incrementally, you know, it, it's very expensive, and hopefully it's going to work in. The tap tacks, I see that, that is a big opportunity for the, the Parks Department. We will benefit from that, whether it's spent on new parks or whatever. I think it's going to be a great opportunity for us. Let's see, there's some of them I'm not going to talk to, but a lean, lean to on the storage building on the east side. It's one of the opportunities, I think, once we lose that Muirfield barn, if we just put a lean to on there to keep our equipment out of the weather, I think that's a great opportunity to utilize space that, that right now is just out under the weather. And I think it's an inexpensive opportunity as well. So we work well with other departments. I feel like I have a great relationship with everybody within the city. But also Wasatch County, the school district, we work well with them. But through the Cemetery and Parks Association, I have contacts throughout the state. So that's another opportunity. We're looking at, we're growing so fast, we're looking at separating the Cemetery and Parks crews. Right now, we, I have specialties for each of my employees, but maybe it's time we just separate and say, this is your job. You take these employees and, and, and make cemetery work so we can concentrate with the crew on the parks. So another opportunity's in, I haven't got it listed, is getting better equipment, bigger equipment. That might solve some of our seasonal employee problems. If we can get a, a piece of equipment that can mow twice the space of one mower, that's less time I'm spending on a park. With, with this, we have sixty-one inch decks on our mowers. Say I get one that's, you know, twelve, fourteen feet, I'm mowing a lot more area with the same employee. So we're looking at ways to, to better utilize lesser employees. It's, you know, we want, we want to be responsible. Threats, there's a couple on, on here. There's small, the construction company with the addition of the road, and the detention pond up at the cemetery. We've lost all our parking, which is going to have to be addressed before our seasonal start. There's just no parking there. City growth, adding more parks and facilities that we need to maintain, but we're not getting any more staff to maintain it. One of the things that, that I kind of wanted, i- if we can afford to ma- maintain it, let's not build it. That, that's, I'd hate to be blunt, but that's the truth. Not enough space for current equipment staff. That's a small shop. We're just running out of room. Sometimes we, we deal with special committees or special interest groups come in, and they think our, all our time should be dedicated to them. And when you try and, and say, you know, this, I have this much I got to maintain, and this is how much I can dedicate to this, it's hard for them to, to understand. And reliable seasonal help, like I said before, kids that we do hire want to come in and, and they, well, I need to go to lacrosse practice. I need to go on a track. My family's taken, which are all great things, but it, it just really cuts into our already busy staff. So, any questions for me?
So, Council, think about this. The new cemetery building, you know, that's going to be built soon, the basement is not finished. And with what you're suggesting with, I just, I know there's going to be a conference room, there's going to be offices in the new cemetery building. Have you thought about that being, of course, your office, but what else do you need in the basement, you see what I mean, of that building that would help you with these other needs that you've talked about?
I, I don't see that as, as helping. Really, when we looked at it, we looked at its space, because the city's growing. Different departments, different administration staff, we could provide offices for stuff like that. My employees don't really need office space. I have a few that do. But what we need is more places to store our equipment.
So in the Muirfield Park, we don't really have a storage area for you out there?
No, right now we do, because that old barn's down there.
That's going to change.
But that's going to change, and we realize that. That's why I'm proposing, maybe in the new budget year, we get a price to put a lean to on or expand on to that.
All right, let me, let me just cut you off there. For the last ten years, Bark has always been willing to go the cheapest route possible for storage needs and so forth. And they've, you know, they've been the bottom of the totem pole. We're really trying to elevate our parks so that we have incredible, at least more than decent parks, we have incredible parks. And yes, you've got to take care of that. Now, we haven't done new storage for you at the Main Street Park yet. We were going to do that, but there will be some in the new band shelf, right? Does Mark get the new band shelf storage, or is that going to be for the programming and the events?
Initially, it's going to be the park.
Okay, so initially, that's good. But that's just for Main Street Park. So we need a lean to probably as well as Muirfield Park storage for you to be coming along. And I hate to say this, but I'll keep saying it again. If we need to raise impact fees to be able to take care of our facilities that everybody uses in the parks, then we need to have that study done. Is that possible to do an impact fee study for either finishing in the basement, the lean to, the Muirfield Park storage? Can we do that kind of impact fee study?
Recall, Council, you just updated the impact fee study about a year or two ago.
Parks, but not for those things.
True, but you can't raise impact fees for cemetery purposes. You can for the park. In my understanding, Mark, you'd want to use that basement for both cemetery and parks. A portion of the impact fees could be used, but not all of them. So I, I think with these types of requests, we have to look at all of them holistically, find out what's the top priority. And that's why during the retreat, we're going to share with you in detail what resources we have to fund these, and so you can make priorities around that.
We want the equipment to last as long as possible. He needs bigger equipment. He's going to have a lot more acreage of parks to maintain very shortly. And he's, he's got to be able to have the trailers or the equipment, as well as the staffing.
Agreed.
To take care of that, right? I mean, we just talked about trail maintenance, too.
What we hope to do with the new software I mentioned earlier is actually begin generating data. What we hope to do with the new software I mentioned earlier is actually begin generating data, statistics for you. For example, rather than simply anecdotally say, I need more staff, we could say, we need X number of staff per acre of park. So we can actually get down to understanding what the actual need is based upon the acres that's got to be maintained. Not there yet, but we're going to hopefully have the data to help drive those decisions.
Right, but if he's not able to maintain what we've got already, you see what I mean? Then the numbers we generate right now would not be as accurate, if that makes sense. Because we're saying, oh, we got this many employees and this many acres. So we only need to get more acres to get another employee. But if he's not able to maintain current acres, you see what I mean? That's got to be figured into the numbers.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of issues here. It's the 18, 19 year olds that are not wanting jobs. There's a lot of issues working into this. Impact fees can't be used for salaries and benefits. They're going to be used for brick and mortar. So even if we re-increase impact fees, it doesn't solve his issue regarding the summer staffing. That's always falling short.
I think.
And a full-time guy would be great. Where I'm lacking in the help is in the seasonal employees, the guys to go maintain. And it's tough.
If you can't get seasonal help, then that's like, you need more full-time people and you've got to keep them busy or doing other things, like you were saying during the off-season.
There's plenty to do. Don't get me wrong, but where I really need the help is just, all our work is in the spring, summer and fall. Winters just depend. I mean, right now we're busy, but we're not, how do I put it? I haven't got a lot of things that's pushing me real hard right now.
I'm just saying, you're always the one that will take the cheapest amount to try to do the best you can. And I just really think we need to make sure that you're taken care of. We took care of Public Works. We took care of the police department, right? We're taking care of the cemetery part, but that parks part, we've got to be able to bring it up to the same level of standard as we're doing in our other departments. That's all I'm saying. Scott?
I think one of the most important things you said is if you can't afford to maintain it, don't build it. Because a community that has more amenities is going to cost more. And all this comes down to raising taxes, really. I mean, every person in this community is going to be, need to pay more for all the amenities that we're getting. I mean, that's the only way to it. Growth isn't covering it. The growth is not, the taxes we're receiving from growth are not paying for the amenities that we're adding. Right?
I agree, but that's why you're on the council and I maintain.
Yeah.
So just so you know, Matt, we did raise impact fees at Hebrew Light and Power last year, right, to cover the 100% of the capital facilities. Now that we have perhaps new projects coming along, we should add those to the capital facilities list so that we can charge the impact fee that's commensurate to it. Otherwise, we're always going to be behind the eight ball and we're not going to be able to take care of our equipment that he also wants to.
Yeah, you can't purchase equipment with impact fees either.
No, I'm just saying, we've got to build capital facilities for parks. He wants storage.
What we need to do is make sure that the capital facility is already in the existing impact fee plan. We've got a large sum of money in impact fees right now. And we have a state law mandate that we have to spend within six years.
But I didn't recall any of those storage needs being on the current capital facilities plan. And that's, if he's asking for new storage facilities, then we should include it and recalculate it.
And Mark and I have talked about, once we have the new administration building constructed and completed, he, Jody and some other staffing moving out of the existing building, allowing us more room to perhaps remodel and provide the space that he needs. So there's a lot of angles here that we'll be looking at to provide him the space he needs.
That would be good. That would be good.
That's what I was going to say. You know, with the move and in the future, that what the current building, maybe that is where some of the storage could possibly go.
Possibly.
Utilizing buildings and space that we might have either there or even sharing with other departments, with Public Works. I'm sorry, I'm putting you on the spot, you know, to share some of those facilities to help with the storage issues as well, maybe looking into that.
Mark, how old is that building at the cemetery that you are in right now?
Probably 29, 30 years.
Yeah, I'm thinking it's getting really close to the end of its useful life, but it might take more to redo that than we think, darn it.
Well, I'm just trying to plant a seed. I don't, you guys have been more than generous with my department with new administration building and things like that. I'm trying to plant a seed to say, you know, as we grow, we need to look at a parks facility somewhere. It's that facility we got is plenty big for our cemetery needs right now and housing some of the parks. But as we grow, we're going to need a parks facility. And I don't expect changes overnight. I'm just planting that seed to say, keep that in the back of your mind.
I think a seed is very appropriate from the Parks Department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Council, we shall move on. Thank you, Mark. We're going now to Cherie Ash, our Human Resources Director for the Human Resources SWAT Analysis. Hope you're doing well, Cherie.
Thank you, yes. And thank you, everyone, for carving out some time for Human Resources. This is my favorite topic, as you might imagine. One of our greatest strengths, I think, citywide is customer service. And this is in every level, every department. I sit near Finance and I'm just amazed at their level of care and customer service. And every interaction I've had with police, Public Works, the airport even, that's really just Travis, but also Parks and Cemetery has just been incredible. And I think that's a huge strength for us. We're welcoming, we're informative and we go out of our way to try and solve problems and get answers to questions. So that's just really valuable. And Jeremy Cook, I'd like to thank, he doesn't know it, but he's, maybe he does know it, has become an employment law attorney in addition to all of his other many talents. So it's great to have that as a resource to lean on. And Matt as well makes himself available when he probably wishes I would make more appointments with him, but just happened to crash into his office and seems to make time. So we have a lot of really good things going for us. I love that we regularly visit with the Personnel Policy Committee. It's not just a policy and procedures manual that's shoved in the closet or on the bookshelf. And we look at it once every 10 years. This is something that we are regularly going to be visiting and updating as things change. So part of, we did a part survey, which is, it stands for Professional Accurate, Responsive and Timely. And 31% of our employees are satisfied, 43% are happy and 20% are elated or overjoyed to be working for Hebrew City. So I think that's, I think that's great. A few other things we've done, we've added some software to make our lives a little bit easier, trying to automate more forms and procedures instead of manually having people fill out paper applications, which is painful for everyone. And then storing them in multiple places isn't efficient. Some of our opportunity, oh, sorry, one more strength. We've filled 19 recruitments over this year. And one of them is our Chief of Police that I wish I could take credit for, but I think we just hit the absolute candidate lottery when we were able to have him join our team. And that's been a tremendous asset. I would echo that it does seem and will have more metric data rather than anecdotal. We seem very low, we seem understaffed in many of our departments, particularly in Parks Cemetery that also has building maintenance. It also has trails and open spaces. Anyway, that area, Public Works has one more recruitment to fill. And we have some good candidates for that. One thing, I'm jumping down to threats now. We are timed to fill. So from the time we post a job until someone is hired is more than 60 days, which is very high. It's much too high by the time someone gives their notice. I'll go back to the Staff Engineer. Gordon Minor was our Staff Engineer who announced his retirement in late September. And as of right now, we still don't have a Staff Engineer to our engineering department that I think is stretched very thin. They have, we require a lot of them and they just don't have the bandwidth. So let's go back to opportunities. New hire orientation is one that I really would like to develop more. We have this element in Human Resources that's also emergency management and risk management. And the Safety Committee is fantastic at discussing items of preventative disaster preparedness. But it's a little disheartening when we surveyed employees that they didn't know who their representative from their department is. Every department has a representative on the Safety Committee team. And also an overwhelming amount weren't sure how to, what do they do if someone is hurt? What, how do I file a worker's comp claim or who do I go to? So we have some work to do there. We'd also like to encourage new employees to attend city council meetings. And we have something through the Utah Trust called cantola.com that has a wealth of different trainings. That's something that I'd like to advertise a little bit more, make people more aware that we have trainings and resources available to them. Also, I think an opportunity would be to somehow recognize or reward employees that are at the top of the pay scale right now. When we do our annual reviews, they do get a rating and we thank them for their service and their commitment. But we don't provide a monetary reward. So right now, our pay philosophy is up to 12 years to get to the maximum of the pay scale. So at six years of service, you're at your midpoint. And at 12 years, you're at the maximum. And just in doing just some research around in our surrounding neighborhoods and communities, most of them are around between four and eight, eight years to get to max rather than 12 years. So it's just, it's something to think about. Another weakness I already a little bit talked about, archival historical data. We have a lot of documents, but we have them in lots of different places. So some are manuals, some are electronics, some are in laser fiche. And I'd really like to get us to a point where we have one centralized repository and it's easy to access files and information. Another thing that I think is a weakness, we have employees that aren't aware of some of our benefits. We have an employee, Travis Biggs, that also speaks Spanish and has done a number of translation services for us and only just recently found out that he wasn't receiving the bilingual stipend. We give people $50 just to help assist for translation purposes and wasn't aware of that. Another tenured employee wasn't aware that there's a potential of a 5% certification increase. So the certification, the knowledge is benefiting the city and they didn't know that that's something that came with a reward. So I'd like to try and make the policy and procedures manual more available. That big giant document can be kind of off-putting just to sit down to read. So maybe we just have some highlights of, these are the things that benefit you and benefit the city that people can easily access. One other thing, we have new managers that have requested managerial training. There are some great employees that are promoted to be a new manager and then it's just sort of, good luck, like Mark said, get in the truck and good luck to you. Figure it out. So I think we just need to do a better job of more formal training. Threats are unemployment rate, and this is great. But if you're looking to hire someone, it's not so easy because it's 2.2% in Wasatch County, 2.3% in Summit County. So there are not a lot of people looking for jobs. Seasonal staffing challenges, Mark and I have lamented at length, usually right around the spring of how can we attract more seasonal staff? And he'll even do things like get a cooler and fill it full of popsicles and cold drinks. I think he just does that on his own to try and just provide a little bit of comfort to someone who's working in the hot sun. Other threats are no surprise, inflation rates, cost of living, CPI, housing. I really appreciate what Chief Sever said about if we can get a local employee, they're so much more vested and interested in the community rather than driving two hours and on their way seeing other communities that have police departments. It would be great if we had more people able to live in the Hebrew Valley. And then the last thing I want to highlight, 20% of our full-time regular employees have second jobs. And to me, that is a little bit concerning, you know, and it's not just, well, I sell pampered chef on the weekend. It's to supplement their income. We have some great benefits here, but if 20% of our people feel like they need a second job, then that could be an indicator that maybe our pay scales need some refreshing. So that's all I have. Questions?
Questions, Council? Okay, Cherie, thank you very much. Good luck with a lot of those projects, but if you need funding, right? You know where to go.
Thank you.
And then bring it to us. Thank you, thank you. Okay, lastly, we have Sarah Nagel, our Finance Manager, to give us the Finance Department SWAT analysis. Thank you, Sarah.
All right, my business training, as you can see, I'm a business writer. I don't do a lot of extra words. Just as some highlights, some of our strengths, we have a great team. We're a small team. We are three and a half people in our team, but they are phenomenal and dedicated and bright and smart. We recently acquired, well, we recently fired our auditors and made them our consultants. That's been a huge help to have basically another set of CPAs on hand to help with some accounting technical issues. We are in the process of implementing our new budgeting software, ClearGov. It is a heavy lift. It will be an amazing addition to our city. It'll, the transparency and the accuracy and the efficiency, we're super excited about ClearGov and bringing on new budgeting software. Our opportunities, oh, let me go down. So those are our strengths, weaknesses. We have a new Finance Director, me. We lost a lot of institutional knowledge. So that's always hard to reclaim when you lose, especially someone in an upper management role. But jumping up to opportunities, we have a new Finance Director, me, which means that there's new eyes looking at things and maybe reassessing our processes. And yeah, just reevaluating the way we've done things. Going back downs, we have very few formalized policies, but we're working on that. I meet with a fiscal standing committee every quarter and I've charged them all to like get their things done. We call it lovingly get hit by a bus books, right? So if something happened and you suddenly weren't able to do your work, could somebody step in and do the basic function? So we're working on that. We have limited bandwidth to manage our increasing demand. I mean, it's kind of ditto to everyone else, right? There's just, our city's growing. I mean, we probably, just basic level, we issue more checks than we did three years ago. And just all that incremental growth means incremental output from us. Back up to opportunities. Because I'm new, we're kind of rethinking the way we do things. We're rethinking, well, like we're adding the budgeting. We are rethinking how we do our processes, like issuing checks and just all of those things. And then threats. It's, you know, there are, in the accounting and budgeting world, there's just always regulations to be mindful of. So we have to be careful that we're going to trainings and consulting with our, you know, our third-party consultants. And then because of the increasing demand, we, it's a staff burnout, which can lead to a decrease in quality. I think of Mindy Kohler, our business license slash treasurer slash utility billing slash receptionist. She's got a lot on her plate and maybe we can rethink how we utilize her time and maybe bringing in, no, I don't think we're at a point where we need an entirely new person, but maybe reallocating work, maybe moving a part-time to a full-time just to give us that utility we need. I feel like we're working at a utility of a close to one, which is not a good situation because if anything happens, then you're kind of broken. So that is the Finance Department in a nutshell.
Questions or comments, everyone?
How's the money?
How's the money tree going?
The money tree?
Yeah.
Oh, it's amazing. Yeah, thanks Scott. That's a good question.
Wait a minute, you found a money tree?
Yeah, yeah.
We all want one.
Yeah, me too.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, everyone, thank you for your patience. Now we're ready to move into the action items on our agenda. And the first action item is a legislative report from our Mountain Lands Association of Governments contracted lobbyist, Mr. Dave Stewart. Is he here? He is here. Please come forward, sir. We're excited to hear about your report on the state legislature, what's happened or what is going to happen, what you're thinking.
Sure. Happy to be here. I know there's a couple of new faces. So again, David Stewart, been doing lobbying government affairs for over 23 years now. Worked with the city for the last couple of years and on some specific projects and broadly speaking. And so, kind of just to start off with, so the legislative session will kick off here the day after Martin Luther King Day, so I guess really two weeks from today, runs for 45 days. It'll end that first Friday in March around, I think it's the second or so, so it's fast and furious. It's interesting, we're in a year right now, so the last two previous years, certainly at the state level, we've had huge surpluses because of a lot of, well, obviously the economy's been growing, but a lot of federal money and other things to the tune of billions of dollars. This year is different. There's certainly a slowdown now. The good news is it's not nearly as severe as was anticipated kind of last session as they budgeted for this year. And so they kind of seem to, you know, overplan for a deeper dip or more of a recession than we've seen, you know, knock on wood, I guess, so far. And so while it's still a record budget being proposed and the governor's budget was just shy of $30 billion, which is crazy how much that's even grown since I've started lobbying. It went back in 2000, if I have to go back and look, it was a single-digit billion of dollars. And, you know, so we've grown quite a bit. But there's really, you know, where there hasn't been as much in the past, there's, you know, budgets are a lot tighter. As you've seen, inflation's, you know, gone crazy. Transportation infrastructure projects are all 20, 30, and 40% overruns. And if you read in the news, and not too long ago, they talked about the Big Davis I-15 reconstruction and expansion, I think originally was slotted for around 1.3 to 1.6 billion. And now they're, you know, projecting it's going to be north of $3 billion to do. So, you know, and that's just one project. Every project at UDOT is seeing that. And so what they, you know, this is not a first, what they'll do is start scoping things back, start phasing things in, and a lot of those projects are, you know, can do that. Something obviously close to home for you guys would be the bypass, right? And that, at least last, you know, and UDOT's notorious, everything kind of gets pushed and pushed. But last is supposed to be kind of first quarter, hopefully to have the EIS out and can comment and get that finalized and everything else, I would guess sometime this summer would be my guess, it'll get pushed. What that really sets up for is, you know, kind of what I would say is this session in working to kind of familiarize legislators generally, hey, this is coming, this is a problem. I mean, it's kind of nice because there's not candidly a lot of money this session to go fund things. And so in a lot of ways, that's good for us to be off, you know, at least one more year to really seeking some planning and other types of design and things like that. And so I think that'll tee up nicely, you know, again, hoping that there's not some unforeseen recession or slowdown to that point. It tees up nicely to be in line. One of the keys will be obviously though, that, you know, UDOT has many more projects that are needed than funds. And so one of the key things will be that the local governments, local entities are all on the same page. Or, you know, obviously there's different alignments and, you know, I know people are nervous about some of those and where it's going to go and things like that. But at the end of the day, hopefully when the dust all settles from their work and the input, that, because if, for instance, if the city or the county or others are pushing back, then that just gives UDOT a very easy excuse to shelve it and just leave it there for, you know, until people get on the same page because they, again, they have plenty of other communities that want and need the resources. And so they tend to shy away from, they're not here to steamroll local governments. And so they largely want to see those as partners and, you know, getting, not everybody may love every part of it, but that, you know, hopefully there'll be broad support and consensus as well as with the business community and others and kind of showing that huge need for the economic development and the growth that you guys are certainly seeing. And so I see this session as more kind of, especially with key members of leadership, just, you know, putting a reminder out there that this is coming and continue to kind of then through this interim as we gear up into next year. A few other, you know, issues that are hanging out there. Last year, we had an issue dealing with airports and leasing and things. It was really targeted at Ogden's Airport. There's been some frustration between hangar owners and the city and how that's been managed. And there's still, you know, some threats that they're supposed to be billed this session. The one nice thing is there is a new mayor and his announcement in Ogden of kind of his, you know, when he won, one of the things he actually specifically mentioned was the airport and working with interested parties to resolve that. And so hopefully we avoid, as, you know, we don't have to work against and defeat, again, legislation that has lots of unintended consequences and punishes airports around the state that are working well and that you have, you know, unfortunately, when the state ever gets into these things, as you guys all know all too well, when they propose, you know, one-size-fits-all type of a solution that has tons of, and especially in airports where, you know, the legislature doesn't know a lot of things about a lot of things, they know nothing about airports, but yet they tend to want to get in the middle. And there is another bill, actually affects Salt Lake City Airport, shouldn't, doesn't affect you guys dealing with policing of the airport because they're mad at the Salt Lake City Police Department. So they want the Highway Patrol now to be the enforcement of the city-run airport. So that just shows you kind of, in a nutshell, honestly, kind of where we're at. I mean, as a legislature, it, again, over my couple decades, it has been a steady creep. You know, there's always, there was always some, you know, friction, if you will, and healthy between local governments and state land use, kind of, you know, developers and Realtor Association and others. And, but that over time is, you know, especially in the House, you see much more, what's interesting, several were former city council members, but they get to the state legislature and suddenly now they need to, you know, they're usually very conservative, but we need to use government now to really, state government to tell local government not to do certain things. And so I think you're seeing more and more where they continue, as you guys have seen, and again, trying to legislate to the handful of those that may not be doing what they should. Or, again, and you guys are obviously very much in a unique situation as far as your growth, your size, other constraints that you have that are unique, but you're not unique in that. That's the case in a lot of cities around the state. But again, the state keeps coming with, well, we need to have certain, you know, you need to do this much in affordable, you need to have this type of zoning and you need to do all these things. It's like, well, great guys, that doesn't work in some places. And so, you know, the league does a great job on kind of those broader, big policy issues. And certainly at times, I always work closely with them on those types of things. I know Matt's been tasked, you know, the governor, kind of, it's interesting, the legislature's been working, as you guys know, on affordable housing and those types of things. Governor hasn't been involved, but this year decided we need to do more. And so he kind of has pulled together a group, and I know Matt sits on that. And that, and that's where we're really at, I guess, in a nutshell, is as we lead up these two weeks into session, is there's kind of that jockeying right now of, all right, what, there's a lot of, been a lot of saber rattling, oh, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, or what's your proposal to solve this? If we don't like it, we'll do something on it. And so we're right in that stage right now where there's, you know, any, most any large issue that would potentially affect the city still in flux in that you have interested parties still meeting, you know, even as, you know, recently as this week, you know, to continue to negotiate of, how do we get there and how do we tackle some of these initiatives that are, you know, whether it be first-time home buyers, affordable, you know, homelessness is still a huge issue more along the Wasatch front, those types of media issues and how do we? And honestly, there's been several things done over the last couple of years. And at some point, it's, you know, let's take a breath and actually see if it's working or not versus if we just keep changing everything, then we never know, are we actually, you know, actually doing something productive or are we just never letting something set long enough to see is that actually working? And so that's kind of, you know, and then in the House, we have a new speaker. The former speaker just recently resigned, is running for US Senate. So, yeah, I mean, he was the majority leader, so it's not a huge shift, but certainly a bit of a change there. And one unique thing this year for the state is for the first time ever, the filing is happening this week. For every year past, it's always been right after the session you would file. And for the first time, because of some filing dates and deadlines, they moved it up. And so it's going to be interesting going into the session when you have legislators that now, they're always in election years worried about somebody that might challenge them. But this year it'll be, they'll know if they have somebody or not. And so for some, that'll embolden them if they don't have a challenger. For others, they'll be nervous because they have a challenger. So that will, you know, be a different dynamic that we've never faced. And so, and some of the other local initiatives, I know the governor proposed a large, a large infrastructure loan fund, but, you know, leadership's kind of basically saying there's not money to do that this year. And so, you know, you have the legislature starting to have their kind of caucus meetings right now to start, you know, figuring out budget-wise where they want to go. And, you know, in the House, we have about 130 or 40 bill files already filed in the Senate. I think there's just shy of 50. And so I'm sure we'll set another record as we have for the last few years of number of bill filings. But, so in a lot of ways, you know, it's kind of stay tuned and see as what actually gets filed and gets put forward about how do we, you know, there's also things, there is a bill out there dealing with PITS, the Public Improvement Districts. There has been an effort the last few years from the development community to allow a private landowner to create his own improvement district, assess a property tax, access the public bond markets and things. And that's been, you know, candidly defeated the last couple of years because it's been way too broad without any checks. There is a bill out there now that tries to address as many of the legitimate concerns and saying, look, if you're going to do this and propose this, there's a bunch of, you know, guardrails, we'll say, around this too, so that it doesn't create inequities and problems with the quality of the infrastructure who maintains it. If there's bankruptcies or if there's other issues, as well as, you know, it's just not as simple as go out and get a loan. And so, again, there's this continual friction of, you have the development community saying, we need more affordable housing, we need more affordable first-time home buyers. And cities are saying, that's great, we've got to balance that with, we still got to have roads and infrastructure and some of these other things that cost money. And candidly, every change we make tends to be pressing on the cities to change, but it doesn't seem to filter too much past the developer. They seem to still be making a fair amount of money. And those, you know, savings, if you will, don't tend to always make it too far down the road. And so that's where your friction right now is, how do we continue to move that ball forward and get more affordable, yet, you know, how does it actually make a difference versus just make it, you know, cheaper for a home builder to build a home? So sorry, I've been kind of just rattling through, but that's really, you know, honestly, what we're seeing so far as far as kind of this upcoming session and kind of on a broader scale as to what I see coming. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions, Council? Go ahead, Mike.
You said the date to file for county and state offices is when?
It started today and ends, I think next Monday is your final day, I think it's the 8th, if I remember right.
That's interesting.
So, yeah, you've had, you've already seen a couple legislators that surprised me that I wouldn't have guessed were not running again. And so it's kind of that interesting, do they file and become a lame duck? Or do we see some that file and then get somebody else to file against them that they're not going to really, you know, it'll be, some games might be played, but yeah, that's, and it's been short. Usually it's a two-week window, so it's one week to decide whether or not to file.
Very self-serving to somebody.
Well...
No one even knows.
It's changed.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's been a lot of, they've tried to publicize it. The two big reasons they changed it was when they allowed the alternative path to the ballot through signature gathering, that starts January 1st. And so what you had this, but filing wasn't until mid-March. And so what you had is a bunch of people filing to get signatures just to show, hey, I'm running again versus, you know, those filing dates weren't aligned to seek office. So they want to marry those up. The other piece is, and they haven't instituted it yet, is one of the things you saw in the last gubernatorial election is you have, where you get multiple candidates through signature gathering conventions and you end up with, you know, a primary that has three, four candidates. And so in the end, you, you know, in the end, without getting the plurality, they want to set up enough timeframe that if you wanted to have a runoff between the top two to get a true, out of the primary, the true number one, you know, it's not in a three-way race, the top candidate doesn't always get all the votes, whereas head-to-head, they'd beat either of the other two candidates. And so while they haven't put that in place yet, the other big driving factor for this change in filing was because of the timeframe and the mandatory filing periods and all those types of things. In order to facilitate that, they had to have the filing period be at the beginning of the year. So that was really the driving force, but yeah, it's, I'm sure it's going to catch some people by surprise. But most people that are thinking, you know, the one thing it will change is you do get quite a few people that I think after a session, right, there's been a controversial issue. The most recent one would be the tax reform that really angered a lot of people and drove a lot of people to file. That won't, you know, be the case because that, you know, most people coming out of Christmas and the New Year holiday aren't exactly angry and ready to take out their state legislator, I don't think. And so, you know, to a certain extent, I think that is probably some self-serving because you don't get that emotional kind of drive that you've gotten in years past for contentious issues. So, yeah, that will be, see how that plays out.
Anybody else? I would like to speak to the ULCT's framework. I totally support that. And we really need to get studies out of the state legislature on the existing laws that they've done for the past two to three years before they continue to keep changing and changing and putting more requirements on us. I think that the governor's housing initiative is like a drop in the bucket. And I don't know why, it's only 150 million as I thought it was. As you can tell, we need help to either have to raise our own taxes or have to, you know, not pay our employees enough to even retain them. And we've really done a lot of work on that. We're not trying to be, take the cheap route on that, but it's more and more expensive. And we could use a lot of help with recruiting for police, you know, maybe even from the state level, you know, and help funnel that into the local level to, you know, promote public service from our governor, all right? If you ever talk with him. But as far as the housing initiatives, you know, we have worked really hard in the city to get down to a 60% AMI deed-restricted housing in certain areas. But we need a lot more than that, right? And I don't know what the state legislature can do on it, but 80% AMI is just not going to cut it for affordable housing in this valley anymore or this county or, you know, the county to the north of us. I think this city's very interested in the Olympics that are coming. And we would appreciate any talking, lobbying that you can do to say, well, Heber City's going to need some help with the Olympics, you know, in 2034, when that comes along. And we want to get ready for it and not just wait till 2033, right, to try to figure that out. So that's another talking point. We're happy to get any of your help with grants, new grants that you see out there or that you hear about at the state legislature. We have a grant writing officer. Matt can certainly help with that too. But, you know, let's just try to see if the state legislature is micromanaging the way they should, you know, and get some, you know, real studies to show that it's helping instead of them just continuing to put more and more on us and taking away our authority to be able to manage our city.
Nope, I totally understand. And, well, and yeah, you bring up especially the Olympics, that's going to be a key one. And while you'll see some right now, that's probably, well, a few years away before they make significant, just be more than anything because of our budget. I mean, it's going to be hard right now doing a bunch of money when things are pretty flat, you know, but that's certainly starting to build that case that will be in the years to come. Rally cry for the Wasatch back and making those investments to facilitate, you know, everybody still has the warm and fuzzy from the last go-around and it was great. And, and so I think, you know, those communities, obviously, you guys, a major one that are going to feel the impacts, they'll be, and honestly, that's one of the things that bodes well for the bypass, to get funding and to get prioritized. That's why I stress making sure that we're all on the same page when this is all done with the local government leaders. Because if that's the case, I'm confident that we'll be able to get it funded and using, if nothing else, the Olympics as one of the major kind of driving forces as to why we need this. But, but again, that can still get upended by, you know, if there's, those are defining it. But that, that will be, I think, probably the most significant investment we'll see will come from that.
I do wonder about the Great Salt Lake Initiative and how much, I don't know if it's going to be keep treading water or not with the drought, you know, that we seem to be in right now, back to in. But I know that we're very concerned, right, about our water quality and our water quantity. And so we, you know, I'm in favor of the governor continuing to push forward that Great Salt Lake Initiative and, you know, seeing how more water can be put into the lake. That's all.
No, and the nice thing is the director of DNR, so full disclosure, he's actually my cousin. But he was a former legislator and that's one of his top priorities is the greatest, you know. A lot of what you're hearing the governor say is coming from him. He is a huge proponent and recognizes he's a farmer by trade up on the north end, up in... on the north end, up in Box Elder County, right at the fringe of the, where the, especially where the, the, back in the day when you had flooding, uh, which is forever ago, it actually encroached on his farm and everything. And, but he is a huge, uh, proponent of, of that and recognizes that, that it's just, you know, with, without the Great Salt Lake, we basically, like other communities, that, you know, the Salt Lake Valley would disappear. I mean, you wouldn't be, be uninhabitable and everything else. So he, it's funny, he's a very conservative Republican, right? And he, and at times it's, and the nice part is having him in that position, saying those things, you know, because unfortunately, a lot of stuff gets dismissed as, you know, this is liberal or whatever else. But, you know, people are kind of confused when you have a very conservative guy step up and saying, guys, this is not politics. This is, this is just practical, practicality of development and everything else. If you want to continue, if we don't manage this through conservation and other things, we, because we can't, you know, develop our way out of this, and we're going to have to conserve and do stuff, so.
Thank you very much. That was a lot you gave us. We really appreciate it.
And, and obviously, I'm always available, um, you know, during the session, Matt, you know, share my contact and, and, uh, I'll be down there.
We do want to invite you back after the session so that you could give us another report. You're also welcome to email that to us. You know, we can get it that way too, but especially if it's going to be affecting us, we'd appreciate that.
I have a question. Um, when you, you just to go off of something you just barely said with the governor saying that, you know, we can't grow our way out of this, we can't develop our way out of this situation with the water and that we need to make some drastic, um, changes. I'm wondering if, if, if he's talking to individuals and listening to individuals, if the discussion has ever been for the issue of golf courses and, um, water usage there? Has that been a discussion? Is that something that is in the works for anything? Is it kind of being, you know, quietly put under the carpet, so to speak, and, and thrown under the rug because we know how important that particular, um, leisurely activ- activity is for some people? Um, I'm just wondering if that's something that i- is a potential discussion, if that's something that can be brought forward into his concerns or their concerns, or?
Sure, I, I can certainly, I, I've not personally heard that. I can raise that. I mean, they, you know, the reality is we can't grow through water development, other things our way out of it. We also can't conserve our way out of it. It's a combination of both. We still need more storage and we need, you know, significant conservation. And those, you know, things working hand in hand are going to be what's successful. And so, and being, you know, through conservation, being smarter, right? There, especially in Southern Utah and places where, you know, the water wise and, and some of the other initiatives, whether it be metering that's been recently done as we continue to push for. And what's interesting though, is again, what you're, you, you, we, the legislature passes things to incentivize, right, less grass and especially in your front yard, more zero scape and other things. And then you have still other communities, uh, that have said, no, we don't want, you know, basically you have to have grass still in your front yard. And so the legislature's got to come in even a little bit harder and say, guys, you can't mandate they have grass, you know. So you have different developments that would rather not do that, but you had a city saying you have to. And so again, it's this kind of this, unfortunately, it does, it takes time and not every, you know, city has the same issues and, and moves at the same pace. And so what you're seeing is, is I don't see the focus on water changing. And as they continue, they've done a lot of low hanging fruit. And now, you know, decisions will get tougher and tougher, but we're getting to a point now where, you know, that's going to be, it's going to start to hurt us economically in through our development is when large companies want to roll, come into town. And if, if they use hardly any water at this point, it's getting harder and harder. They've got to now start showing, you know, here's, here's how we're going to conserve this much to create the opportunity, because there's just, you know, everybody, you know, we're spoiled, right? We think you turn on the tap, water just shows up and we're fine. And it's like, that's, you know, and it's finally starting to get more in the, and if nothing else, you know, I, candidly, I hope it's, it's, you know, we, we have an okay winter and gets really good right after session, just because it's not bad to keep legislators especially kind of tuned in, you know, they, we get a really good winter and all of a sudden, everybody thinks, oh, we're out of a drought. And, and suddenly, you know, we start to, everybody wakes up to the fact as we've had a, you know, slower start. Now, wait, I guess, I guess last year was not the norm and, you know, still. And so it's going to take time, but I think, you know, you bring a good point. I'll inquire about that.
That goes with the discussion then. Um, I think in California, they've already started discussing the potential of using, um, water through wastewater.
Waste water.
Wastewater.
We could really use some help with reuse from the state.
And, and, and looking into, you, you, looking into that seriously as a state by using that on, um, areas where you have businesses and for your easements.
Drink wastewater in Los Angeles.
Not drinking. I'm, I'm sorry. I will stop right there.
Treated, treated water, you drink it in Los Angeles.
In San Diego and Los Angeles.
But I'm talking about using that on your lawns, on, you know, areas like that where it can possibly and maybe having a more serious discussion in that regard as a state.
Yeah.
Using it for watering your yards, you know, watering the golf courses, which we have hundreds here. No, I'm sorry, it's maybe not hundreds, but it sure feels like it. You know, those discussions, those are things that I think if, if the state is really concerned about it, and if we're trying to, um, look ahead, instead of putting so much emphasis on requiring individuals with their houses and their yards and so forth, or developers, and that maybe this would alleviate some of those issues, so.
And along those lines, I mean, we do have some reuse projects in the state. Um, the thing that gets complicated through use is there's obviously water rights attributed to those. And what, the other thing that's interesting is at times, for instance, in the Great Salt Lake Basin, the, the state came in and has kind of basically said, we're not doing reuse anymore because the problem is that those flows and stuff end up in the Great Salt Lake. And so if, if suddenly, if you get, you know, a major city down along the Wasatch Front that starts reusing everything, so it's not making it into the wastewater, which makes its way into the Great Salt Lake, suddenly you're exacerbating a problem that isn't, you know, and so it gets complicated. One of the big things the state has done that, because keep in mind, while we as individuals use water, we certainly do, it's still, the state is largely agriculture. That is where the lion's share of our water is used. Now, they're, the state have put hundreds of millions of dollars now into, um, subsurface drip irrigation and other water wise types, so that we can now suddenly take where, you know, and reduce the amount per acre foot of water that's needed for, uh, to, to do a farm. And they can make the crops be more efficient through direct fertilizing and everything else and using less water. So again, the, the, the state is looking at all those types of things to try and kind of do, you know, everything to try and, and, and recognize we still live, obviously, in a desert and doing those things. But that's honestly, where I think our biggest bank for the buck will be is if we can make, especially agriculture be more, there's a lot more water that they're utilizing that can be then utilized other places. And if they're not having to use all of their water, that ends up in Great Salt Lake as well as other storage facilities a- along the system.
One thing, if you could just look into it based on the, her comment of the reuse, when we looked into it at the sewer district, it was so astronomical to have to purchase the water rights from the cities that we serve in the sewer district to then be able to, you know, provide that reuse back to them as well as building the infrastructure. And I was really hoping the state legislature could figure out how we wouldn't have to purchase the water rights, but we could lease them for a nominal amount because it's coming right back to those entities, if that makes sense. We're not in the spot of, um, keeping it out of the Great Salt Lake because of gravity and our geography, yeah, our, our location. So it would all go down, right? And hopefully eventually get back to the Great Salt Lake. So maybe if the state legislature could look into something like that, I think that would be a really great step forward. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you guys for that opportunity.
Anything else you want to give to him that he can talk about at the state legislature? Matt, anything else? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. We'll see you again later this year. All right, everyone. Now, we appreciate the patience. So Dina, Mr. Teal, Mr., sorry, let's see, I've got your names here. Mr. Loser, Lo- Loser and Mr. Howes, if you're still here. Okay. It, we're now to our action item on ordinance 2024 dash 01, the Highlands Master Development Agreement Amendment. And Dina, I'll turn it back to you. And if you want to come forward, you can, but, um, you know, we discussed it before.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the Highlands and D.R. Horton are asking for a modification to the master development agreement to address some of the required zoning elements of the North Village Overlay Zone. They are requesting the city consider permitting 10 changes to their existing master development agreement related to design, street, facade and topography. Staff has continued to work with the Highlands Development Group and their amendment, the topography has created some challenges, um, which are necessitating the MDA amendment. The, uh, the amendment requests are down to 10 from their original 13 requests. They are providing three different housing products, single family detached, townhomes and stacked flats, and they've reduced the overall number of approved housing units in this portion of the master plan, um, from their original concept approval. Staff has reviewed their request and find them reasonable. And the changes that are being proposed to the MDA address the unique topography challenges and provide design elements to meet the intent of the required zoning design elements of NBS. And with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions, any comments, any further, just go ahead, Mike.
So I've read through this extensively. Here's my thoughts. Um, it's clear to me that the Highlands design team has thoroughly been the guinea pig for going through our NBS code and spent, um, a lot of time working through grading and layout and drainage and the park system. Um, Tony, is there anything besides your private street comment that's, that planning staff has a concern with? There's anything that planning commission had a concern with that we should know or?
That's, I know that planning gets the reputation of being the aesthetics police, but for me, that is the biggest issue. It's already integrated into the plans, so I'm comfortable with what they've proposed. Um, I, I guess in your motion, uh, you know, recall that you did have, let's see where.
I mentioned garage door windows. You mentioned private streets for the townhome, uh, no, private, green garage doors variation. You mentioned private streets in the, in the narrow lot, single family detached neighborhood.
Yep. And then garage door variation was another one, um, for material color, glass, trim, um, porch requirement. I don't know if I followed exactly what that, where, where you were on that, Aaron.
I think it was just a question and they clarified that there, there is a minimum.
Okay. And then I, I think snow storage, we can deal with another time. And then I know, Heidi, I think, I think we addressed the parking. I, I know, I think that was more of a question that you had. So, so windows, oh, and connectivity from the street to the building.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Connecting sidewalks. So I think most, if probably not all of these are reasonable. I think it's, I think this is probably a better way to do it than to try and open up the NBS and, and maybe at some point, we're going to do that and we can add this list. But I, is there any, I'm wondering, counsel, is there anything that you have, is there any specific, I don't want to go through this line by line, but is there anything in here in these 10 items that are, we should specifically discuss? It's a, it's still an issue.
I was ready to make a motion.
I've always asked for internal and external connectivity to trails and sidewalks. So we definitely want that, right? Especially for entrances, for goodness sakes. If we've missed that for whatever reason, we've got to have that.
Is there a code? I, I just not sure we've, in, in some of the current things that's been done. So, uh.
We're keeping all of the parks, the open space, the amenities, the stormwater management.
We're not changing any engineering standards.
Right. Okay. And you talked about windows on front doors though, too.
Yeah. So I'm going to make a motion.
Do we? The windows on the front doors, is that something you got?
I don't think front doors need windows, personally.
You brought it up.
No, that was the garage doors.
Okay, sorry.
Some people don't want a window in their front door. So I'm going to, I move that we adopt ordinance 2024 dash 01 as presented tonight and as listed in our, with the conditions, conclusions and findings in our packet with the addition of a couple items. One, we've agreed that, uh, garage doors in single family detached homes should have windows. Uh, the garage doors should be varying styles and interest, um, architectural stance, styles. I, I don't think we need to do materials. I think wood's kind of a bad product. Um, in the single family detached, uh, small lot subdivision, they should be private streets. Uh, we want connectivity, especially in the, I'm talking really in the townhome product, connectivity of the sidewalks that access the fronts of those buildings need to connect to the street. What was it? Oh, I think I got them. So that, all right. So that's my motion.
I second the motion.
Any other counsel questions, comments, discussion?
So I, I just want to understand, we're not discussing as far as any concerns we might have with the aesthetics of each of the buildings or anything like that. This is strictly about just changing a couple of, I guess we want to say tweaking and, and making sure that we're adding the questions and the concerns that we've had already presented from the council.
On the snot garages?
Yes, on the snot garages. Yep, those. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. We are ready for the vote, starting on this side.
Yes.
Oh, that's right.
Yes.
Abstaining. Thank you. And this is, this is, this is great for me, you guys, for me to say yes. So, yes.
Yes.
Okay. That passes four to zero with one abstention for the conflict of interest that was disclosed earlier. All right. Thank you, gentlemen, for staying. We are now going on to the third agenda item in the action items, and that would be the agreements for the tea hanger development at the Heber Valley Airport. And I do not see Steve on line.
Steve is on by phone, so he's going to just go through phone.
Okay. Steve, can you come off mute and, so we can hear you? Steve, we still can't hear you, please. Can you text him to make sure he's, he knows it's his turn?
He says he's speaking.
Uh, Steve, you might need to try again. Can we make sure that, can we unmute him, Trina or Tony? Steve, you might need to call back in again, please. Just see if you can get in. I think he's caller 03.
Yes. He says you'll call back in.
Thank you. Um, for our new council member, Steve Ossett is part of our airport attorneys out of Denver and Washington DC. And, uh, they have worked extensively, um, on the airport master plan and litigation. And so this was one of the things that has been waiting for how many years now, right, to try to get done. And tell me your name again, sir.
Jeff.
Jeff Peterson. That's right. That's right. You came with the original idea and now you're still here. That's right. That's right. And will you bring that microphone a little closer to yourself?
That better?
Um, we could start with Mr. Peterson and let Steve come in if that's okay. So just, Trina or I'll, I'll watch because there's some joining going on. Uh, I don't know if...
Can you hear me now?
Yes, Steve. Yes. Why don't we let Steve start it, please? So Steve Ossett, thank you very much. We have some new council members that you'll be meeting and working with. Uh, one of them is Sid Olstergaard, another is Aaron Cheatwood, and then Mike Johnston was also reelected. So, um, glad that you can get to know them and work with them. Um, Steve, why don't you go ahead with your presentation? And Mr. Peterson's also here if you want to have him answer anything.
Great. Uh, thank you, Mayor, and, uh, good evening, counsel. I'm looking forward to working, uh, with the new members of the council. Um, so I, I'm here tonight to discuss, um, the agreements for a tea hanger development at the airport. And, and let me give you just a little bit of background, particularly with some of the newer council members, although I think that this project may actually predate even some of the, the recently outgoing council members. And because this, this requires us to go all the way back to March of 2020, um, almost four years ago, um, where Mr. Peterson had presented a proposal to the airport advisory board for the construction of a tea hanger complex at the northeast corner of the airport. Um, that worked its way through the AAV and ultimately to the city council. Um, and the city council requested that we assist the city in developing, um, a, uh, a lease document, um, that would facilitate that tea hanger construction. Um, unfortunately, back in 2020, Unfortunately, back in 2020, we were just beginning the process of preparing the airport master plan. And the FAA had informed us at that time that they had concerns with us entering into a agreement with Mr. Peterson, his organization, for the development of a tea hanger complex when we weren't sure what the master plan alternatives were going to look like. We didn't want to prejudice the the master planning effort. So the FAA said, look, if you're going to do this, you need to ensure that there is provisions in the agreement that allows you to terminate the tea hanger lease. If it turns out that that land is needed for some other airport purpose. Quite understandably, that was alarming to Mr. Peterson. It was difficult to kind of plan for this type of a development if the ground lease could be pulled out from underneath you. So what we did back in late 2020, early 21 is we negotiated the ground lease as far as we could and converted it into an option agreement. We essentially parked the terms of the master lease and said, once the master plan is done, as long as the FAA approved airport layout plan shows that this area of the airport is compatible with the tea hanger development, then the Mr. Peterson, the developer, will have the opportunity to deliver an intent to enter into the lease agreement. We would conclude negotiations on just a handful of issues that hadn't yet been resolved by the time the option agreement was entered into in 2021. And then we'd be off to the races on the tea hanger development. So as the council knows, the FAA did approve the ALP at the conclusion of the master planning process in October of last year. And the ALP did show that that area of the airport was compatible with teenager development. So Mr. Peterson delivered the required notice of intent to enter into a lease. And over the past couple of months, we have been working with him and his council, Mr. Rich Matheson, on finalizing these agreements. So what you have in the agenda materials are three different documents. The first is the airport master lease agreement. And this is the agreement that was essentially negotiated and approved by the council back in 2021 because it was attached to the option agreement. Very, very few changes have been made to that agreement from what it looked like back in 2021 when it was in front of the council. Really just some tweaks to make sure that they conform with the other two documents, which we'll talk about in just a moment. And to update the rental rate. At the time, back in 2021, it was something like, you know, 30 cents per square foot. And now the rental rate, the current aeronautical market rental rate is point four one nine three, if I'm not mistaken, per square foot. Other than that, master lease agreement is essentially as it was. The other two documents are first, the covenants, conditions and restrictions, the CCNRs. So this is, if you know, for those of you that have dabbled in the world of condominiums, that acronym will sound familiar. It is essentially the bylaws and the internal rules of the entity that will be formed and called the Heber Hanger Owners Association, which will be the tenant, the city's tenant under the ground lease. And so the CCNRs define the relationship between the Heber Hanger Owners Association, which will own this tea hanger complex, and each of the individual hanger unit owners. This is not like the hanger row complex where, you know, there is kind of one large facility that was constructed and then it's individually leased out to individual tenants. This is a leasehold condominium complex. So the the tea hanger complex will be owned by the Heber Hanger Owners Association. But then each individual tea hanger unit will be a condominium interest that will be purchased by individual hanger owners. And those CCNRs, again, just define the relationship between the individual condominium owners and the condominium association, the HHOA. The the last agreement in the agenda materials is the compliance agreement. And this is an agreement that is directly between the city and each of those individual hanger unit owners. And the reason, that's a little unusual in the condominium context. But the reason why there's this compliance agreement is because we felt it was important that each hanger owner individually acknowledge that they are buying a leasehold condominium interest that is ultimately subject to the the HOA's master lease agreement with the city. So the compliance agreement requires the ten, the hanger unit owners to acknowledge the existence of the master lease, acknowledge that the, their condominium interest is in all respects subject to the master lease. And it also provides the city with certain rights vis a vis those hanger unit owners. So even though under Utah law, the Hanger Association cannot withhold approval to sublease hanger unit owners, the city has the ability to require that type of permission as it does with all of the other hangers on the airport. And so the compliance agreement imposes those kinds of obligations directly on the hanger unit owners. It also provides the city with direct remedies against the hanger unit owners if there are violations of the rules and regulations. Although the city is also able to proceed directly against the Heber Hanger Owners Association for any violation of the master lease, the compliance agreement gives it the ability to proceed directly against the hanger unit owner that's responsible if if it's appropriate under the circumstances. So those, those are the, those are the three agreements. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. I know some of those agreements are quite lengthy and complex. But that's, that's where we are. And I think that's, that's about, that's about it for my, at least my initial report. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
That's a lot of work that you have put into these documents, quite a bit, and I appreciate that they are aligned and that they do cover that the condominium HOA will follow the airport rules and regulations, the city code, and hold us harmless, right? That's all very well done. Steve, thank you very much, you and Mr. Peterson. Okay, counsel, I'm going to turn it over to you first for any questions or comments, and I have just a couple of questions when you're done. Anybody want to start?
I just have one question. Why non-reversionary versus reversionary?
Well, the idea behind it, it's quite a long lease anyway, but the idea is it's really the best of the best when it comes to the city. When we looked at how to design the project that we felt was the ultimate long-term use for the city. If I look at airports that have reversionary leases, what happens is as the hangers age, those that lease them typically just let them go. And if you go look at hangers that are reversionary, they're in much poorer condition. They are not maintained and they are, they're not as good of investments long term. Reversionary, you're putting it back on the open market. So an individual, when they have the opportunity to lease that for a long term, what happens, they have to maintain it. It's much like a house. If you own the house, you take better care of the house. If you rent it, when you're done, you just kind of kick it to the curb and it. It, it, and in the end, what the city gets is the city gets a, a set lease amount, which is current market rate, which I think Steve said it's about four, just shy of 41 or 42 cents. When we started this process, I think it was 30 cents, so it's gone up substantially. But every year that gets adjusted by a CPI adjustment. So the city gets the best of the best. It doesn't have to maintain them. It doesn't have to worry about the compliance. That's all handled through the HHOA. So the idea behind it is such a significant investment to put it in that that's the way we designed it upfront, is it will help keep better value for the long-term user.
I guess my other other question was, is there some sort of transaction fee that goes to the city when it's sold between owners?
There is. There's a 3% transaction fee. So on rough estimations, you know, the city will bring in roughly 27,000 a year in lease based on the ground that's being leased at the airport. And some of this, because of the new configuration, it's spaced that the airport wasn't getting any revenue on. So there's 27,000 in the first year, I estimate there'll be over $100,000 in transfer fees that will come into the city. And then every time those hangers transfer, there's also a 3% fee. And then when the, if the the lease has an option agreement to to renew, at that point, it's a 5% fee to the city.
Okay.
Sorry, a 5% fee the city receives, not that the city would pay. So what you get is you get a facility that's maintained. The compliance is enforced by the HHOA. If it's not, the city actually has the right to to pull the, to pull the lease. So, you know, Steve's done a wonderful job. I work with Steve now for four years. And we have looked at all different airports, trying to figure out what is the best way to do this for long term for the city. And that's, that's really what we've tried to do. I don't think I could design this in a much better scenario for the city.
Yeah, do you mind if I talk to the council just for a minute about the benefits? I mean, right now, we're dealing with hangers that aren't even being used for airplanes. The hanger row, hanger row hangers, many times will have just one airplane and then an RV or a boat or other storage, which is really inexpensive storage. The tea hanger makes that impossible. You can fit an airplane in there. You can't fit anything else, really. I mean, you, maybe you could pull a car under a wing or something, but it'd be really tight. So it makes it, the hangar space, what it is needed for is for an airplane. And I'm sure there'd be something in the rules where you'd have to have an airplane in there. You couldn't buy it for storage.
Steve did a great job representing the city. It's for aeronautical purposes.
Yeah.
You know, somebody can, you know, if they're going to drive their car to the airport, they could park it inside with the airplane where they're there. If they're going to fly someplace, they can pull it inside. They're not designed to be storage garages for anything but aviation. You know, if somebody parks a motorcycle in there, you know, I, there's just not that much room in.
As long as there's an airplane.
Exactly. And in theory, it's not, you can't hang, it's some airports that sounds silly, but they will hang an ultralight airplane from the ceiling and they'll park cars underneath it. Steve has done an amazing job of trying to really focus this in and make us an outstanding long-term project.
I think it's a really good, really good amenity for the airport, so.
Long time in coming. Any other questions? Okay, can we look at two things, please? In the bylaws, Steve, of the HOA, section 1101, where it says dissolution. And again, this is an 80-year lease potentially you're looking at here with 40 years and then an additional 40 years. And so the dissolution is if two-thirds, right, two-thirds of all of the condominium owners want to give it up. Then it's saying, the assets of the association shall be dedicated to an appropriate public agency. Obviously, the city can be a public agency. Is there any others out there? Why is it an appropriate public agency? Can it be sold? You see what I mean? I'm not sure why we're using that word, that language, Steve, an appropriate public agency. I'm thinking that the city obviously would be interested, but who else could be or would be? And why is, why are we using those words?
That's a great question, Mayor. And and if Jeff knows the answer, I will defer to him. But I'll tell you that my suspicion is that a number of these provisions in the CCNRs and the bylaws are prescribed by the Utah Condominium Act. And this may be one of those examples where the Utah Condominium Act just prescribes that language. And again, if Jeff, if Jeff could confirm that, or perhaps if Jeremy Cook is there and he's familiar, he may have some insight as well. And I can certainly go back and explore whether we, whether we are able to modify that. I certainly agree with you. I can't think of any other public agency more appropriate than the city in that example.
It makes me wonder, you could obviously sell it, Mr. Peterson, to someone else that would want to run the HOA. I'm assuming, you know, some, somebody in the HOA could want to take it over and continue it. But that wording is just weird because it's like, well, what other public agency would take it over?
Yeah, and I, I agree with Steve that the condominium association, we've kind of adapted this to make it work. So we found a lot of points where it just doesn't quite mesh as well. But when you think of the HHOA, what that will consist of is 16 owners. And there won't be one of those 16 owners that's going to want to just give away that hanger. And so the idea behind it is if if we're not managing it correctly, if we're not following the minimum standards, we're not following the compliance agreements, it reverts to the city. So I can't even imagine any other entity that it could be sold to.
Well, that's, that's why I worry when it says public agency, right? We wouldn't think that state UDOT would come in with their aeronautics division. We wouldn't think the county would take it over. Why? You know, it would be an opportunity for the city.
Yeah, well, and that's if you look through the agreement and the compliance, it would go to the city.
Is it possible to put in parentheses, such as the city? You know, so we're not changing the condominium language, but we're putting in parentheses, such as the city, just so everybody knows that that's our, that's that first right of refusal, perhaps, that the city could have? Could we put in a first right of refusal there, Steve and Jeremy and Mr. Peterson? What do you think?
I wouldn't have an issue with it. What I would suggest is that Steve gets with Rich Matheson, who's our attorney, who is, who does a lot of HOA work, and those two would be the master minds. And if there's no prohibition to do that within the condominium act, I have no problem with that. Because there's no intention of going anywhere else to the city if, if, if something happened.
Okay, to me, it was just weird wording when I was hoping it could be a benefit to the city if and when that time came.
Yeah, I agree with you. So if Steve and Rich can work through that, I don't see that as an issue at all.
Okay.
If you wanted to make a.
So that that could be maybe looked into if the council wants to make a motion, you know, to look into the language. And if the council's interested, to give a first right of refusal to the city on the dissolution clause, which is section 11.01 in the bylaws of the HHOA.
It may even be, Mayor, that the master lease agreement provisions would would effectively get you to the same place because the master lease won't allow an assignment of the lease to another public agency without the council's approval. So we might be there anyway, but but we can certainly explore whether we can make that more direct in in the section that you pointed out.
And if it's already taken care of there in the master lease and I missed that, then we could just refer to it, right? We could just put that reference, you know, see, master lease clause, da, 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 to, you know, deal with situations like that. It's kind of funny. We don't want it to happen. You don't want it to happen, but if it were to happen, we just want to make sure it's very clear as to what the steps are. That's all.
It's a great comment. I don't have an issue with that at all.
Well, you know, I don't know if you'll like the next one. Let's try. So Steve and everyone, if you can go to the map, that's on page 273 of the whole packet, but page 55 of right after this, what we just talked about, right after the bylaws, there's a map there of the land that you're wanting to lease. And I'm concerned about that road, the road that goes into the other U-hangers as well as to the T-hangers. Because if you're going to lease that road, then how will the other hangers that are already there, the U-shaped hangers, will they be able to use the road that's leased to you? Or will they have to drive around on the taxiways and such?
No, we actually, I can't see the map you're referring to, but I, again, I think I know this well enough.
Yeah, page 55, Tony, it's after the bylaws or it's on page 273. There you go. It's the road area, right, right there.
So I think, I believe what you're referring to is. So I think, I believe what you're referring to is the area on the, it's hard for me to.
The south, the south side of the whole area.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, right, just above, I just saw your pointer there, but yeah, right there, where that note, you're talking about the road there?
No, not that road. Where the, where the territory, the territory that's being leased to them that goes into the U-shaped hanger, hangers area. It's way over there. There you go. Yes, this, that road. So if, are you going to gate the road? But you'll be maintaining the road, I assume, once it's leased to you. So could you explain about that road?
That. So what happens is we will build, we will connect the existing road in to, let's call it the leasehold area that's within the kind of the strange-looking triangle.
Middle part.
There. And then we will be building the road going along that twenty-four-foot easement is what it shows there. And then we'll be connecting it back over to the other hangers on the right side because we have to bring the taxiway up.
On the north side, you're going to bring the taxiway into your area?
Yeah, both sides, we have to bring the taxiway up.
Okay, so you're going to have taxiways on both sides of your T-hangers, right?
We actually, we're the ones putting that in.
The road, I should say, the taxiway on both sides. And so on this road entrance on the south side, it's not going to be gated. And then any one of the U-hangers, as well as your T-hangers, the new development can access that road still?
Yes, but both sides will be there. And then on that little funny triangular shape, that will be for some additional parking. So we're still leasing that area as well. We looked at it and said, okay, what space do we need to provide adequate parking? And so we asked for a little bit of additional triangle there. And so the, once the building is in that, the center of that big rectangle, the road will curve to the right, right alongside the storage units, and then continue down the taxiway. They can access their existing hangers.
Okay. I didn't know, you know, if you were, since you were taking over the roadway, which I want the other owners, hanger owners that are there next to you to still be able to access if possible. But like I say, you're going to be redoing the road, redoing the taxiway. I didn't know if you were planning to charge people for that access.
No, we're not. We're, one thing that's unique, and if you don't mind me explaining, your, your city engineer with regard to the airport is our Dura. Originally, we wanted to use our Dura to help and so we could dovetail the project and use one engineer. Because of litigation issues, we couldn't do that at first. But what we did is later on, we got approval to do that. So our Dura has the airport side of their engineering firm, and they have a civil side on the other. So you have Jeremy on one side of an office and you have Scott Bolton on the other. So what's really neat is they're able to work together. So when I say, I need to make sure I've got room for that road to go along the side, they can walk across to Jeremy and say, okay, we want to connect those two. Jeremy says, okay, you're going to rebuild my taxiway anyway. Let's connect that road right alongside the fence. And so we're already doing that.
I really appreciate you saying this because I want that kind of access, right? For the existing hangers that aren't in your T-hanger. It's just that I don't, Steve, this is to you now, Steve Oset. I just don't see it anywhere in these documents that they could not charge or gate that access because it will be their leasehold. So what do you think about that, Steve? Is that something we need to be concerned about in this language? Where Mr. Peterson is saying, we're, we're building taxiways, we're extending roads, but then they'll only be charging the sixteen condominium owners. And yet, the rest of the public can also use it.
Did I answer that question?
Sure.
So the, imagine if a T-hanger has to have access on both sides, airplanes are going to be backed in kind of, you know, this way, essentially, right? And so they're kind of tail to tail to tail. So we need the access as much as the other hanger owners need the access. So there's really no opportunity to fence or gate anything off because we're sharing the same taxiway to get to the runway. So that there won't be any fencing contemplated, the, the fencing that, the fencing and the gate structure that's there. I'm going to call it the bottom right-hand side near the tree. That all stays the same. We just have to complete the asphalt area to make it all connect with the structure.
Maybe I should ask one more, please. So you're not going to be using that existing road. You're changing it closer to the storage units. And then you're building more of the T-hangers closer to that south end of your leasehold. Is that right?
The leasehold interest is everything within that dash line. And then imagine that the structure is going to be about sixty feet wide, about four hundred, roughly four hundred feet long.
Okay.
Coming down the center, but we still have about thirty-six or thirty-seven feet of asphalt, or what we call an apron, between the front of the hanger and the taxiway. We have to build that. We have to build the taxiway where there is no taxiway now. So we have to put all that infrastructure and we have to pay for it. And then we, we give it right back to you. So it's, we're going to improve it. You don't have to get a federal grant for it. We're paying for it.
Okay, okay, that makes a lot more sense now. It's just.
That next one's going to make me nervous, but we've already thought about that.
Okay, I appreciate that. I just was very concerned, right, that the public access was there for everyone on the airport to use. Thank you. Okay.
With that, Mayor, there might be an access easement written up that can be used. So something that's overlaid on that, saying that whoever, general public can access. I don't know if that's something that you could put in your.
You could. I'm not leasing that ground.
And I wanted.
Oh, I see. Go ahead.
Just, just to note, we, we have some language in the master lease agreement that requires the HHOA to grant all users of the airport the right of transit across the ramp areas for the passage of aircraft. So that's in there currently in Article Six. But I think that we can, we can also, you know, include in, in that same area, make it clear that that applies also to motor vehicles transiting adjacent property. Is that something that Mr. Peterson would be open to?
Yeah, I, we'd really appreciate that because ramp is one thing, right? But then having that access for the other types of vehicles, that would be fantastic. Now, do you want to refer again to where that's at, Steve, just so that Mr. Peterson can see where that could be added, please?
Yeah, it's at the very end of Article Six of the master lease agreement.
Okay.
Second, second to last sentence.
You can find that, Tony, please. Appreciate that. I think it's the first exhibit. I think that's where I'm going.
Just so I'm clear, what you guys are looking for is you want to make sure that it, there's, we can't block that off. That's what you're looking for.
Yeah.
That's not a problem. We have no intention and we're happy to write that.
And for me, I would think that if there is a potential in the future of the HOA being sold, like the mayor has said, then, you know, we want to make sure that that's something that's in the contract even going forward to anyone who could possibly, you know, from, for a new owner.
Sure.
I think that's important.
And that, and that's a great point. I'm happy to do that. But just remember that we, we're only getting the leasehold interest. So that road and that taxiway is outside of that. We couldn't block it off if we wanted to. In fact, there are strict rules about what can be taxied, what you can park within that taxi lane. So that, that's really common area. If it were a subdivision, it would be common area that anybody has access to. But we're happy to do that.
I'd like to make a motion.
I wouldn't ask that unless we'd had some issues on that in the past, right?
Not a problem.
At the airport.
After four years, it's given us a lot of time to think through every conceivable thing. And we've worked with Travis. I bet I've met with Travis fifty times, trying to say, okay, if you could change anything, what would you do? How would you write it? And we, we think we've done a really good job with a, with a good team.
So just one more second. I'm so sorry to make you wait, Scott, on that, but Steve, you had said it was in the master lease agreement clause six, as I recall. Is there a way you can pinpoint that down for us? I can't find it. I'm sorry.
Tony, you're in the CCNRs. Can you go two down? No, 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 the attachments.
There you go. See six in, as the master tracking schedule? Sorry?
It's, if you've got the, the lease up, it is on page seven of the lease document, which is the second to last sentence of Article Six.
Okay, we want to make sure you can, you know it, Mr. Peterson. So there we go. Lease grants users of the airport the right to use the ramp areas. And then could we just add in there an additional taxiways, roadways, just something like that, just adding?
Adjacent taxiway. I don't think it needs to be changed.
Okay, from time to time. Well, it's not just aircraft, though. It could also be for their, their vehicles.
I'd still like to make a motion.
Anytime you're ready. We just want you to be able to know where we're referring to on those changes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this lease and project as presented.
Okay.
Second that.
Okay, so that means we would really appreciate your verbal agreement, right, to continue to leave that open for other vehicular traffic as according to airport rules.
I'd actually propose we, we do it as presented. That's my motion.
He's just, I'm just reminding him of his verbal agreement.
I'll, I'll give you a verbal agreement that, that that is open for vehicular access. It will always be open for vehicular.
Otherwise, the complaints will pile up. Okay. Mike, did you second that?
I did, yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, any further discussion? All right, we'll start on this end, please.
Yes.
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 Okay, that motion passes five to zero. You're, you're almost over the finish line. Now you've got to get a building permit.
Great, we're excited.
Yes, thank you very much. It's been a long time coming. Okay.
All your hard work on this.
We appreciate yours. Thank you, Steve. Have a good night.
Thank you, Council. Have a good night.
All right, we are now ready to move on to agenda item number four, which is an ITN, an invitation to negotiate for the sale of a parcel in the Commerce Park or the Industrial Park, as we also call it, that the city owns. And Mark Smithley, we're going to turn that over to you, please. This is a parcel that's located at twenty-two ninety-five South, three ninety West, south of the airport. It's one point five acres. And Mark, go ahead with your presentation, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate this. This is very simple and a thirty-thousand-foot level for tonight. This is simply brought before the council as a result of an invitation to negotiate that Matt Brower and myself initiated back in October regarding the possibility of selling a city-owned industrial zone commercial area about an acre and a half at twenty-two ninety-five South, three ninety West. And so all that is really being asked tonight is to, having reviewed, or if you want to take time more to review, two responses that we got from that invitation to indicate to staff whether you want us to go forward and negotiate with either one or both of these responses. And whether the timing is good, whether the council wants to sell that piece of property, if there are other things that you want us to consider, and really just to give us the green light or the thumbs up to begin negotiations.
Do you want to show the chart?
Yes, Tony, can you go to the?
Spreadsheet. There we go.
That's the right one.
Do you want to briefly explain that at all, or do you want the council to just dive in?
I can just kind of show you what I saw, and then if there's other questions that you have, Mayor.
I have a question. Where, where is this located? I'm just.
It is, it is kind of close down if you're heading towards the, the airport. It's in the industrial area of Heber City. There's one lot left in this area that, that there's about an acre and a half just to the north that has been developed. But this is kind of the last little acre and a half that the city has to develop. Right. You know where the kilt, you know where the airport is, and then there's that kilt where you can go buy Scottish and Irish kilts. It's. That's my favorite store.
The really big long shop. It's on the west side of that.
Okay, I'm sorry. I just need to have it in my brain. Forgive me. No, no, I just meant where, where's this?
Although I haven't identified what the tartan.
This might help you on the screen.
Yes, that's what I wanted to see was more of a.
Thank you, Tony. Yvonne, does that help?
It is.
So some of, I guess, the highlights of the, of the, the two responses are. One proposes, and again, we're not locked in with regard to these. This is just simply giving us an opportunity of where we wanted to start negotiating. But the anticipation is that if you give the green light, then we start with a blank sheet and kind of go from there and work with our criteria. Utah Peaks came in indicating that they would anticipate or start negotiations for the purchase of seven hundred thousand dollars. Stewart and Company came in with an initial proposal of five hundred and sixty-two thousand. It is interesting to note that we, about three years ago, made kind of an initial probing as well. And the responses that came back for those was about half of the amounts, two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars. So they've gone up in value just waiting that time. Yep. It's interesting that Utah Peaks, and this is on the spreadsheet, they estimate that they would invest about three million dollars. And it's interesting that they say they would anticipate a building comparable to the existing building to the north. So there is an, almost an identical building to the north because the square footage would be about the same, twenty thousand square feet. So you could go, we kind of really know what they're anticipating visually. And they would stack it. They, they would have two floors and four units, I would think, or four individual suites. And it's interesting that they would anticipate after everything was done, about forty employees that it would, it would bring in. The other interesting part of it was that they have also been key, or they indicate that they've attracted, oh, go ahead.
You were talking about Stewart, right?
Utah Peaks. I'm going down Utah Peaks.
Never mind. I'm on the wrong page.
Okay, that they've kind of helped to bring in two kind of businesses that were, that kind of caught my attention. The AVI Sport kilts and Yvonne, that was the one I was talking about, that has just been a wonderful business. Right, and then Fieldcraft Survival. They also, and so that was, those were kind of important. If you go over to Stewart and Company, and Erin, you maybe had some questions with regard to that. Their, their total investment, including the land, would be about four point three million dollars. They anticipate a little bigger building, thirty-five thousand square feet. And they indicate that on their jobs, and I tried to call to get some clarification, two hundred and ten jobs relative to the property. As I went back and looked at their response, they seem to anticipate that based upon their square footage, they could generate that many employees. I would need a little more clarification. That seems high to me. And you may be talking about construction. That's how many employees that, or that's how many people he could employ to and construct it. But I don't think so because as I read his, as I read their paragraph, it talks about after this building is done, pursuant to the square footage, we think we could have those, those employees. They also, Stewart and Company would like to, again, we would negotiate openly at the beginning, a sixty-day due diligence period. Wants to talk about a phase one environmental. If you compare that with Utah Peaks, there's, there's no such. environmental. If you compare that with Utah Peaks, there's no such request for the 60 days. Utah Peaks also indicates that they would be willing to put down a $50,000 non-returnable earnest money. And it seems like they kind of know what they want. They've been, they've built one right next to it, and just kind of come in with, with a little, a good idea of what their estimates would be. I didn't want to, so I'm leaving it to you to review that. Those were kind of the high points that I have. And again, we're just at this point at a 30,000-foot level to get direction from the Council as to whether you want us to, because you have all the options open. You can say yes to one, yes to both, negotiate with both, negotiate with one, reject them, put another ITN out. Aaron?
Yeah, and thank you for the time this morning clarifying with the questions that I had. So there's two reasons I had the question. The first is that, and I just want to make sure I'm really clear, in the staff report, under Utah Peaks, so on page 319 of the combined document, the staff report says, under Utah Peaks, 210 jobs. But I don't see that in the Utah Peaks section. I see the 40.
Yeah, I may have, I may have switched those, Aaron.
I want to make sure they weren't both claiming the same thing.
No, they were not. It's very clear. That's why that, why this breakout was helpful.
Okay, and then the other clarification, and perhaps it's not known now, but I read, I read page 328 of Utah Peaks Capital Investment Section, so the second section down, when they say, construct similar to industrial building located directly to the north, they built the other building. So they know exactly what's needed.
That's my understanding.
Because the building directly north is their building.
And the square footage would be almost identical.
When they say the approximation of 40, 40 jobs, 40, plus or minus 40 parking stalls, the reason I wanted to bring that up is, we all want to talk about job growth, sure, but the 210 number seems to be just not, it doesn't seem to be based in reality, given that the person that's saying that, 40, built the other building on a similar-sized property. So I think it's important to note that because.
Including everyone building the building too.
That's right.
I think they're including everyone building.
It doesn't, yeah, if you read the language, I thought they were too, and I talked to Mark this morning, I read it again, they're actually saying, based on the types of trades they expect and the average people per square feet, but that's really wishful thinking, and I just wanted to bring that up to the Council, that as much as we'd love to bring in that many more jobs, I don't think that's actually realistic in what they're talking about, unless they've got some crazy plan for what that building could be. I don't get it.
Three shifts a day.
Tony, you say, go, you know, Mark, go and talk more about it and come back, and let's talk to both of them, or just say, we want to focus on one and start negotiating.
Do we know if Mr. Pavichik or Mr. Stewart is here?
They knew, when, they knew that we were going to be presenting today, particularly Mr. Pavichik, because I hadn't, oh, yes, he is here. Good.
Okay, well, thank you. I just wanted to make sure if there were any questions for you that you could answer. Okay, Mike, go ahead, and then I've got a couple of comments. Go ahead.
Number one, I do, I think we should move forward. I think this is the right time to do it. I want to, we've talked about the reasons to bring this cash in and have it available for other things that we want to do with real estate. I believe the Utah Peaks, Michael Havasik proposal is much more realistic. It's also the higher, much higher sales price and much easier close. And I like the fact that they've already done something here in Heber City, and it's been very successful, and it's good-looking, and I think it's realistic. Again, I agree with Aaron, 210 jobs is completely unrealistic on this parcel, unless they're really running some sort of manufacturing, three shifts a day, busing in people because they can't park there. So I just think this is a realistic proposal. It's also the highest value. I know there's a difference in proposed building value, which would come back to us in property tax, but I just calculated it. It's about $1,000 a year. It's a Heber City, not everybody, but, and that's nothing compared to the $140,000 difference in sales price. So I'm not willing to worry about the proper, the building value compared to the sales price. I think I would go with Utah Peaks and just move forward.
Me too.
That answers my question. So does Mr., does anybody have questions for Mr. Monzello? Any other questions for Mark Smidley? Matt, did you want to weigh in on this at all?
Other than, this is essentially an economic development deal as much as it is a real estate transaction deal. I would suspect, with your permission, we'd also have an agreement that would nail down these requirements of the capital investment, the employment, and those types of numbers as well, to make sure that you're truly getting what's proposed here. So again, this is more than simply a real estate deal. It's also an economic development deal.
But, but for the purpose of tonight, we're not talking.
Correct. I'm just painting the bigger picture.
Do we like even talking to either of them?
Correct.
So again, look at the criteria. Mark, you're leaving that up to us on the criteria. Mike Johnston has talked about it. So Council, the motion here is whether to proceed with one or both or not. Any motions, any other comments or questions? Go ahead, Yvonne.
I would like to make a motion that we proceed with Utah, Utah Peaks LLC. And am I doing need to do more than that?
And you struck staff to come back after negotiating an agreement?
And after negotiations to have staff come back with any additional information.
We will come back to the Council with whatever we negotiate, and if we have other questions, or you have.
And I think the Council's interested, just as you were saying, Matt, on tying down those details and those time commitments and deadlines. We know how bad the supply chain is, but hopefully with a building that's similar to what they have, you can work out those supply chain issues sooner, where we won't have to be waiting, as long as you've been waiting already, to, you know, make this ITN. Okay. Okay, anything else, Council? All right, let's take a vote on, oh, wait, was there a second?
So let me just clarify the motion. Thank you. Mayor, thank you for kind of articulating, bing, 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 those three. That's helpful. It's very clear. And Yvonne, your motion, I'm understanding then the motion is tentatively to go ahead and approach Utah Peaks and begin negotiations. Okay.
All right, well, all right, thank you. And we'll start with a vote on that end.
Aye.
Yes.
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 Okay, that passes five to zero. We'll look forward to that. Thank you very much. Okay, now we're ready for our last agenda item on the action items, and that's the Jordan L. Ridge Bond Agreement with Jeremy Cook, our city attorney presenting. Jeremy, you'll want to say what we've discussed before when you go ahead on that.
Sure. I just want to say I like it when it's the last item and it's only 910, so that's good news. So we kind of went through this a little bit last meeting, but I'll rehash what we talked about. So the purpose of this agreement is when developers come in, they record a subdivision plat. In order to record that subdivision plat, you either have to install all the public infrastructure associated with that plat, or you have to bond for that infrastructure to make sure that that infrastructure gets put in. And the purpose of that is to make sure that people aren't buying subdivision lots, get in there, and then they don't have water lines, sewer lines, roads, that sort of infrastructure. So because of the size of Jordan L. Ridge, they're recording plats very quickly. Every time they record one of those plats, they had to come in, they had to have a list of all the improvements that are going in there, a price matching all those improvements, a separate bond for all those improvements. And then as they start completing all those, typically what developers will do is come to the city and say, okay, we've completed this road or this water line. We want to reduce our bond by $50,000 or $200,000, whatever. So we'd have all these bonds outstanding within. They're constantly coming in and reducing them, which is a lot of administrative work for them, is a lot of administrative work for the city. So they came to us and proposed this agreement, which is basically to try to streamline this whole process. And the agreement would allow them to come in, they, it addresses two things, both the initial bond, which they had to place when they record the subdivision plat, if they haven't completed all the improvements, and then also the warranty bond, which goes into effect as soon as they've completed all the improvements. The city inspects all those improvements, it goes into warranty for a year. They had to post a 10% bond during that warranty period. So this agreement kind of streamlines that all. They're going to have one kind of master bond that will be over all their projects. The really big benefit to the city is, as part of this, in order to incentivize the city to do this, they won't request any partial releases of bonds. So they'll just come in with full releases of bonds. So instead of having to go through probably weekly on their project and do bond releases, we'll be able to basically hold their kind of master bond over that whole project, and until they complete that project, they'll go into warranty, they'll have a million-dollar warranty bond that will cover all their projects, plus $150,000 cash bond. The $150,000 cash bond, we can use it any time to complete little things, but we can also, there's a lot of ability in this agreement to force them to also complete those warranty items, so they're not in default of the agreement. So overall, we think it's beneficial to both of the parties. Again, it's kind of unique, given their, the size of their development and how quickly they're developing. But we, we think it will help the city, it will help Russ's department not having to review quite as many bond documents, and particularly not having to do all the releases. It should provide just as good security to the city. The warranty period, we're pretty, we're pretty happy with the amount that they're proposing for their warranty bond, and we don't think it really leaves the city at risk. The other thing, big thing about this project, of course, is it's a massive project. We're talking, you know, these early phases as they're developing. This isn't typically the time, I've been doing this for 20 years, the time that you see these as a pro, as an issue, is when you have developments that are 20 or 30 lot subdivisions, where they have a LLC that's a single asset entity, that once the development goes in, they sell the lots, and then that LLC dissolves and they're gone, and they just don't care. We have a lot of ability to force them to make sure that they're complying and getting the improvements in and warranting everything correctly, because they have so much development to go, that, you know, the last thing they want to do is be in default of their development agreement. So I think it's a good deal for the city. I think it's going to help the process. I think it's going to help the developer move forward more quickly and develop more quickly as well.
Okay, I have a question. I'm sorry, but is this the same group that is, is it the Marcello Group? Are they associated with the Jordan L.? Okay. My concern with all of this is that I am aware of a situation where they had already used our local Silver Hollow and used the building, used their staff, and so forth, and have yet to pay any of those individuals. The state has tried, has also gotten involved because the owner of the grill there has asked several times for payment. This was last year, or well, this summer, when this was done. So my concern is, is that if this is something that will benefit them and that property is getting sold, I'm not good with any of this language. This is all your language. It's not, it's not citizen language. It's not people language. I'm sorry. But I'm wanting to know if this is something that's benefiting them, where they're not making payments expeditiously and are holding back, and they have been requested, and not only through them, but through the state as well, and those payments still have yet to show and to come forward, and it's been more of a, you know, when are you going to do it? Are you going to do it? No, nothing, silence. So I'm just wondering if this is something that we've looked into? Are we careful in what we're dealing with? Because I don't want us as a city to allow this, to give this developer any leeway to continually skirt around payment or issues like that, and then leave us holding back in some way.
You said Marcello?
Yeah, Marcello. It's the Marcello Group.
This is the Jordan L. Ridge.
It's Jordan L. Ridge.
The same group, though. That's what I'm wondering. If they were, they were not associated with that, and so they were not.
There is a club. I know it's called Marcello, but.
No, it's Marcello.
Plus, that would have nothing to do with this contract and could be slanderous, so.
Well, I'm not trying to be slanderous, and I realize that, and that's why I'm asking, is this the same?
It's Mike, it's Mike Bradshaw. It's Jordan L. Ridge. I mean, they have their golf course development, which is part of Jordan L. Ridge. It's called.
But is that the same group that is going in to participate? I mean, are they part of that?
They call it Marcello.
They may have a land contract.
Adisus Marcella.
Marcello is not the developer, as I understand.
I know that, but that's what I'm wondering. I'm just saying, I don't want us to say yes to something where we're going to, you know, hand over, you know, what possibly.
Yeah, and maybe to answer your question, this isn't payments to the city. This is bonding. So they're just, so typically the way this works is they come in, due to the size of their development, state code allows us to take at least two forms of bonds. So we either had, typically one of those is cash. So you can come to the city and say, we have a million dollars' worth of infrastructure improvements that are going into this subdivision, and we're just going to give you a million dollars to hold until you get the improvements done. But we had to accept two. So the other most common are either letter of credit or surety agreement. So typically it'd be a surety company. So a surety company would come in, they'd say, okay, we're going to put up a surety bond. So they pay, surety company is basically an insurance policy. So the surety comes in and says, we will guarantee that if this developer doesn't put in all the infrastructure, we will put in all the infrastructure for them. That's what they'll do in this case, is they'll still issue a surety bond covering all their projects, but it was going to be one big surety bond that covers everything, instead of dividing it up into all these little tiny projects, which allows the city more flexibility and allows them, really, I mean, what they want is timing. What they want is every time that they come in, record a subdivision plat, they don't want to wait two or three weeks for engineering to review their bond agreement, approve their bond agreement, make sure everything's in line. They just want to say, everything's covered under this one big surety. It's plenty big to cover everything. Yes, they're probably paying a little more under that, but they're paying for timing. They're paying to expedite the process. And what, what our benefit is, is we're, in my belief, getting the same protection to the city, but we're also streamlining the process on our side, because we're not constantly dealing with these.
They're a two PID, but not a PID, but kind of a PID.
So this isn't, so let me.
For example, let me, let me say an example. When I built my house, I had to give Twin Creeks $5,000, and then I went and had to go in and connect my water, and once my water was connected, they'd give me my $5,000 back.
What they're doing. They're giving us millions of dollars.
Just making sure I'm going to do the work.
They're giving us millions of dollars to make sure that they put in all the infrastructure.
They do and take care and do their portion.
They do all of it. So, so the way the PID does relate to this is so that as, you know, they do have a Public Infrastructure District that covers this. The Public Infrastructure District, Jordan L. Ridge Infrastructure District number two has issued bonds. I think it was about 32 million, if I recall correctly. So they have a whole bunch of money.
This property, this particular project, put in with all of that?
Well, so this is different.
I probably should have asked before. I'm sorry.
You're fine.
But I'm just wondering why this project is separate from when we had the discussion with Zions Bank and Marcus and all of them when they came with the PID, why this project wasn't put in there under that same umbrella, if you will?
Yeah, so this is a little different. So every developer, regardless of your project, if you record a subdivision plat before you've completed all the infrastructure, you got to, you got to post a bond. So they're, they're kind of lumped in with every other developer. They are different in the aspect that they do have an overlying PID. So the PID has money. It has $32 million sitting here that has to go towards public infrastructure. So, so what, and in their master development agreement, it allows them to, to basically designate that PID money and say, okay, we have 10 million. to basically designate that Pid money and say, okay, we have $10 million of Pid funding. It's sitting in the bank, it's designated towards completion of X road. And so because we have all this money sitting in the bank that we have to spend on this project and we budgeted specifically for this project, we don't have to post a bond, because there's money sitting there to do that project.
Let me, let me try it this way. That's excellent. The Pid is a financing mechanism.
I understood.
The bond.
I'm confused with this one.
Yep, this is right. The Pid is financing mechanism, as Jeremy's explained. The bonding agreement is the bond that's going to help us secure the construction of this infrastructure to our standards. Is that fair?
Yeah, exactly.
The thing is too, is that the other Pids have not been approved on all their amenities. I mean, some of the basic things have been done that have been listed right up front. And I think, I think that's part of Yvonne's concern too. Because who knows if they might come along and say, hey, we want the golf course to be in Pid number five. You see what I mean? And this bond would be adjusted, you know, not maybe this bond, but the Pid monies would be adjusted. I'm just saying, there's still a lot of gray out there as far as what will eventually be on all the Pid lists.
I'm, it's me, and I'm, I'm the one who asks questions to the mayor, and that's what I was asking her. Because I'm not understanding how this is so much better when there are so many other pieces and parts of the wheel that seem to not be addressed under this.
Yeah, so normally.
With the Pid, I got it, because it was.
This, this project is enormous. This project is enormous in terms of the phasing.
Yeah, I know.
Phase 20A, 20B, 21, 22, that without this agreement, we would be required to put bonds on every one of those phases, individual bonds. And what this is going to allow us to do is do a blanket type of bonding, make our life easier, their life easier, to streamline it.
Isn't that what we were discussing? And I'm, I'm sorry if I can't remember every detail, but I thought that was the whole purpose of doing that, that if there's not enough money there, if there's not enough of this.
The Pid?
Then, yeah.
So the, so the Pid.
This is completely opposite of that.
It is. So, so again, the Pid is simply a financing tool to construct not only the infrastructure, but some of these other amenities, which you just spoke of. But the bond is a guarantee that it's done.
It's done.
It's done.
So again, if they, if they have the money and, oh, sorry, go, go ahead.
Yeah, so my high level question, I actually do understand the bonding really well. But my worry is that if we move away from bonding per phase or, or group of phases or five phases or whatever, then a million dollars is nothing. If they do phase 20A, 20B, 20C and get the first three homes out, they make enough profit there that they could walk away and a million dollars literally means nothing. So I wonder about, is that number the right amount if it's combined into one big bond? Because that's the concern I've got there.
So the, the million dollars isn't their infrastructure bond, that's their warranty bond. So once it goes into warranty, under state law, we can hold up to 10% of the original bond amount for the warranty period, which is one year. So their million dollars is just covering things that are in warranty in case they, they don't, you know, in case that there's a warranty issue. Which.
Manhole sinks.
Manhole sink, sidewalk crack, something like that.
I realize it's unlikely, I just.
No, I mean, warranty items are very likely. I mean, there's very likely that we have warranty items. They have a million dollar bond to cover all those warranty items. It's unlikely, in my opinion, that you would at any one time have them have so much in warranty that a million dollars wouldn't cover the warranty items unless you had some major warranty item.
Rose would, Rose would take that in just one road, right? Look at our cemetery road costs for a few blocks, over $3 million, I'm just saying.
If you're constructing the road, yeah, I mean, if you had a road that totally failed, but it's unlikely that engineering has a, that we have a road that's constructed, engineering inspects, it goes into warranty. And within that year period, it totally fails and we're in at a million, you know, more than a million dollars.
The other aspect here is if it fails, we can stop issuing permits. We no longer have a road that's accessible. So we have other tools that we could shut the developer down.
But they could continue what they already have permits for.
Depends. If they don't have, if we can't get fire service, we can't get police service, we, we don't have the ability to fight service.
I mean, one of the reasons, my dad's in, in construction, or nothing construction, I understand the idea of bonding, right? So one of the ideas of the phases is that you, you know that the phases will finish at some point. You don't end up with 60% done here, 60% done here, and then it just becomes an eyesore and a, and a pile of construction rubbish. But if it's a million dollars for the entire project, they could do that, actually. Because the warranty, to your point, the warranty, like, they could just eat into that.
Well, they can't eat into the warranty for, so, so they'll have one.
Sorry, the warranty can't finish buildings, is what I'm saying. Right? The warranty can just fix issues, but it can't force them to finish building the stuff that they chose not to build. If, for instance, building costs.
But they'll have probably a $50 million overlying bond. So they have to have a bond that will cover all their infrastructure that's under construction.
I think the confusion is that this isn't a bond where they're borrowing money. This is an insurance policy.
Yeah, they're getting insured.
They have a $50 million.
Perhaps I misunderstood, there's a much bigger bond, this is not.
Yeah, $50 million.
I did misunderstand, I'm sorry.
The warranty bond, sorry. So, so when you start out, if they're 60% done with the project, that project hasn't gone into warranty yet, because it'll only go into warranty once they finish everything within that subdivision plat that's required for that subdivision plat.
One of the, just, it was me misunderstanding. One of your comments said they have millions in bond, and I thought, no, they have 1 million in bond. And that doesn't make any sense, and that's like.
Sorry, it's, it's the million, the million is just the warranty bond. So that's just stuff that's fully complete. The city's inspected it and said, everything is complete, everything is done correctly. But if it fails within a year, you have to warranty it. Most of the time, like Councilmember Johnson said, it's a manhole sinks. Sometimes it's landscaping died, landscaping's probably the big one. The issue that you usually get into with warranty bonds is, again, when you have smaller subdivisions, what usually happens is they'll have, you know, a $40,000 warranty bond, because it's 10% of the project cost. So their original bond was $400,000. They have a 10, a $40,000 warranty bond. There's $25,000 worth of warranty items. So there's plenty of money there to complete them under the bond agreement. And they'll just walk away because they're done. They've already dissolved that LLC, they don't want to go back, and you're stuck doing those. Here, we have $150,000 in cash that we can go complete any project at any time under warranty if they don't do it. And they have to automatically replenish that cash or they're in default, so.
Makes much more sense.
Yeah, I appreciate. So we, we have a, I, again, no, the, none of these agreements are perfect. We dealt with, I mean, I dealt with a ton of these defaults back in 2008, when, 2007, 2008, when the market crashed. We learned a lot at that time about different things. Like, one thing that I didn't know, and I think most attorneys doing these didn't know, is that letters of credits from banks are not FDIC insured, and they're the very last thing to get paid. So a lot of cities, Harriman City, Eagle Mountain, some of the other cities had letters of credits from Barnes Bank and some of the other banks that went under to, on the subdivision bonds, that at the time, everybody thought that was great, a bank issuing a letter of credit, it's going to be perfect, they're FDIC insured. Come to find out, when that bank fails, that's not such good security, so.
I'd insure the whole bond for you, if you'd like me to do that.
What's that?
I know how to insure the whole bond.
Yeah.
So you mentioned landscape, do, do they bond for landscape?
Only if it's public landscaping. So if it's like landscaping along a road, that's a public road, that's, you know, part of that road, they'll landscape it. If it's private landscaping within the development, state code doesn't allow us to require.
So let's say a park that's going to be dedicated back to the city, would they have to bond for that?
If it's, if it's a city dedicated amenity, yes. If it's a private amenity, no. So if it's a park that's going to be owned and maintained by the HOA, no. Again, one of the really nice things in this is a lot of those are actually being built by the Pid-funded money. And so that money's already sitting, at least with the phases where the Pid is funded, that money's just sitting there, ready to go. I mean, and, and they want to develop it, get it done as quickly as they can. That's one of the really big benefits of a Pid, is that developers are really incentivized to go in and get these major infrastructure sections in, because once, they have money sitting in the bank, basically, but they can't take that money until they actually construct it, dedicate it to the city. So they're, they're eager to go in and get a lot of the infrastructure done quickly, so they can get that money. Because they're going to put the infrastructure in anyway, they might as well put it in now and get paid for it.
So in other counties and cities, they actually bond for all landscape? Is that something that we want to do?
Law includes that.
Yeah.
Us now?
Okay. It, it used to allow it. Yeah.
Sort spot.
It was, it was probably my former city that messed that up. For, for the new people, I used to be the city attorney for Eagle Mountain City and we.
So.
We irritated some developers who ran to the legislature and got that changed.
Ooh.
Question please. Are all the exhibits prepared? All of those forms and lists and such?
What's that?
The exhibits, A, B, C, are they prepared?
We haven't finalized the exhibits yet, but.
Okay. But has the, so the developer still needs to check the exhibits?
Yep.
Does the city need to check the exhibits? Does Russ need to?
Yeah, and, yeah, if, if we approve these, we'll prepare all the exhibits and Russ will check them all. Russ has, Russ and I have spent hours going through this agreement though, together and tweaking it. Again, this is, it's kind of, it's not something that I've done in the past. But I think it's something that hopefully will be really beneficial to Russ's department. And, and again, I mean, it's definitely going to benefit the developer as well. But I think it'll be beneficial to the city as well. So I think it's kind of a win-win.
Yeah.
For everybody.
Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Matt.
Aaron, if I can address one comment you made about the likelihood of a road failing, is, is fairly slim for a couple of reasons. We would never allow a road to go from the construction period into the warranty period until we had ensured that all the inspections had been done, all the compaction tests are done, all the asphalt tests are done. If we find there's ever a shortcoming, Russ and his staff are very good at making them fix it before it ever goes through that warranty period.
Yeah, my, my issue or question was just, I didn't realize there was a higher bond for the, for everything else.
A million dollars.
So it made me nervous that that's not a whole lot of incentive to do anything, because that money will just go away.
A million dollars for the overall bond would not even be close. I mean, it's going to be.
Jeremy, as, as like a legal, legal advice to the council, should we wait to see, what did we just call those things? Exhibits before we?
I, I don't think so, because exhibits just are kind of the implication, implementation of the agreement. And Russ will do them in a way that he wants. I mean, I'll, we'll do them, but it's just kind of the tracking forms. So I don't think it's something that the council would be particularly interested in reviewing.
What I might suggest is approve it contingent upon legal and engineering review and approval of those.
Yeah, yeah, Russ, yeah, we won't, we won't sign this until we get those done and.
For sharing, I mean, for being patient with me, because I just, I wanted to make sure.
This is a complicated issue.
And then if this was the same as, and obviously it's not, and I apologize to.
Well, when you're, when you're talking about Pid bonding and infrastructure bonding, and it all kind of meshes together, then it starts to get really confusing.
Just need a different name for it.
I know, well.
Okay, so council, Matt has suggested that if you prove it, to do, approve it based contingent on the exhibits, getting city legal and engineering review. Sound okay?
I would like to make that motion.
Okay, so you want to approve?
To approve it, contingent on the city getting the documents completed. Engineer review.
And the, and Jeremy, your, your legal review too, you're okay with that?
Yeah.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? All right, we'll start with a vote, please.
Aye.
Yes.
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 Okay, that passes five to zero. Thank you for getting that buttoned up with the exhibits. Okay, we are now almost to the end, everyone. We're to the communication items. And Matt, I'll turn it over to you first for any communication items.
Thank you, Mayor. So first, Aaron Sid, welcome aboard. Second is the retreat. Just a gentle reminder about the retreat, which will be Thursday, January 18th, beginning at 5:00. And Saturday, January 20th, beginning at 8:30. I will be sending you the final agenda sometime this week. The mayor and I pretty much got that nailed down and feel confident in it. I did want to give you a heads up that we're looking at inviting the county council and the railroad board for a Saturday discussion item pertaining to the, what we're calling the arts recreation district, as well as our urban boundary, which Tony told, talked about a little bit this morning, the area that might be on the east side of the bypass and what our strategies might be to handle that. So they'll be invited to attend that. Dustin's going to make that announcement at his county council tomorrow afternoon to make the invitation known. Lastly, I got an email from Nancy O'Toole this morning indicating that we were awarded a quarter million dollar grant for Muirfield Park. I've been trying to get ahold of her to verify that, and so I have not done that yet. But I've got an email saying it's awarded, but I don't know any more details than that, so stay tuned.
That'll help our budget out there. We can get those bridges in the way we want. Oh, wouldn't that be great?
Water park with slides and stuff.
Wrong grant.
Oh, wrong, wrong park.
Okay, well, hey, any update we can get on that, as soon as you can get.
I will, as soon as she gets back with me, yep.
That's very exciting, okay. And everybody, I've tried to put the locations and places, right, of your board meetings that you're assigned to this month. And Trina, I don't know if you can find out when the irrigation companies will ever hold their annual meetings, but I realize the, the Wasatch Irrigation Company had not set their meeting as of, after, before Christmas. So that might come up sooner than you think, you know what I mean? It's kind of a, there's Tempanogus and, and Wasatch, please.
No.
I don't know.
I know, Tempanogus is Devin McCrollough, he's the secretary.
Yeah, that's right.
And Wasatch has set their meeting for February 10th, right here.
Okay, so Trina, I don't know if you could send out the conflict of interest forms to Yvonne, myself and Scott, because I think we need to fill it out for this year, but the rest of you already filled out. You want to do it there? Yeah, if you could just send it out, because some people need, might need to fill out more than others and they can type it or whatever, that'd be great. Let me see. Okay, are we going to invite just Mark Nelson from the railroad? Or do you want, and there's Steve Farrell also from the railroad. But there's Mayor Johnston out of Midway, there's a few parks people.
What do you think, Mayor? We, you know, both of those are county council members. Should the other board members be invited? What do you think?
Let's ask Mark what he thinks, because I'll be there too.
Okay.
Right? But, and Steve will be there, hopefully, Steve Farrell from the county council. I, I would hope that would be good enough. I've been trying to get their buy-in, you know, at the meetings for months and months on this. So I'm hopeful they'll be excited. I think they are very excited. But, you know, it's the money, right? It's the money part, and what can we get the county council to agree to also? Okay, very good. Any other communication items?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mike.
I got an email, Matt from Mike Stagg, about leadership team retreat. Says Sri, Matt and Steve were on this, but I don't know.
Yeah, so I apologize. We've got the council retreat on the 18th and 20th. And then I've got a leadership retreat on the 22nd. It's all day Monday. And I think Sri accidentally included all your council emails with that. And so we're not intending to be there. This is kind of the arbiter training, which you've already been through, but it's for the leadership team. And so ignore that email. You can delete that. It's for the leadership team. Just so you know, that morning, we'll do the leadership training. We'll have a special presenter at lunch. And then right after that, we're going to be operationalizing your priorities that you've given us that last Saturday.
Okay.
It's going to be a busy month. And if we hadn't have done all of those SWAT analysis, and we'll be doing more next time on the 16th, as well as other advisory boards, but if we hadn't done it here, that would make the strategic meeting twice as long. You see what I mean? So that's why we're trying to do the, the lead work. Okay, everybody, thank you. Does anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye. Yes.
Good. We, we usually just do that one all together at the end.
Take down our microphone?
People yell it while they're not.
There you go. Good job, everybody, good job.
First one down.
My misunderstanding of everything. That last part, it just did not make sense to me.